All right. Good morning and welcome to the April sixth, twenty twenty four council retreat. I am Mayor Ross and today's meeting is brought to you live using video accompanying technology provided by Zoom and the recording will be posted on the City Weekly channel. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benton?
Here.
Councilmember Lawton?
Here.
Councilmember Oliver?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
Here.
Councilmember Cotton?
Here.
Councilmember Richardson?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson and not friends. And there.
I am here. Councilmember Johnson has requested to be excused this morning. He'll be joining us later.
Move to excuse.
Second.
By Mayor Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Richardson to excuse Councilor Johnson this morning. Any discussion? All are taken first, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilor Johnson is excused and the remainder of the rest of our council is attending this party today. We now approve the agenda. Councilman, have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
By Mayor Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Richardson. Any discussion?
Yeah, why is Kara getting all of the seconds?
She's quicker than you are.
Anything else? Okay, I'll favor to approve the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Jane? And the agenda is approved. So I'll turn it back over to you and recognize some of our staff that's here today. We have City Clerk Dina Dean who organized your council retreat. And we have Community Development Director Inway Artetia will be presenting on economic development and she'll be here shortly. We also have our City Administrator Champless will be presenting and partaking in the council retreat. And so I'll turn it back over to Andrew Ballard. So of Marketing Solutions, Andrew has, he's actually been to several council retreats facilitating it. As well as recently with the SWAT analysis who was through, so I'm turned preseason on Snoke County City. And knows what's going on. So I'll turn it back over to Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask our council president, Brian, to give us some opening remarks as this is a council retreat.
Hi, and you got the agenda in front of you. We'll have it up on the screen here. Again, it's not a very constrained agenda. It's more for us to have discussions. We'll have a get to know exercise here coming up. And then the, you know, we'll get out of this what we put into it. So feel free to have those discussions as we move forward on our goals and objectives and where we want to take things. That's, I'll leave it at that.
Great. Awesome. I am just point of order and for speed and ease, especially for me, I have all forms of dyslexia known to humankind. May I refer to all of you by first name? Everybody always says yes, but you know, it's polite to ask when you're dealing with, you know, honorable elected officials. So thank you for that.
You're just dealing with us.
No, I believe it or not. Well, I don't care if you believe it or not. This is. Hey, I really like, you know, kind of the informal, let's, you know, we're going to get a lot of work done to be sure. But this is the five hundred and twenty eighth retreat I have facilitated since nineteen ninety three. I really appreciated Catherine's comments. I do this a lot. I do, you know, thirty a year. And I absolutely love it. It's one of my, we do a lot of other things that I'm not going to go into, but it's just a real joy and treat for me. So I really appreciate the opportunity to be back with this fantastic group. Did three or four retreats pre pandemic, three or four council workshops. And as Catherine said, was involved in some research, including focus groups working with council to kind of build our SWAT from both the elected and the community perspective to help inform budgeting and priorities. So with all of that. And I also want to jump on the bandwagon and thank Dina. She did a lot of work helping me prepare. Work that nobody but she and I know. And I try my best not to be abusive, but she's just so great to work with and I just want to publicly thank her. So you all have the agenda in front of you. Just very, very, see it's hot link, but I'm not even going to do that. We're going to, after our icebreaker at nine forty-five, Emily is going to do a one hour economic development presentation and we'll have some time for discussion. After our morning break, break. Mike will be doing a presentation on what we've accomplished in terms of our council priorities, goals and objectives. And then from there, right before lunch, we will start agenda item number four, when I've got a spreadsheet up that we'll look at. It'll be easier to read, but we're going to review and potentially revise priorities and the goals, objectives. I say potentially, we're not looking for revisions, but if our current reality and environment necessitate that, then we're going to be able to, you know, do some rewriting, adjusting and things like that. And everything I do will be in flip charts and everything I do will be documented and delivered in a report the middle of next week by Wednesday and deliver it to Brian and Catherine. So everything we do will be written in all of this. So we'll start that review and potential revision before lunch. We'll do a fairly quick lunch. Come back and finish that review and revision exercise and take us to the PM break. Then number six, we'll kind of look at status quo or shake it up. We're just going to have some conversations about, you know, are we happy the way we're doing things? Do we want to do some or all things differently? Are there some things that that we should be doing that we're not? And then we'll jump into council connections with the public and go over a few conversations there. If time allows, we want to have a community partners discussion. And based on the way that I am looking at all of this and thinking that item number four and five, which is actually the same agenda item, I think that we've got plenty of time margin in that. I don't think we'll need all of that time. I've worked a lot with Brad and Catherine to kind of hone in this. They, there was a lot of work behind the scenes to make sure that this agenda would cover what we wanted to. And just to be clear, because most of you I haven't worked with yet, I'm very role aware. Not because I've done five hundred sessions, but because I'm very clear that I'm in service to all of you. Okay, just because I'm a facilitator, I'm not the boss. You're the boss. And then on the, at least my back page, agenda nine, we're just going to do a quick wrap up. So I will unpack each exercise as we get to them. No sense doing that right now. I do want to talk a little bit about kind of our guidelines for working together, roles and responsibilities. And after that, we'll do kind of a fun icebreaker game that Brian brought to my attention. So if you love this game, I want you to credit.
Give him credit.
If you hate it, I want you to blame Brian. Just want to be clear about that. So let's take them.
If you decide to use it, I want credit when whatever form you use it from here on.
So I don't want you to feel special. I use this slide for every group I work with. Especially when I have, you know, three fourths of the room brand new. There are several corporate clients I have that I've done, you know, over a dozen plus retreats with. I'm doing it every year. Our oldest client we've had for twenty-five years. We're in our twenty-seventh year. Like when I started marketing solutions, we incorporated in nineteen ninety seven. And, you know, knock on wood, we're blessed. We're still moving strong. So this is just a way for us to work together. Says board members, I'm sorry, it's a template. I usually change it to council members. Please pardon me on that. So I'm asking you to agree on the agenda that people that are part of your leadership group have spent a good deal of time putting together. I'm asking everyone to participate, but for no one person or a few people to dominate. I really want to spread the love. And so the point, and this rarely happens, very rarely, but every once in a while I might have somebody who's, you know, like me, very verbose and I might just go, okay, great. We will thank you for your input. I'm going to move on to get somebody else's input. Don't take that personally. I bet that's Emily. Hi Emily. Emily and I see the same barber, by the way. I just want to be clear, or hairstylist. I'm sorry. Back when I had hair, we used to call them barbers. I haven't seen a barber since nineteen ninety-three. Anyway, so participate, but don't dominate. Also, the difference between disagreeing and be disagreeable. And I know that this is redundant for Catherine and Brian as all of the work I've done in the past. And of course, all of that work. Well, the newer work, Catherine was mayor, but I first met you, you were in what, your second or more terms as a council member? Anyway, so disagree. That's good. And what I mean is with a healthy and civil discourse, having different opinions and different perspectives and having a respectful discourse, I actually encourage. My favorite quote is from JFK and he said, if you have ten people on a committee and nine of them see the issue the exact same way, you have, whoops, what was that? I didn't do that, did I?
Weird quote.
It wasn't weird. Ten and they all see the issue the exact same way, you have nine too many people on that committee. There's no discord. I mean, those conversations produce a better product. So I encourage this. I will not tolerate the hospital. I just don't. And again, these, this, you know, less than five percent of five hundred, very rare. But my job is to be a good steward of your time and talent. And I use these guidelines to make sure that happens. So facilitator, me in service to you, I'm asking all of you, the seven of you, Joe will be joining us around eleven-ish, dealing with airports and families, et cetera. I'm asking those of you elected president, present to give me authority based on the agenda to keep us on time and on topic. Everybody okay with that? And by the way, the times on the agenda are approximate. I am not going to kibosh a rich discussion. I mean, if we're coming up at the end and we're, you know, we've got a really good conversation, we'll work together to get over the finish line. Not, not going to cut it off. Some of the agenda items, some of those exercises will take less time. Some of them will take more. It's going to even out. Okay, and I'm just going to ask out of respect for your colleagues that we limit sidebar conversations and we keep the conversation at the appropriate strategic strata. And you don't need to know what that is. I do. And I can say, hey, we're getting into the operational weeds. We're getting very tactical. That's not our place, you know? That's staff's place. Your place is to set policy and strategic direction. Okay? On the parking lot, I don't have one up, but sometimes we need one and that's just a sheet where if an idea or an issue comes up that's not on the agenda, I want to honor your input. And I'll start a parking lot sheet over there and I'll add it to the parking lot, which will end up in the report that I deliver on Wednesday. But then we'll get right back to the agenda. So this is again, template ambitious agenda, move to committee if necessary. I do not believe that's going to happen, but I've got that card in the deck in case I need to play it. Any questions or heartburn over this? This is really guidelines for me to take care of you. Okay, so let's jump into the icebreaker, the M and M game. Thank you, Brian. Everybody has an M and M. We're going to start with Bob and we're going to go clockwise all the way around. Do we want our staff to play? Would you like them?
Absolutely, yeah.
Our staff is very, very important. They don't even know what the heck we're talking about yet, but.
Would it be okay if Mike comes up and says?
Yeah, he makes me really nervous in the back of the room. He's going to be presenting and he's the administrator.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Make you nervous.
So Emily, I'm going to ask you to choose one M and M that's your favorite color.
I choose no.
Seems like the elected's wanting you to.
No paycheck for you. Non-friendly admire.
Okay, MC, I need you to choose, I'm sorry, I need you to choose your favorite M and M color. Oh, it's all right.
See, I chose blindly.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me. Have I introduced you to Rob?
Oh, the one I keep calling Bob?
No, that one.
It's okay.
No, we actually have an agreement. I know him and I know his son, his family's awesome. And we have an agreement. I call him Rob. He calls me Frank. It's all good. Thank you. I appreciate, I'm sorry, Rob. Well, I, I do, in fact, let me show you something here. Only Catherine and Brian know this. See this little ABC box? True story. I was labeled mentally retarded in third grade. If you've seen my TED Talks, I talk about. Not as bad as me. This is serious. She went to my, the principal and my mother and said, we have to put him in a special needs school because he can't read, do math or spell as well as the other kids. My mom didn't believe it. She had me tested. Turns out that I have all three forms of dyslexia. I am severe in audio and visual and I'm moderate and kinesthetic. I cannot spell. I never will be. By the way, Rob knows this. I've been teaching, I taught at the UW School of Business for ten years. I just retired in twenty-two. I start every cohort, every new class with this ABC box. Can't spell. So when you see a word that's missing a letter, or maybe I got it backwards, Bob, I mean, Rob. All I want you to do, if it's missing a letter, I want you to quietly and cognitively go to the letter box, pull out the letter and fix the word. Sometimes you'll see a word that has an extra letter. Just reverse the process. Pull the letter out, stick it here. By four thirty, it'll all even out. It'll just be pretty ugly getting there. Okay? So anyway, I literally didn't, I know that he's Rob, but I literally am reading it as Bob.
Okay.
Because the R is backwards.
My apologies.
No, don't, no, are you kidding? It's real. I don't apologize for correcting me when I should be corrected. I would prefer to call him, I would prefer to call him by the accurate name. Okay, so let's jump, let's jump into the game. You all have a color. There are the colors and based on your color, you're going to answer that question. And I'm going to start with Rob and we'll come back to Mike because Mike is busy right now.
Oh, Mike got here half an hour early, so Mike was all.
So I want you to first, Rob, tell your colleagues what color M and M. I can see what color.
I chose yellow, but it's because it was a random pick.
You have to answer, what is the favorite thing you do? What is it you love doing?
I love connecting people.
Give me an example of that.
It's all day long. That's part of my job is just connecting people and helping them find someone else that can help them out.
Cool. Have you ever read Malcolm Gladwell's book, The Tipping Point?
Yes.
You're one, Malcolm Gladwell wrote a book around early two thousands called The Tipping Point. It was a New York Times bestseller and there's three different levels and one of the three levels was connector. And that's why I asked. I'm a voracious reader because I'm not smart enough to figure stuff out on my own. Kara, what, Sheriff, what color you have? And then go ahead and tell them your color.
So I picked the blue one.
Okay, if you won the lottery, what would you do with the money? By the way, tonight's Powerball is one point three billion. Choose me.
First of all, I would, I would not tell anyone. Yeah, she's the lawyer. Then I would create some entities to, to work on things like helping lower income families, the environment, things like that. And also take my kids around and just for travel.
Awesome. Altruistic. Beautiful. Thank you. Catherine, what color is your M and M?
It is green.
Okay, what is your favorite movie and why?
The League of Their Own. You know who that is?
Oh, I sure do. I've seen it several times.
Baseball. It was an opportunity, so happened in World War Two, when all the men were, you know, yeah, going, going up to fight.
Gina Davis, Tom Hanks, great movie.
So it gave women an opportunity to actually play baseball. Yeah, they wouldn't have been afforded that opportunity if, if, you know, men's league was, had been called up to war. So it was just kind of fun to see it and then teamwork here that went into it.
Got it. So you like that because of the teamwork and women got to be on the stage and the only part of that movie I had a hard time with is that they made the women play in short skirts. And when they would slide, that you would see them come away from the game with just massive bruising on their hips. That's not fun. I mean, because they, they went all out. I mean, these were not just villains. These were talented athletes. Thank you. Awesome. Brian, what's your color?
Blue.
Okay, if you won the lottery, how would you spend the money?
Bye-bye.
Well, one retire. Right now, I want to get an attorney. A lot of people's lives have been ruined by lotteries. The other part is I'm so I, I do have a fantasy which will never come true. Because I know my physical, mid, right, hand skills would be to buy a van and make a camper out of it and travel around and see things.
Oh, van life.
I know I could never do that. It would be square. But my wife has actually started to look at trailer campers. I get a trailer camper and we do some traveling. Take the kids if they still at twenty, twenty-one and twenty-three would go with us and go see things.
So if you won the lottery, you'd become homeless.
I love it. And so Louis, before I go to you, I'm going to get the back of the room. Let's start with Emily. Which color?
Well, I actually chose two, just inadvertently, but I'm going to go red.
Okay. What is your favorite memory?
One that comes to mind recently is my son texting me a copy of his admittance letter to the University of Scranton. Sheerly brought tears to my eyes. So, and that's where he's going to school right now. So, and he's like, look at this, Mom. I got a ninety thousand dollar scholarship.
Oh, no wonder you were happy. Oh, no. Emily was doing a happy dance. Wow, thank you very much. Dina, what color is your M and M?
Red, red's my favorite color, but I actually like Blue's question better.
Doesn't matter. You got to play the game. What is, what is your favorite memory?
So in fourteen, we took a road trip in a minivan with, I have three kids.
Did you take it with Brian? Just curious.
So it was five of us and our dog. And we went down to Utah and then up through Wyoming and to Montana. We went to Yellowstone and then and we went like three thousand five hundred miles. In a minivan with my three kids, we have three kids and our dog.
That is so cool. What a great story. So I'm, so we'll do this and then we'll end with Mike. Don't screw up, Mike. You're, you're, you're our anchor person. Louis.
Lot of pressure. Okay, so I have a blue M and M and let's see, so winning the lottery, so what would I do? Well, probably find a good financial advisor. Number one, number two, I'd probably, at this age, I'd probably take the annuity, not the lump sum, because you get the option of annuity or lump sum. So I'd probably take the annuity. And then, so, and, sorry.
You've checked this out.
I have to systematically think of it. So, so I work for Johnson and Johnson. So there's a business group that I'm a part of that deals with, you know, patients living with schizophrenia. And some of the aspects of it I've really been passionate. So I think for me, I would want to create a nonprofit helping individuals who, you know, who are struggling.
Awesome. How great. Okay, Ethan.
I chose the green one. Because when I was in middle school, I learned that they have aphrodisiac powers.
I'll bet work on for you.
You know, I'm still working on it. Uh, no, my favorite movie is Butch Cassidy and Sundance Kid.
Oh my gosh.
That was a, that's a favorite movie of my dad's and I watched it with my dad when I was a kid and I've just always loved that movie.
The ball's going to kill you.
That's right. I can't swim. That's one of the funniest lines. Okay, you are green.
I am also green and unlike all these other altruistic people, I tend to be more frivolous on the movie side. But my favorite movie was also because I watched it with family the first time. But it is Pirates of the Caribbean, because secretly I'm a swashbuckler at heart. And we also went as a family group to Disneyland and of course Pirates of the Caribbean was the family's favorite ride, so.
And that was one of the first rides in the park.
Yeah, and Johnny Depp's okay too.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you have the boots? I just, I'm curious.
I do have boots. Yeah, and Elisa, you know.
Oh, you go girl. That's very cool.
My brother's actually in there. He's one of the pirates.
He's in that movie?
Which one? Which movie?
The first.
The first one?
Is he like an actor pirate or is he like a speaking role pirate?
Speaking role?
But no, not speak.
I've seen him. He looks just like you.
Okay, Mike.
Is he part of the group that was The Curse of the Black Pearl?
Is that the first one?
Yeah, that's.
Green for my parks. Favorite movie would be Space Camp.
Space Camp. Oh, okay. Cool. Awesome. Well, thank you. And thank you, Brian, for bringing the game. It's just, I've added to my portfolio. I think that's very cool. Okay, so Emily, we're a little bit early. I'm going to pull up your presentation and give you. However, I just, I will support you in any way before you would ask me to do your deal. You're just going to do it. Okay, but it's loaded on my computer.
Okay, so there's no, there's no live link. Okay, we'll just do it your way.
Well, that is the live link. That's your presentation. It came from.
Oh, this is the zoom, this is.
Yeah, so this advances your slides.
I'll just let you do it.
Okay, I'm going to sit down and.
You just look for one.
We actually have a code.
Yeah.
We're set.
What's the code?
Well, our email. It's not really a code.
Next letter, Vanna.
Well, good morning, council members. I'm excited to share information with you at the council retreat on economic vitality. And normally I would just flip to the next slide to get things going. But today is different. I'm going to pause and discuss this first slide in part because it really does sum up my entire presentation. I put this light bulb on this first slide for a reason. Light bulbs represent brilliant ideas which results in sudden and spontaneous inspiration often bestowed upon a few chosen few, for you. And to some degree, this is an electric presentation full of ideas and I invite you to come along for the ride or stop me if your light bulb goes off or on, however you choose to use the metaphor. And this is a share and discuss kind of presentation. Here on the agenda, you can see a robust set of topics that we'll be covering, including who we are, the legislative framework we work within, a picture of what economic vitality means to Snoke County, challenges, opportunities, and of course, success. As you can see, we are a small, mostly built out community. We love our natural beauty.
Blessings.
We need wildlife and rich history. It's Snoqualmie's tourism that helps drive growth in the region with our historic main streets, shops, stores, eateries, and more. But we need to go back in time, back to the eighteen hundreds, with the establishment of the Snoqualmie Falls Lumber Company to remember where our economic vitality began. What's important about that time? Well, cutting-edge technology. Take a look at the photo on the slide. That was an all-electric mill, which at the time was cutting-edge technology. The plan was for Warehouser to build the second all-electric mill in the nation. Let me provide a few more details. There was a large brick fuel bunker, powerhouse, with an eleven-foot electrically-driven head ridge, rig, a machine center where logs were converted into lumber using a bandsaw. We are talking about historic innovation and technology. And I'd like to share more about that, what that means today in my upcoming slides. Take a look at this map. Can you find all the circled retail areas, including the city's historic downtown area, Business Park, and other commercial areas throughout the city? Center Boulevard, Better Way, the hospital, and the future mill site, to name a few. We have attracted a variety of business sectors since our first major employer, Snoqualmie Falls Lumber Company. And Snoqualmie represents employment in all eight major employment sectors tracked by the Department of Employment Security. Can you guess the sector that employs the most of our workforce? It's hospitality, with nearly two thousand five hundred jobs. These two, this, these two hundred, two thousand and twenty-two employment estimates are summarized from the Puget Sound Regional Council's point-level workplace employment data set. The data stems from the Washington State Department in security, the Washington State Employment Securities Department Quarterly Census of Employment and Wages. This series represents a census of covered employers within the Puget Sound Region's exclusively carved out for Snoqualmie. Please note that some employment numbers have changed since that time. For example, King County government employees were relocated out of Snoqualmie within the last two years. But back to hos- the hospitality industry, to keep that business flowing, Snoqualmie needs visitors. More than one point five million visitors come to Snoqualmie Falls every year. And the city is giving some big publicity with recent articles published by USA Today and Conde Nast Traveler just this year. The company's media brands attract more than seventy-two million consumers in print, three hundred and ninety-four million in digital, and four hundred and fif- four hundred fifty-four million across social media platforms. So, who are these tourists? Well, the state of Washington Tourism Department has done some homework to identify what is called our target markets. These folks are coming from Oregon, Denver, Montana, Idaho, all around California, including the Bay Area, Chico, Reading, Santa Barbara, Santa Maria, San Luis Obispo, Eureka, as well as Vancouver, B C areas. The foundational components of our economic development reside in our comprehensive plan. This is something that you have before you right now. The economic development element of the comprehensive plan. Economic development is supported under the Growth Management Act as a statewide goal, RCW thirty-six seventy-eight oh two oh. Encourage economic development throughout the state. The economic development element provides provisions for economic growth and vitality and the high quality of life. And let me tell you, not all cities have this element. But as far as I can tell, Snoqualmie has always had an economic development element in the comprehensive plan. It's a primary work component of the Economic Development Commission under SMC two point two two. These goals and policies are the provisions from which economic vitality can really come to life. In other words, it's your vehicle to drive, to get you where you need to go, to get you what people really want while aligning with the city's needs. So you must be asking, what do people really want? Here are some of the economic development comments provided to us during the comprehensive plan over the past two years. Tourism, hotel space, opening Center Boulevard to more retail, the mill site, perhaps increased trails and activities at Snoqualmie Point Park, and River Trail are just right before us. I've got a few more slides to share with you that will help unpack more of these comments. Here's an overview of the policy needs found within the economic, within the draft economic development element. There are many goals and policies included in the element, and we will review all of them on Monday at the table. But for now, I've highlighted a few standout policies circled in green. Can you imagine a boutique hotel like the example on the right? What about the Woodman? Did you know that based on our analytics, it drew fifteen hundred visitors a month? That's eighteen thousand visitors a year that stopped coming to Snoqualmie. With economic vitality at such an important topic, the commissions felt that a policy should include bringing back a four-star dining establishment and a hotel, a local hotel in the downtown. Economic vital- economic vitality encompasses a lot. How does marketing, rebranding, infill, redevelopment, business retention, business recruitment, tourism, and developing partnerships sound? If you were to ask me, I'd say we are doing things in all of these areas. And there are challenges and opportunities in all of these areas. Let's discuss. Tourism is big business and good for residents too. In fact, in two thousand twenty-two, it generated three point one billion statewide. Did you know that this amount of revenue offsets the average household tax burden by one thousand forty-nine dollars? According to the State Department of Tourism? And get this. Tourism employment supports over a hundred and forty-five thousand jobs, direct jobs statewide. Like the images shown on the screen, destination development is a marketing tool used in tourism, along with paid ads. Here's a quote from the Washington State Tourism Department on this topic. Destination development is the strategic planning and advancement of defined areas to support the evolution of desirable destinations for travelers. A sole focus on the supply side of tourism by providing compelling experiences, quality infrastructure, and remarkable services to entice repeat visitation. Guess what? We already have a leg up on this with Twin, with the Twin Peaks Annual Event, which brought in approximately eight thousand visitors last year and more returning each year. The goal of consumer marketing efforts at the state level is to attract more visitors from outside the state to visit, to stay longer and spend more supporting local businesses. How do we, how do we determine a return on investment? The statewide analytics show that the return is about sixty-nine dollars for one dollar spent on paid media. That's a sixty-nine to one ratio. I love this graphic. It's the inflow and outflow counts for all jobs for Snoqualmie for all workers based on the twenty twenty-one census data. And it's easy to tell that we have a fairly balanced ingress and egress of employees within our city's workday. About four thousand six hundred inflowing and about six thousand six hundred outflowing. But let's process this a bit further. What if there was more housing available for the inflow employees? The majority, we know, worked in the hospitality industry. What if there was a way to secure more of the same jobs for those outflowing employees? What if those skilled employees living inside the city limits worked inside the city limits? In other words, growing jobs from within, either by growing existing businesses or supporting new startups? It's called economic gardening. And in Littleton, Colorado, the city's program is credited with adding fifteen thousand new jobs and tripling sales tax revenue over twenty years without recruiting incentives or tax rebates. Some other benefits to this approach would be keeping more dollars inside the city, reducing vehicle miles traveled, i.e. climate change, and expanding our tax base. Snoqualmie transit is a challenge for most all employees. We've got one direct service from Issaquah to Railroad Avenue running nine times a day. But according to our destination analysis, only about three percent of our employees originate their trips from Issaquah. Most, more employees are coming from, more employees each, excuse me, more employees are commuting each year along Highway eighteen from cities of Kent, Auburn, Maple Valley, Covington, and Federal Way. And if all the employees from these cities tried to use transit, a round-trip travel time would be between three to four hours a day. Snoqualmie growth targets have been a hot topic because of housing. This is this, this is the King County Urban Growth Capacity Report. I think y'all know that Snoqualmie met and exceeded its growth target with the development of Snoqualmie one and two by about the year twenty eighteen. Accommodating housing for all workers will be a challenge. However, the city does have opportunities aimed at keeping those employees that live here, working here. And to help push this idea a bit further, we also know that some of our businesses need to expand. This map shows the city's future land use map. Yes, flume for short. We normally don't talk about flume des- designations. And in fact, I've never seen a flume for areas outside of city limits before. But here, I'd like to point out that future planning efforts for a master-planned business park extend beyond the city's limits into the city's potential annexation area. This planning would support an annexation effort, including new contingent zoning. Not all cities have a potential annexation area. In fact, there's only about eleven major PAA's in the county, including Snoqualmie's PAA. As you can imagine by the name, PAA's tend to follow by the action of an actual annexation effort. The goal of the county is to assimilate these areas into a city. There are many steps along this path, including but not limited to an annexation strategy study which could help inform the council of whether the city can serve an expanded area. This map displays the entire PAA in tan, in the tan color. The city estimates building, buildable portions as shown in brown. Other considerations were made for unbuildable areas. Wait a minute. Did we just switch from PAA to AI? Yes, we did. And let me explain. In twenty twenty, the Washington State Legislature set new greenhouse gas emission limits, RCW seventy-eight forty-five, to combat climate change. Under the law, the state is required to reduce emission levels each decade to achieve a net zero emissions by the year twenty fifty. That's not far off. But let's go back to twenty twenty-four with the onset of House Bill eleven eighty-one, which requires cities to produce greenhouse gas reduction subsegments and identify actions jurisdictions will take during the planning cycle that will result in reductions. Okay. You might be wondering, how does all of that relate to AI? Industries are transforming by AI. And what drives economic development today and yesterday is cutting-edge technology, including the technology of AI. Have you heard of generative AI? Generative artificial intelligence is a machine learning model that is trained to create new data rather than making a prediction. It's dynamic, it's fresh, and it may not be true. I'd like to share a short video featuring Bill Gates to help you understand. Let's watch the video together now.
Is that on another slide?
It's, it should be right there on that little box.
This guy, no, which box? The one with Bill in it?
Yeah, one with Bill in it. Do you want me to switch and join this presentation?
So here is, um, the presentation's being generated.
Which, my screen to share?
You can't. I have no idea how these videos. People are like falling asleep in their.
Ask Dina.
People are like hunched over, there's and the car is just driving itself.
So I don't know how to.
Are you joining the meeting? It's quick, long break.
Taking a break?
Let's just take a five-minute break.
A rather, oh, human driver. It was a car operated by Waves, a startup that's developing a new approach to autonomous driving.
Um, front seat's all yours.
All right.
Can I introduce, uh, Tifa? Tifa's gonna be our safety operator today and monitor the system.
Supposedly the easiest job in the world.
Great, Bill. Where would you like to go?
Uh, let's, uh, go get some dishes shipped.
Other self-driving technologies work only on specific map streets. Waves technology operates more like the human driver would. Learning how to drive in one city and then applying that knowledge to drive to new places. London is a very challenging place to drive with lots of traffic, pedestrians, and cyclists. We put Waves self-driving technology to the test.
The algorithm is now controlling the speed, the steering, the indication, the braking, everything about the car's driving. We're making decisions based on what we see, so it's not being told how to drive with a set of rules and a map. But it's interpreting its environment, understanding the context, and making the safest decisions to drive through here. And the beauty of that is that it can learn things that are more complex than you can hand engineer. If you have to tell the car how to behave in each and every situation, it will exist. You're never gonna cover them all.
I mean, this, this is the real world right here.
A hundred percent. I mean, look at the cyclist on the left.
Yeah.
See how we're slowing down behind it? We'll probably, when it opens up, overtake the cyclist, but we're choosing not to now.
Okay, look, we do now. Yeah, it gives him as much clearance as possible. That's great. All right, this guy going backwards, forwards, ooh. I'll give you credit for picking one of the most difficult situations I've ever seen in an autonomous car ever.
I mean, this is the most unstructured, wild, and complex environment.
Yeah, no, the humans are having a hard time. Yeah, no, the humans are having a hard time. You can tell. They're trying to make judgment calls.
I think this is the next big wave of technology, whether that's improving the enjoyment of vulnerable road users, whether that's decreasing the amount of traffic, improving safety, allowing more public transport, more shared mobility, more reliable mobility. I mean, the way we move around cities hasn't changed in a hundred years. I hope you enjoyed riding the wave through.
No, that was fantastic.
All right, do you guys like that?
We have an agenda built to ban autonomous driving. Just kidding. How does it do with elk? How does it do with elk?
It's programmed to recognize people ahead of its sight. And then whatever you did before.
On my not recognizing like things and things that are moving. But it's definitely limited.
Never used the milk feature before. I'm exploring a world where our cars are all controlled by some central sort of artificial intelligence.
But it's really good when they're installed, you can find them easier.
You won't slip or disable them.
You don't want Big Brother driving my car.
Yes, of course, absolutely. So I'm going in and exit.
Yeah. Nineteen thirty Model A sport coupe.
There you go, internal combustion engine. And a steering wheel.
Right. So they are creating trucks.
Yeah, it's not terrifying at all. Do you have, they're actually Johnson &amp; Johnson, they're really.
Okay.
Yeah, let's go.
In Titusville.
All right, we're not having a business.
Yeah, we're gonna bring everybody back to the presentation.
All right, so was that a fun video to watch? I mean, could you see how fast the car was going and how dynamic the situation was on a tiny little street?
Except the film was sped up in certain parts, yeah.
Could be, for sure. Uh, what does this mean for Snoqualmie? Could you imagine an expanded business park with sensors, semiconductors, and software for autonomous vehicles? Just an idea, a light bulb moment. And here's something more to think about. The targeted urban area property tax exemption is a ten-year local property tax exemption for new industrial or manufacturing facilities within a designated city area. A key eligibility requirement means the facility must create at least twenty-five family living wage jobs within an average pay of at least eighteen dollars per hour. After contracting with the city, the tax exemption is provided on the value of eligible improvements and applies to only the city portion of the collective property tax.
Uh, the remote no longer works.
Oh.
Something we did, it didn't like.
Sorry for these interruptions. The flow kind of, you know, it's hard to keep the momentum going with you when these interruptions happen, so appreciate your patience.
I do not know why it will not advance. Well. There we go.
There we go.
Yeah, now we're working.
Okay, now we're doing.
Sorry, we didn't rehearse this.
All right, here's some other transforming industries that are looking for homes. Windmills and mass timber. And as you can see, windmills aren't just for land anymore. Using windmills in water is a cost-effective alternative to land-based windmills. These windmills are floating wind turbines and are placed in deeper waters where wind speeds are stronger and more consistent. The results, this results in increased energy generation. Mass timber is an engineering wood product, and it is structurally loaded, it's structurally load-bearing, used for columns, beams, and panels. Relatively few manufacturers exist, and the demand for this product is increasing. The product is manufactured in factories by fastening multiple layers of wood together with glue, dowels, or nails, and are engineered for high strength. Did you remember that the last slide on AI, the last slide on AI and climate change? Well, get this, mass timber sequesters CO2, and its manufacture is far less carbon intense than either concrete or steel. Let's talk about programming opportunities like Main Streets. This is a network of more than seventy communities across Washington State. And it is designed to help revitalize downtowns like Snoqualmie's. Main Streets makes economic, fiscal, and social sense as powerful tool and investment strategy. And yes, we have one. And with a bit more work, it will be even better with the use of the tax credit program. The Main Streets Tax Credit Incentive Program provides a business and occupation or utility tax credit for private contributions given to eligible downtown organizations. Once a business's donation request is approved by the Department of Revenue, they are eligible for a tax credit with seventy-five percent of the contribution. Businesses statewide can also donate to the Main Streets Trust Fund for the same seventy-five percent donation. In fact, a business can donate to both up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, while the program essentially lets you self-direct your business taxes. Further, if the downtown organization is a five oh one three C, it may even be eligible for federal income tax deduction as a charitable contribution. Can you imagine engaging our business park employers with this program? Another great program with huge potential for economic vitality is the Creative District. And it comes with its very own freeway sign. In two thousand twenty, the state started a certification program to endorse creative districts in communities. The stats show that these districts create jobs and generate revenue. Certification can help promote a community's creative district like Plain Air, increase tourism and bring new visitors like destination development, attract artists, startups, and creative businesses like economic gardening, create opportunities for affordable housing, which relates back to our ingress. Boost livability and protect historic assets. Well, that's it. That's the end of this presentation, but like with all my presentations, there is always next steps. And we are well on our way with the council to review the comprehensive plan, including implementation, the review and approval of economic development element, and a robust EDC where many of these bright ideas regarding economic vitality will be discussed and brought to you as recommendations. I thank you for your attention today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We have plenty of time for discussion and humaning. Looks like Brian has his hand up.
Yeah, so I got a couple of questions. One. We'll go back to the discussion of, and, well, here are wind farms. Uh, you had wind farms up there?
The windmill?
So, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
And I guess my, I have a context question on most of these slides of what it, what does that mean for Snoqualmie? And how do we take advantage of that for economic development?
Yeah, that's a great question.
So, so you present several ideas here of, hey, wind, wind generation, manufactured wood products. Do we think there's, do we think that's a market opportunity for us?
Those are good, good questions. And let me just give you some background. These are cutting-edge concepts, ideas, industries that are coming down the pipe. They're looking for homes right now. This is, this is the wave of where technology is going, based on, you know, the state of Washington discussion, you know, a whole group of, of folks that just focus on economic development for the state of Washington. I'm bringing these to you as ideas. They could be viable ideas. They could be viable if other strategies in this economic vitality package move forward, like business park expansion, tax incentives, you know. There, you know, it's really up to you on what you want to do. You want to pursue one of these avenues, we can figure out a way to get there.
Well, we have enough wind up here to certainly be able to circulate some of those turbines.
Yeah, the good places, we've put houses.
I, I haven't done any research into this at all. But I think the point is that, that, you know, we are kind of, I, I'm just thinking my little limited geography of Washington's, that we would be kind of a strategic point, some sort of windmill manufacturing facility, because it's, you know, closer to the past, and it's also closer to the, to the coast. Whether or not you. I'm sorry?
She's trying to get rid of the echo. She can't hear you. Um, sorry for the interruption.
So whether or not it's realistic, I don't know. Obviously, that's a long road to go down. But it is an opportunity. I also would like to look at what the impacts of that manufacturing are. That's my knowledge, it's fiberglass. Fiberglass has some not-so-nice things associated with it, and whether or not we wanna plan for that in our community or not. So, I mean, this is just a scratch of the surface, um, and, and to see if there's interest in assigning work in twenty-five to go down these roads.
I think I could see, you know, manufacturer here maybe, but I'd never want to see one of those things in Snoqualmie. I mean, they, you know, there's so many problems with wind turbines and, you know, you know, killing birds and killing whales and just, you know, really making the landscape look terrible.
Unless the laws of Washington change, you never have to worry about that, because everywhere you don't see a house, it's critical habitat, so you can't do anything there anyway.
And this presentation wasn't meant to just say, hey, let's turn Snoqualmie into a, a bunch of windmills. I mean, maybe there are parts, maybe there are components. Any one of these industries needs a whole supporting network of manufacturing to make it work. These are just a couple that have been really focused at the state level as emerging technologies.
Andrew, are you the facilitator?
Yes, well, I, I'm sorry. Go ahead and pick people that have their hand up. This is your discussion?
Oh, sure.
Um, I think I, I'd be particularly interested in learning more about the Main Street program as well as the Creative Districts, um, going forward. I think that those might be some options that would be really beneficial. I don't know whether it's just limited basically to what would be on two oh two, or if it could be incorporated. We might incorporate what's up on the ridge as well, but I think that that would be really helpful. It would help draw additional tourists. It would, you know, foster some engagement that way. And then the Creative District might be a great option, especially as we move forward and look into other areas. If we're trying to plan on drawing more people in for food and beverages, you know, with, with wine, whether it's the production and, and the retail, uh, that would be going forward in the middle site. I think that that would be really beneficial. We also have art, artists with their shops and whatnot located there. I think that that would be a good tie-in of what's already existing if we think about what's down um, on two oh two as well. I think that our residents would be happy if we pivoted that direction. Maybe a little bit more so than if we went to, you know, trying to manufacture with fiberglass and things like that. I do like the idea of keeping an eye on the emerging technology, but I, I do also want to be sensitive to the fact that there could be health issues that could be associated with the main factor of some of that. And, you know, looking at our population, I would just want to make sure that we're keeping our, our people safe as well as the environment around here as pristine as managed to keep it.
Just a few things. I, we're an affiliate of Main Street, and the EDC tackled this back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, somewhere around there. Here's the challenge with Main Street. We don't have enough density downtown, and it can't encompass, encompass two or three communities. It can't encompass the ridge as well as the downtown.
Did you say can or can't?
Cannot. It has to be one geographic area and it has to be downtown. We don't have the density. To do the Main Street program as a full Main Street program requires an executive director that is only for that program. It is a flawed national program. And I'll be very blunt about it. We can pick up pieces from it. We can be an affiliate. But for us to go with Main Street, I mean, it's, it's just an unworkable situation for us. We looked at it as the EDC, and I encourage everybody to dig deeper into it. But we don't have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to run a Main Street program a year. So I'll be blunt about that one.
A flawed national program, that's hard.
So the second one is Creative District. And it could be downtown, and we could have one at Center Boulevard. And I think that those are more viable to look at. And then the third piece, and that is their market inequities. So when we talk about the tax exemption for having jobs, well, in order for those jobs that we create here, we're gonna continue this imbalance of people not being able to afford to live here and having to drive in. If we could figure out how to balance that, where you have jobs and the housing to go with it, then that's a win-win. But, um, creating more jobs, eighty percent of our workforce, northbound and Snoqualmie together, ten thousand jobs, eight thousand people commute in every day. So that's the piece we've got to change. But it comes back to what can we do to take care of the market imbalances? We can have people that live and work here. That means they're not spending four or five hundred dollars a month for their car and their transportation, because we are car-dependent. So we've got to figure that part out. If we can figure that part out, the rest helps. But the more that we grow tourism, that's great. But those jobs are going to be coming from people that live outside community. And it's, it's not us. It's inflecting, inflecting on, on communities across the country, especially tourism-rich, um, cities. So just, you know, those are the things, those are the challenges that we need to figure out how can we change the balance.
Just, uh, thank you for that comment. Just a fun fact, USGS has indicated that on windmills, seventy-nine percent of them are made out of steel. For those inquiring minds.
Um, and just an update from the Arts Commission. Uh, they are going forward with pursuing the Creative Art District um, and have been actually approached the state, um, and who was at the last meeting um, to give a presentation on that. Uh, Senator Perry, uh, Senator, uh, Councilmember Perry is, um, actually quite enthusiastic about us pursuing that and does think that we might be able to get around the geographic loophole and include both, um, ridge and downtown as a contiguous, um, geographical area, because it's in such close proximity, less than three miles, so.
Well, that, that group of merchants at Betterway also, you know, they, they were talking about at the merchants meeting the other day that those, those, those guys really want to be included too. They're having a hard time.
But it, they have to provide some kind of artisan type of, um.
Oh, I might be talking about something different.
Yeah, I'm talking. Yeah, I'm talking about the creative art district instead of the Main Street. But it, it, but the...
Domino's makes an artisanal pizza.
Yeah, that might be it. Because, you know, they don't consider it just, just the art galleries and artists and things like that. They actually consider things like, um...
There are also sandwich artists there as well.
And microbreweries and, uh, you know, the wineries and stuff as a, as an art form, even downtown. On, you know where that public parking place is on Railroad Avenue?
No, it's not signed.
It has public parking. I'm gonna punch you right now. But there's a, um, there's an artisan chocolate place right there in one of those houses. It's called Blue Street Chocolates.
How do I not know about this?
Yeah, they are awesome.
Just kind of a point of clarification. I want to make sure that the discussion we're having is, having is relevant and moving us forward rather than backward.
I just learned about...
It seems like we're losing control. Just an observation.
I do want to, you're kind of hitting partially the point I'm at. So, we've got a couple of mechanisms. I'm really interested in what are those mechanisms we can use for economic development? So, I go back to the prior. I really, I really don't care about windmills, wood, whatever. What I care about is what are the mechanisms I can use to facilitate or to foster, call it sustainable, uh, engineering manufacturing jobs? Because part of the way to address the issue you have is we need in some ways to move up the value chain because those service industry jobs are never going to be up. Just by geography, we're going to have a hard time getting housing in those to match. We have to move the jobs up the value chain so we can retain more of those jobs which match our housing. Versus trying to drag the housing back down to those jobs.
Right, those high skilled, high-paid workers goes where they go?
They, they commute in town.
They go, they go to Seattle, they go to Bellevue. But if you had those same jobs available for them in the Snoqualmie Business Park, IDPAA, couldn't they just...
Oh, absolutely. My question is, so how do I incentivize? I, I really don't, they could make, call it widgets. They, they could make pet rocks, I don't care. How, how do I incentivize them to come to Snoqualmie and open a business there?
We, we can figure out a way to do that. There are, there are special people out there that do that.
Yeah, and are, are there programs like Main Street in which we could actually some, either through donations or whatever, get some money to focus in on then doing that recruitment advertisement to do, do that kind of thing?
The State Group Economic Development Association does this all. They did this, you know, more so in Eastern Washington, like Pasco, Richland area. They hone in on someone and they bring them on in, you know, for their own economic development. They did it for AI. They took a big building that was empty for a long time and they went out and found a, you know, found a, somebody to, you know, fill the, fill the space. So, they, they came in, the buyer owned the building, but somebody came in and leased the space and now it's used for AI purposes. And they use that tax credit that I showed you that for the improvements to kind of lure them in. So, there's, there's people out there that can help Snoqualmie, you know, do that. We just have to know what we want to do and then bring them on board to help us do that. So, but I, I don't think that there's much we can do until we've got the space to do it. So, activating the expansion will help kind of quell some of the, you know, concern out there amongst the business park owners. We know at least two, I'm, I'm, I'm sure there's more that kind of say, hey, if you don't do something, we're going to go somewhere else where we can expand our businesses and fully develop our, you know, our industry.
And we're, we're talking about having a, having a round table with businesses at EDC meeting in the near future so we can figure out what their, what their needs are.
So, to Brian's point, if we could, and, and we could look at the demographics of people that live here and work elsewhere and what their profession is and target those industries with the tax incentives of the property tax incentives, then is that...
Well, I, I, I'd have to, we ought to send a letter to Amazon and say, come on out. We'd love you, they may not love you, but we'll love you, come on out. And yes, a large, we, Amazon, Boeing, Microsoft, a lot of them go to there.
Their community survey data, which was shown here in various capacities to help hone in on exactly what industry they're driving to go to work in. Because we can do a lot with the information that's provided. We know where they're coming from, they know where they're going, they know how many people come in, how many people come out. We know, we know the target industries that they're driving to the work in.
Any more questions, comments, or suggestions under economic development before we move on? I'm asking, I'm not pushing, we're fine on time.
Yeah, it...
I was just gonna say, so the next part of the conversation then is go to EDC to do further investigation? Like, how do we actually make progress?
I think there's multiple pathways, not, not just one pathway to any one of these ideas. You know, EDC is one and I put it up there. You know, I, I think it'd be great to get a letter of support from EDC on what I'm hearing about creative districts and Main Streets. I think that to me is just a sure thing. Hit them up and operational, allow money to flow in. We have a great marketing team, you know, internally at the city of Snoqualmie. If we could get the word out that, hey, there's an opportunity for tax donation and it's going to be a good one. Don't you think people would want to participate? If we could reach out and start communicating with these businesses that, that have been here for so long and love Snoqualmie, they would love to see money to use to improve the downtown. I mean, that's a, a sure thing. I think there's more council support and understanding and direction from you, um, you know, as council members on what do you want to do with an annexation strategy, strategy study? We are maxed out right now with getting through the comp plan. I know you've got a budget coming on board, but if we don't plan for what it is that we want to do in the future, like Littleton did, you know, Colorado, we won't get there. And, you know, it'll, it'll take years to get through all the pathway needed to get that property annexed into the city if we want to. It's already rigged and ready to roll with a master plan designation. Slap some contingent zoning on there, understand if you can service the area and then start, you know, start making some good quality decisions based on the information that you have.
For what's already been prepared for that since it predates my time on the council? Would there be the opportunity to have business and some residential, have it be mixed use in there so that we could potentially ameliorate some of the housing issues while also working on some...
Possibly, yeah, possibly. I mean, any, never say never to any of that. You know, there's comprehensive plan amendments that can be made to the designations. There's outreach we can do to determine whether or not any of those other folks are, are interested in, in, you know, residentially annexing into the city. So, we do know there's somewhat limited space. We saw that map and it's no joke, when we took a real serious look at what could be built on it and there's not much. I mean, I'm sure there's, you know, engineering practices that can be used. You can build on almost anything, but the, the fact of the matter is the tribe is buying up pretty much everything they can lay their hands on. And that's not going to be available to build on, you know? And they'll continue to do that year and after year. There's more properties added to the PAA that belong to the tribe than any other organization.
And it happens to be right in the middle of it.
Yeah, it appears, it appears there's a nice purchase from, you know, from south to north that reaches up to the Sailors Lodge. And, you know, we, we watch, you know, PBS and, you know, yeah, there are a strategy that many tribes use is to just buy back whatever they previously owned. And it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a long process, but they've been very successful.
Could you go, oh, pardon me?
Sorry, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to know if we could go back to the map that shows that...
The screen is frozen again. I'm not sure why, it might be a Zoom issue.
I can do a link to it too.
Direct it. So, along the line, is that strategy to, in essence, block development?
I think, I don't know, I, I, I don't, I've never talked to the tribe about it. I just know that a strategy from, yeah, for my...
Discuss right now.
Yeah, it, it's just, it's just something that's been publicized, you know, like on PBS that tribes buy back property.
Why did you want?
Um, it's the, it's the map slide, the second map slide.
The brown one.
The brown one and tan one. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it just so happens that a lot of the buildable area that we sussed out is the, the master.
It's the dark brown that's buildable.
Yeah, and it disaligns with Douglas right here.
Yeah.
It also then makes it so there could never, or at least it would be difficult to have a different route from the ridge to downtown, right? Where's, where's Fisher Park?
It's that, over that green up above.
I think the plan, I think where Seaground is, um, you can bring it straight down that...
There's Fisher, that should probably be the better way of, like, move off of it.
Right, but Fisher, so, Fisher, the Fisher, did you have any?
Yeah, not into there.
Right, I think that was, plan was to extend that down into the...
Not that one, no, the, uh, the, the street coming off the parkway there, coming straight down.
Main Street.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, right down, yes.
Better way, back by the... Happy by the...
Yeah, that's potentially two ways to get in there.
I don't, I don't think Better Way can be extended. I thought there was a house, you know, blocking.
No, because that was Snoqualmie Hills West, wasn't it, that we talked about before right there?
Right, it would have been...
The brown block.
Yeah.
Well, no, the other brown block. The one over by, yeah, Better Way.
Well, I think, I think the whole area, that tan area, a lot of it's been purchased. So, that tan area would have been like Snoqualmie Hills West. Because the plan, I think, was Fisher Street would come straight down into that neighborhood.
That piece, that was one, there was also there...
I can bring up a better map if you want me to screen share one.
But I do want to... Uh, we're not, we're kind of not allowed to annex, build it, and they will come. They will come and then we annex is kind of the process. So, again, I'm back to how do we start to cultivate and grab those entities that may be interested in coming in to those areas and annexes even a bit about? How do we start to go get them? And I'm really agnostic as, other than the, the industry can't do damage to us, but I'm really agnostic to the industry from there to pull them in, uh, as long as it's a, it's a step up the chain. So, but how do we cultivate, encourage, contact, get them, start having those conversations? That's the point I'm, we're looking for us to get to.
So, from my point of view, I think we need to, I think we need to have three, three main points towards us. We need some of our focus to be on maintaining what we got. Um, I think we need to, uh, uh, focus on some expansion that, that is, makes sense and is, is developable with our resources. Um, and then the third thing that, it's kind of crazy, but this is my crazy item, is the city needs some resources so that you have flexibility to make decisions, whether it's land that the city owns that, that you can, you can make a decision on, on how that's going to be developed or a facility. One of the facility, I sat in a, a, a meeting almost a year ago, I think, where the film person was doing a presentation. And alls I could think of is, what if we owned a soundstage? What if the city owned a soundstage here? I, I bet you we would have a lot more filming because they got the outdoors, which they always come to get, and they can do some interiors here too. And, I mean, that's just an idea, like I said, it was crazy. But with, without that infrastructure, we're really limited on how flexible that we really can be, which thereby limits how successful we can be, so.
So, a number of years ago, when both Catherine and, and Brian were on the council, there was a, um, 2015, it was a 2015 study with clusters that kind of outlined targeted industries. We need to kind of...
Okay, that, yeah, and I do have a, a probe out there to get an update on that. And are those industries still valid? Those are the higher paying, the dogs, the engineering, architecture. There's a, there's a whole class of, the whole series of categories. Would those be something that are still suitable today, even though a few years have passed? Would they be suitable for an expanded business park?
Right, I had a discussion maybe a year, year and a half ago with Brian Gardner, who owns Square One and their wakeboarding company. In fact, 80% of the wakeboards in the world come through Snoqualmie Ridge, if you didn't know that. His production has been over in China and it's about 70, 75 jobs. And he'd like to bring them onshore because, you know, one is, is just the unpredictable nature of what happened in 2019, 2020. But the other one is, is the amount of time it takes because you have to do it in production. You can't, you know, um, change things quickly. But here's the, the question for us. Do we want manufacturing? What does it look like? And if we're, you know, what does the tax flow look like? And the last thing we want to do is be like Redmond and put a head tax on. Because when I worked for the National Federation of Independent Business, talked to thousands of business owners across the state, the one thing came up time and time again was a head tax and how it was despised in Redmond. That's part of the reason why Jeannie left part of their production from Redmond, they moved it out to North Bend. But, I mean, we, we have to figure out, okay, if we're going to create jobs, what kind of jobs do we want here? You know, what's going to bring the tax revenue in? But do we want warehouses? And if we have warehouses, how many jobs does that create? And is it the kind of jobs that we want, those high-value jobs? So, we've got this small parcel at the top of the ridge that's an expansion to the business center. And Brian said he's already looking at North Bend for his production. And as, you know, well, it's going to make a lot more sense to have that near where the rest of your headquarters are. Um, and he's not alone. I've talked to others up there that, that would like to expand. That means VTEC is, is another one.
Why is he looking at North Bend versus us?
Because we don't have the land. We don't, the, the business park right now is built out and he needs another, I don't know, 100,000 square feet. We don't have it in the, the existing business park. But if we had expansion area, you know, then he might consider it, especially since we're so close to 18, other than it's going to be messed up.
Well, three years ago. But why aren't we engaging with him? Again, because we can't build it and they will come. With him to say, we have annexation area. You, you can participate in an annexation and we can get you that land and you, you can build out and you can get the advantage of being close and everything else.
It is private property too.
But, but it's, it's Puget Sound Western, it's Puget Western. So, it's Puget, Puget Sound Energy and it's surplus land for them and...
And that's in another area.
Yeah, they do want some expansion there for the transfer state.
Yeah.
Right.
So, you know, there's that. I've heard that, um, the ice arena wants to have two more, two more sheets of ice. Is that what we want up there? So, you know, we only have so much land. What do we really want? What are the high values that are going to help sustain us going forward?
Can I do a quick time check? So, this is a very rich discussion and, but we got about five minutes left. And I, I think there's probably more discussion that needs to happen and, and probably needs to be framed. What I'm hearing, the big deal is, before you can move from discussion to decision, is that there are some data gaps. Fortunately, you have some in here that's very data-oriented, but I, I think gathering some data on, um, you know, what, what is possible. So, my question is, what is the end game of this presentation and what's the next step? Because with five minutes left, I think that we need to agree on the next step so that we can move into our next agenda item. Is that, is just, is that fair? Is that, is just, is that fair?
Yeah, and I, I'd just like to say, this to me is a great discussion, because all I wanted to do was stimulate discussion. Which.
Incredible questions, really, really smart questions and discussion.
So. I guess in part, um. In portion of it, what are the types of economic development opportunities? That we see before us? What are the tools we could use to foster that? Okay, and, and when I, and I get back, when I say types. I, I really, it, it, the type should be a generic term, nothing specific. Okay, we, we get into specific, you really run the risk of. Uh, you're chasing a particular thing that may or may not flesh out, you let the market decide that. Okay, so injury manufacturer, production, you know, call it, what are the opportunity? And also crea- creative, what you call creative commons or whatever. Those are opportunities. And Main Street's an opportunity, or Main Street's actually a tool that we could use to foster the kind of growth we're looking at. Okay? So, what are, what are the opportunities, broad categories, what are the tools to foster that? And then, kind of how do we put that together into a plan that says, we're gonna go engage these areas using these tools? To see what we can bring into the city.
It sounds to me like you're identifying the data gaps, the information gaps, that will help this governing body make informed decisions. So, to close this thing up, are there other information gaps that are elected C? That maybe can be part of this great list that Emily is writing as you speak?
So, you can bring a lot of businesses then, but what is beneficial to the city? And beneficial would be, you know, we talked about value of employment, but also taxation. If you could put a bunch of warehouses here, we don't have a square foot tax right now, so you're not gonna get any some, a lot of it. So, so what are some of the, what are the different things we need to consider?
Environmental sustainability.
Others, I, I mean, Emily is writing, she, she is tracking everything you're saying. Any other data gaps? Wow, what a rich discussion, any final comments, questions, or suggestions? Comments for the, the, the greater good of the, what we're talking about, suggestions for Emily?
I think she did a fantastic job. That's awesome.
Great job, and so while she's tearing down, I'm gonna set up for Mike's discussion.
You want another two minute break?
No, this will take just a mo-, oh, wait a minute, we're on, we're on to a regular break. So, let's take our fifteen minute break and make it ten, if you're okay with that, we already.
Stop share.
No, we, we want it to share, we don't want to click stop share, this is the presentation we're sharing.
Recording now, yeah, but.
No, don't click stop share, he is sharing what he wants to present.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the conversation isn't necessarily presented to anybody who would be listening to the livestream. As we're talking about.
Oh, you're, you're talking about recording, there's no one there. There's no one there.
But they can't come back and listen to it.
So, good, no, we did not record, we paused it, we're recording now. Thank you all for being back on time, you're awesome, and, uh, we've got forty-five minutes allocated for Mike for his presentation and discussion.
Hi, I'm Mike. I was assigned to, uh, talk to you about the, the, the goals that we set up. Earlier in the year, um, I did have all the department heads go through and update that. You have two copies, you have the green sheet, which is what's in the computer, and that is updated. And then you have my presentation, now on my presentation, I deleted some of the redundant columns. On the green sheet, so all the information that's on the green sheet is not in my presentation. Everybody got that?
Can you get a bigger copy? Be nice, I'm feeling.
Yeah, we're frozen. So, um. Since we're frozen, we're not gonna use the presentation, we're just gonna wing it. So.
What's frozen again?
See, don't worry about it, don't worry about it.
Let it go, let it go.
It's fine, it's fine, so.
That's working. Because people online would like to see it.
Yeah, well, I warned him, it's just like every five minutes, this thing freezes.
Yeah.
And I, I don't understand why, if it doesn't freeze on my.
The first slide. Was the goals from our December council meeting, so those of you who are online, who would like to see that slide, go back to the. The minutes of the December. But, actually, Jan- January council meeting had the accomplishments, that is in your packet. Um, so I just wanted to remind you of the things that we did. And, uh, we start out with the fire department running fifteen hundred calls, I can do that off memory, I think. Um, I think we paved a parkway. Um, police department reached full staffing for eighteen days. We obtained about four point nine million in grants last year. Uh, Parks and Public Works replaced the Riverview Playground equipment with the inclusively designed railroad. Um, and Stormwater Forest Tree replaced its street trees on Autumn Avenue. Those were all the ones that were like falling in that one storm and throwing the sidewalks up in the air, it was quite exciting for Phil and Jason. Um, Community Development has launched the city's comprehensive plan, they're, you're into it at this point. Um, the community wide survey was completed, and, uh, those results are available on the website. Uh, as always, Nicole's events were the hit of the year and, and.
It's working again.
Thank you. The winter lights, the big truck day were well attended. And the finance department, uh, did complete the first phase of the ERP. And last but not least, Dina obtained a grant from the Washington Secretary of State. To digitize our public records and switch us over to Laserfish, which is kind of an industry standard. Uh, record keeping software. Close my hand, those fish. Each, so, this is your green sheet, um, Public Safety Committee, it is all updated, the next steps are current. So, there wasn't anything quote unquote completed in there. Um, it's all ongoing, but that's kind of the, the, um. Expected on some of these things like regional involvement and police matters, you're never gonna complete that. So, it just, they are what they are. Um, they have all been updated, uh, same with Community Development Committee. Poor Little Housing, tourism, you know, roundhouse project, that, uh. Um, and then, arson help groups actually did have complete, some completed goals, um, in there, so we, we can pull those out. And that was the, uh, the, the parkway, the side. Sidewalk repair project, um, the programs all stayed, but the projects are finished. So, they are in yellow on your sheets. And Parks and Public Works got three pages, they're all updated to the most current standard. And then, um, the F and A committee also has been updated to the most recent information. And I'm kind of going fast right now on these, because I think you want to talk about the next thing. Let's give you a snapshot in, in time about the organization, the yellow boxes you see on the screen are vacant. Um, ignore the brown boxes, look at just titles of different divisions of Public Works. But look at all the blue boxes, that is a lot of work that Kim Johnson, um, did. So. With that said, we do have a complete, uh, set of department heads now. Um, and they are starting to call us and learn to, learn their roles, learn their, how their staff works, learn about their staff, and start. Looking to see what needs to be done. So, we need to give them time to get their arms wrapped around the mission, and then we will start, uh, knocking things off. Um, our new IT directors are already off and running, he's already fixed teams for the organization. Um, and he was here two days, so, that's a good start. Um, twenty twenty-four work plan, um, so. Well, well, the mayor was on the table. Um, we used a staff meeting to do, go ahead and, and develop this document, which is our work plan for the year. So each department head, um, gave the projects that they were working on this year. And then I took the information and I added it to the. The meat of your green sheets, you know, the council priorities, those six council priorities. And then I indicated the boxes that I thought that they, um. They, they checked, um, so that's Mike's thoughts. And the group, we can change Mike's mind. Um, or one of you can change Mike's mind, I'm not married to any of that. It's just what I thought they were getting. You'll notice the common one through all the departments is the budget this year, that's our heavy lift. We have a, we have to do the budget for the next two years. Of the department heads. I think two have done a budget, um, in government before. So there's gonna be a lot of education. The other thing that's different this year is we're doing budget in Tyler, we're not doing budget in Springfield like we have in the past or, or by Excel. Um, by default, so we will be doing it in Tyler. So, they will be learning that new system, now the great thing about that is, you are going to get budget notes. So, for each line item, we have the option of explaining what that money is, so you're just not gonna get a, a book. That's filled with numbers. You will also have the context at each number of what that, that money is there for. So, I, I'm really looking forward to having that document, it really helps you, you lead your department, because. Oftentimes, you're not sure what that two hundred thousand dollar line item was for, eight months down the road, when the. You know, you're, you're up to your neck in the swamp and all things are going on. So, it should keep us more focused on our missions, and it also should keep us more focused on our budget amounts. Yes.
So, um. First news, analysts, um, I really appreciate the fact, since you've been here, you've had a pulse on overtime. And all that, and through Tyler, we as a council, because we're not to get in the weeds, we're, we're here to set policy, that's, that's it. I, I'm just astounded for the number of years we've had, that we don't have purview on two things. One is, is overtime, so that we can hold directors accountable, and that's really more of a management thing. But, there should be a high level, so that we know, hey, you know, there's a lot of overtime, what can we do to, to re-staff things or reconfigure things? So that it's more efficient with tax dollars, and two is. And this is across every community, we have no idea, when somebody goes in to get a permit. How many days it takes someone to get a permit, it could be a week, it could be three months, it could be nine months. We hear it from people who are frustrated, because, and, and we have no purview. And those high level things in a dashboard to the council, especially F and A, and, and up to the council if necessary. I think are, and I'm hopeful that Tyler will help make those reports so much easier.
Yes, so, I know it exists, I don't, I, I, obviously, we'll have to program it appropriately. But as a department head with Tyler in the past. On my dashboard was the overtime rate for my department by division, um, and that was when I was Public Works Director, so I had seven divisions.
Yeah.
Um. Versus the budget. Good news, on the overtime front, we are going to be coming to talk to you in the next two, three weeks. About an overtime issue in one of our departments and with a proposal to help solve that problem. Um, in fact, we're even gonna talk a little bit about it on Monday, too, so. Um, that is coming, as for the permit tracking software, that's kind of on pause right now, we, we got our hands full with. The, the Public Works Department, getting them up and running in Tyler, and we got our hands full, we get finance and payroll up and running in, in Tyler. So that really will be a twenty twenty-five work point item. Um, the fire department's main project, aside from budget this year, is their reaccreditation. The street, they are going ahead with their strategic plan, because they need it for their reaccreditation. Um, and because of the workload, the time it's gonna take people to get the feet under, the city strategic plan. They're agreed we should move till twenty twenty-five, so that's, yes.
Well, I go back to public safety. Which, um. Here, uh, alternate fire department service delivery models in the comments use need council direction.
Yeah. I did not edit what the department said, I provided that direction, and I'm waiting here.
Okay, I'm just worried, I don't, start, if there's an item, significant item that needs council direction. How's that getting into the strategic plan?
Yeah, um. That, I don't, I don't agree with that comment that was put in there, um, that was. A comment that was put in there, so.
And, uh. Can public safety take that, yeah?
No, to me.
I just had a conversation on that on Thursday.
Okay, but there's an ask to us.
No.
You may have answered it, but there isn't an ask to us. We should at least be aware of what the answer was, uh, and that's probably public safety to have that conversation.
Correct.
Okay.
Um. One of the things we've tasked the fire chief with is getting the EOC back up and running and getting the new department heads in and. Uh, trained and doing exercises, so that they're familiar with it. Um, I think. I think two of us, maybe three of us may have some experience in the EOC. Um, I, not many, so we, we need to get people up and running. I am including the ICS requirements and their, uh, fresh year goals, so that they will be all ICS trained up, um, before they do that. Before the end of the year. His other large proj- project is the wildland fire evaluation, and also the fire apparatus evaluation. Fire apparatus evaluation can be wrapped, wrapping up soon, um, because that needs a role in the budget, obviously. Uh, police, obviously, we have the North Bend contract, the, the union contract, um. And then they have their own accreditation path that, that, that they're in working on, the LEAP study. And they're gonna roll that into an accreditation effort. And they have the budget, that's right, yes.
I'm not understanding the boxes one through twelve.
Um, those are the months that, of the year that we're working on the project.
And there, and there are still twelve of those.
There are still twelve of those.
Thank you.
Yes, you're, so the LEAP and accreditation are gonna be collapsed and, you're convinced and rolled into the line.
They're two different tasks, LEAP goes first and then the accreditation afterwards, so. Um, we, we chose to keep it separate.
And you have the LEAP there.
Basically, LEAP was one of the, um, basically, yeah, creditors come out and do a pre-inspection, for lack of a better word. Uh, we already know we have some issues, in fact, I sent, uh, Patrick up there for a capital, uh, project issue that we have. Uh, we use the Jock contract to knock that out. I, I'm not going into it now on our recorded line.
Yeah, so, but if we didn't find issues, it, it was kind of pointless to do the accreditation.
Okay. Um, this community development. Community development has a lot of projects that they're working on, obviously, the main focus is the budget and the comprehensive. Uh, those are the two heavy lifts that have to be done this year. In addition to that, uh, there's a separate part of the comprehensive plan that we got a grant for, which is the climate change element. Emily got that grant, I think it was a half million dollars. I am tracking, see? Um, and so that is a separate effort from the comprehensive plan, so. That'll be happening separately and then rolled into the comprehensive plan when it's done, and my understanding is that's the way the county wanted us to do it. So that's why we're doing it that way.
And the state, so, so that'll be done in twenty twenty-five, and a part of that half million dollars, it also takes care of the critical areas update. Which you'll see, it's two roads down from. Two roads down from the climate change.
Um, we are involved in the growth target revision. Uh, there's a meeting at the county of a week ago or two weeks ago to set the rules on how they're going to evaluate our application. Um, according to Emily, a lot of other cities are now applying um, to do the same since we did it. But we are way ahead because of Emily. So I'm not worried about a detrimental effect on our application because of that.
To add to that, we're in discussion with another city who is willing to take our housing growth. So so they'll probably submit a letter as well so they can match those up and make it a simpler process.
Therefore. Um.
Are they taking the seven hundred that we say that we can't build? Are they taking about two hundred of those that we say that we can?
We're gonna have further conversation with them. They, they might be able to take all of it. And if they can't, we know another city that's wanting growth too, so. Good job, man.
She's planning to do an annexation strategy study, uh, mixed use final plan amendment, uh, rebranding, marketing study, uh, look to streamline permitting. Uh, historic downtown code of amendments, um, hopefully there's a bell site design review this this uh, within this year. Uh, private timeline revisions, uh, emergency housing. The community rating system recertification she's already involved in, uh, they had their first meeting last month. And all that elevation program programs and ongoing program. Uh, and then both public works and community development are going to work together to look at the development standards that are in the code. We've been relying on the 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 adopted uh, warehouser development standards. But now that that project's kind of done, we need to roll those standards into the code to set the standard for development in the town. So it's it's consistent, if that's what council or planning commission wants it to be. Yes.
Will police and fire have any part of those conversations? Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, you don't zone without them at the table. Or you wind up with streets that you can't get a fire truck down, right?
Yes.
That never happens. And then, uh, the home acquisition program, uh, one of which would be the White House on two oh two. And if you look, like I did this morning, you'll see a whole bunch of markings all over the streets or inching closer to knocking that down. So that's all the the underground information about where the cable lines are and everything else. So when the contractors knock it down, they don't sever the fiber. That would be bad.
Yes, he was out yesterday marking.
Good. Next, we have Park and Public Works, their work plan for the year, obviously budget again. Um, they also have an E R P project that is taking a lot of time. They are doing very, very, very well. In fact, they are probably about a month ahead at this point. Um, I was in there just this week and they were starting to uh, actually upload the lists from the spreadsheets. So now they're going to start working in the Tyler environment. Um, and that's a very good sign and no one was running for the building string. So that's a really good sign. Um, so with that will come work orders. Performance tracking, et cetera. So that's other things that can be selected and placed on dashboards. So that you know age, how the work orders are are progressing and everything else. We will be coming, we, sorry, they, I'm not there anymore. They will be coming to you um, in the budget to ask for a component of Tyler that was not purchased. That component is called Tyler three one one. And that is an app based component for the citizens. So that they can report problems directly to public works and not have to go through their council member or through the newspaper or or send a pigeon or however they've been doing in the past. We, sorry, they, I'm not over there anymore. They love the that program because it takes a lot of the guesswork out of those calls that we get. We'll get a call about a broken uh, uh, bench at Centennial Park. Okay, which one? There's twelve. We don't know which one it is. But if they take a picture of that broken bench, we did the work already to identify every bench at Centennial Park with a G P S location. And the computer automatically matches it all up and pre fills out the work order. So the work order is sitting in the manager's um inbox when he shows up or he gets the message. And all he has to do is check it for completeness and then assign it to an employee to go fix. Better parts are, that's just the good stuff. The really good stuff is when the employee shows up to do the work, the employee clicks on here. Automatically Tyler lets the citizen know that somebody showed up to work on that problem. When the employee clicks, I'm done, Tyler automatically notifies the citizen that it's been fixed. So no more of those, well, did it get fixed? Did not get fixed or any of that stuff. Here, I had a question before you, sorry.
No, no, that's fine. I was just gonna make a comment that probably the council members will still be getting the phone calls. And then app ourselves.
Okay. Yes, so could we on our our webpage put a button for for citizen feedback rather than, because it seems like they default to contact the council members when they, and then one of us has to send the message on to you. But then it goes to a form and they fill it out. It's like related to parks, streets and whatever, and then boom, it's over to you much faster than waiting for the council members to forward you.
We, we absolutely will, but understand there are people in this world that look to report things to the top. They don't want to deal with the middleman. They want to go straight to the top. So a lot of what you receive are from that 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 personality. And some of that will continue, but hopefully this will help in the interim.
Yeah, be the top, Rob. Get it up.
In fact, I think, uh, I think a report came in last week about potholes. And I think we got about four days of going back and forth over these potholes. Which one it was. And and three one one really will eliminate all of that. Yes, sir.
The yellow box.
Yellow boxes, these, these are not, we're not sure that these projects are going to occur. A decision point needs to occur before. So, for example, the community center. Need to make a decision whether or not we're going to build it first. So I put the remainder of those boxes yellow because we weren't sure. Uh, Town Center Phase Three, River Trail, the Meadow Brook Bridge, Eagle Lake Reservoir. There's still decisions required on all that, so I didn't want those to be the same color.
Very well, thank you.
Um. Obviously, we have the community center expansion. We had a part of our page term meeting with the complete design on Thursday. Um, so that will be coming to parks and public works at the next uh, committee meeting for an update. And then the plan is that we will have the number on or about May third, so look for the second meeting in May to start the discussion on whether or not we'll proceed. Uh, splash pad has kicked off. The three eighty four sewer line project is planned for later this summer. Uh, the water reclamation facility is off and running. If you ever find yourself between the hours of, say, ten and two, with some free times on your hands, you should call over to public works and ask for Andrew and ask to get a tour of the project. And he can take you around and show you what's going on. It is a massive civil engineering project and 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 it's something you should see. It's something you all should see. Uh, Sandy Cove, Sandy Cove Bank Restoration, the first phase was completed last summer. The second phase is going in this summer. Um, you know, creek bridges are happening uh, later this year. Ongoing payment management, et cetera. All those contracts are still ongoing. And once again, the big thing is the budget. Any questions about public works? Yes, sir.
The Kimmel Creek Bridges, are those the ones on Meadow Brook Way?
Correct.
Uh, okay.
Any other questions about public works? I happen to know the most about that one. And then we have uh, finance administration, um, finance, budget, 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 budget. And E R P, E R P, E R P, E R P. Uh, recently, we decided on a new go live date for the payroll system for Tyler, and that will be October first. Uh, we have found local talent through Tyler who we have brought in to work with a select group of five employees to go as a tiger team to go through and audit the information that has already been and work that has already been done and fix it. And then get that up and running. Um, and so our go live date is October first. If you backtrack from there, we should start our parallels in August. Um, or even late July, uh, which is a really good sign because that's where we didn't get to. That's where everything fell apart. So. Any questions about Tyler? And then, uh, as always, you know, finances is doing uh, sales tax and you, they got a utility rate study and they're doing the comprehensive fee study. The B N O tax audit. They're going to be bringing a spare footage taxes to you soon, I think. In the next month or two to start thinking about that. We have to redo the cable franchise agreement that is on the on the work plan.
Is it expiring?
It did, already.
Expired.
Cause that makes a contest that it is. Yeah, that's the event. He said, we need to talk about it.
So, um, we may be looking for some consultant talent.
Really long.
Fifty years.
Seventy five, all right.
So we need to think about what that looks like, rather than just helping it.
Yeah, rather than, thank you, thank you for cable, whatever you are. Was done originally.
And then, uh, that Teamster retro process is ongoing. We're having a meeting with the union on the eleventh um, regarding those retro payments. So we are working our way through the new, getting the new contract done. Um, administration, obviously, it's budget and staffing and that's what preoccupies me a lot of the time. Um, to the point where I dreamt about staffing the other night.
It's a good dream, bad dream.
Right, yeah. Well, it told me, it told me I have a problem. I have to stop using Legos because I dreamt all my people were Lego people there.
I want to see the video on that journey.
Um, staffing or recruiting is ongoing. Uh, we still got a few positions to fill down in public works. We have positions to fill in community development. We have an assistant fire chief position that may have closed on Friday or is closing next Friday. Don't remember exactly. Um, so a lot of work there. Our next big push after these two months to get everything filled, we are going to start pushing out training and that's going to be going out to everybody, including uh, some of you. So we will be pushing out, you know, the standard trainings to keep the organization from getting into trouble like sexual harassment ethics and all those important things. So, uh, we will be doing that through an online service that we already pay for. We don't have to pay anything more. Public Works pays for J J Keller training um, uh, to meet our, uh, L and I here, not OSHA, L and I requirements in this, out there. And as part of that training, they also have the training we need for the other things. So we're just going to use that. Now it's in place. It's it's an easy tool. We'll gauge the quality of the training as we use it, and if we need to upgrade in the future, we will consider doing that. Um. The E R P H R module needs to get going. That will be, that is, that is paralleling the um, payroll module and it runs about two months behind. So, because this has to go first. I I had a conversation with her this week about ways, strategies speeding that up. Uh, next one is the personnel policies update. Personnel policies are about ten years old, I think. Um, and that they were supposed to be updated last year. It didn't happen. They got reassigned um, to us. We've been working with Summit Law to get that done. We are finally got a draft at the first first dish of the year, maybe in February, don't quote me. Um, we went through the draft. Uh, they now have those edits. They are making those edits and Kim and I are meeting in Seattle with Summit in April to go over that draft, work through some other things, and then get the final draft uh, coming forward. Um, so that should be wrapped up hopefully by uh, July. Um, and then our wellness and safety committee is off and running and they're killing it. Not really, they're doing great. Sorry, not with that one.
Or hers, of course.
But Sam is doing great. Uh, they just had a an event at a Centennial Park. I was stuck in a meeting. Um, apparently the police department really liked that event and there was a lot of participation. Um, River Walks are still the best participated events that we, event that we had though. I keep telling them wellness needs to put ice cream machines in it all.
It's a wellness thing.
So that's our work plan for twenty twenty four. You may think, well, what about this? What about this? And I kind of go back to what I started this with, my conversation with, where I got a new team of directors that are learning to work. They're learning the roles, they're learning to work with each other, and I'm really not trying to load them up. Um, I I want them to stick around. I want them to gel. And then as they start hitting speed, then we can start putting more stuff and obstacles and 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 tests to go. This is just the beginning.
Yeah, I would say that they are pretty loaded up too.
They are loaded up.
And three of them are promoted within, so.
Correct. Uh, public works still needs to get assistant director um, to be fully uh, locked up. Fire needs an assistant. Fire chief over here, uh, community development needs planner. So there are some pretty significant positions that are still unfilled, so. I think I'm done. We still have time for a little more. So, yes, sir.
Hi, this is really thorough. Um, I I just want to say, I'm so pleased that you're in this position. You are so good at this and uh, the city is truly blessed. As our, it's a city, thank you.
Thank you. It's not me, it's my team. They do great work.
Well, that's what somebody like you would say.
I like to be the bad guy. Any other expressions or mysteries or? Please back up.
Okay.
Uh, still quite some.
The former, uh, yeah, that one, that one, um, so what is going on with the River Trail project?
Uh, they are just about wrapping up design. Um, and it's kind of depend, there's a big package coming in the C I P. And depending on decisions that are made on resources, it's either going to be ready to go or not ready to go. Yes.
Or, um, I know we're demolishing the house that's down there on two oh two that's all boarded up. Um, what about the other, you're trying to purchase the, or the city's trying to purchase the other houses along there? Is that where it's going to run or is it going to deviate around to the other side of the pond?
We have the property acquisition program and I believe those properties are identified to be future acquisitions. We are not actively trying to push people out of their homes, um, but.
Are they in the line of the proposed?
That that program covers anything along the river.
Right, right. But are those homes in the projected path of the?
I believe the alignment goes around them.
Oh, it does go. We have a whole list, like seventeen houses that's, and as they come up. Yeah, that's when we look at them. Yeah, okay, okay. You don't go knock on the door and say, hey.
Yeah, no.
No, we don't do it. But, uh, can we take opportunity probably and pull the work sometime to review the map of?
Yes, it's a great idea. Also, I I see it as River Walk. I also hear River Trail. What are, what are we going with?
It's Trail, Trail Walk.
A lot of the funding right now that's doing the design work is from the Department of Commerce. So we had like an over a million dollar grant that is being applied and used right now for that.
We get some more of those.
We're trying, trying. Five billion would be good.
I did apply for five million in federal funding for the community center project. Um, we did that in the blind because Congress didn't get their priorities out this year.
Like they have.
In years past, so we just sent one in. So hopefully there's a aligning priority somewhere in there that it hits.
And then, um, it might be just good conversation for parts of public works to refresh on town center phase three. Fact, let's go and everything that is, you know, and then you're looking for kind of a decision. And I assume like this month of the community center.
It'll probably be next. We'll, we'll begin that discussion next month. I don't think it's going to be a consent item. So I think we may be talking about that at a couple council meetings. So I would imagine probably that decision coming down sometime in June or July.
And what is that decision? With what?
Uh, show community center expansion.
Okay, so your statements are still singular. Mine is plural because there are options. That we wanted to talk discuss that. May be driven by what funding is available to it. So I've been.
Correct.
Okay. I just, I I keep hearing singular talk on community center where it's a plural and it disturbs me, sorry.
We had a long talk about options yesterday. A direction was given to them that match our funding.
Louis was next and then Rob. So, um, the waste management, waste management contract. I don't see that on here. You need to keep reading.
Construction for parks and public works, green finance for money. Gray for administration. Fire got red, PD got blue.
And and this goes back to Brian's comment because we are putting anything on the ballot. If we wait another year to put it on the ballot. That means the five, the funding isn't going to come in until twenty twenty six. If we put something on now, unless we found thirty two million in grants to fill the bucket. For getting the, the, um.
Seventeen. I take thirty two. Don't, don't.
Gap, seventy millions. But it anyway.
I don't know how far you want me to go into this here. But I really would encourage any inquiring minds to be at the next Parks and Public Works committee meeting. Where you'll be receiving a briefing on the meeting that occurred on Thursday, Thursday, and then, um, we're, we're moving forward from there.
You still up levels?
Yeah, I know. I was just kind of thinking about what Councilmember Dwight said. I, yeah, because I mean, even trying to get something on, um, you know, um, for this year, even, you know. In November, we got to have the pro and con committee, which my understanding is that those materials would have to be into the. Uh, key county elections by May. So I mean, we're really up against it. So is that, is that realistic even?
She feels so awesome.
She's so.
Well, I I I'll go this deep. I know I go down a little bit. At this point, at this point, we have missed the construction window for twenty twenty four. So, anything we do, construction wise would be beginning in twenty twenty five. We still need a decision soon because long lead items. Also known as transformers that take two years to get. We need to start going down that path if the decision is going to be to move forward. So that's why we are going to be bringing the package to you. In May. And then we can start those discussions.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Go up a slide.
I'm sorry.
Go up a slide. Uh, emergency housing, what is that?
Oh, that's, I I do not have a briefing on that.
You find that out?
It's two hundred and eighty seven units by twenty forty four. Both of what? Emergency housing units. Did Reagan housing waiting for earthquake? No, it's for people that are displaced and and right now there's sixty. About sixty eight beds being handled between North Bend and Snoqualmie by Snoqualmie Valley Shelter now reclaimed.
Uh, okay. I just, I just didn't understand what emergency help.
So this is two hundred and eighty seven more beds. For us alone.
I'll be joined, okay.
Why we have emergency.
Um, I did send you all an email on Thursday about a. Great idea that the bar association had that has a pretty significant impact to our budget. So I really encourage you all to read that. Like, so the two to three quarters of a million dollars. Public defender costs. So, um. Yeah.
Anything else for Mike before we move to, uh, our next agenda item?
Are we running out of time?
Um, we've got about six or seven minutes left.
Okay, I'm still, uh, just the, uh, is community development? You guys are engaged in the, the rebranding marketing study?
Brian, do you remember the branding one oh one presentation I did five years ago for council? I was approached by Emily, uh, a month and a half ago, and I gave that same presentation to her. And so I know it's on a front burner for some sort of presentation to council. I don't know what your timeline is, but. I know that they're coughing and thinking about.
I'm still looking for how we pay that contract coming up. Okay, so I I I need some exploration on, or you may say no. By request, you know, is there some restructuring that can occur within public safety to help offset some of those costs? How are we going to pay for those costs coming up? Because my opinion, we're underwater now when this contract hits. So I'm really concerned. I'll, I'll leave it at that because I know we're going to have ongoing discussions going forward in regards to. Okay, um. But, uh, what's the, the fire apparatus?
Um, the discussion on our future fire apparatus. Do we need a rest country unit? Do we need a second aid card? Do we need? Just, we need to have that discussion. The fire chief needs to present a plan for fire protection services. In for our city. So that's what that discussion is.
Okay.
Interesting point in that discussion, if I remember right, is there a certain apparatus that we can get? That can kind of pay for themselves by the amount that they would be. Uh, rented by, by other, um, departments and, um, so, uh. A strategic look at what kinds of apparatus we want. We want to procure is, uh, is smart.
I'm watching you on that. It'll never pay for itself.
Right, but. I don't, I don't think it needs to pay for itself, but, but if it, if it, if there's an offset.
It will be gone a lot. So we need it here when we need.
Yeah, it it would be like a used fresh tender. And during, uh, wildland season to potentially rent out. And then it could potentially because of some of the, the theory is because of some of the. Um, prices that are paid for, for other depart, by other departments that it could pay for itself potentially. Bring in enough to buy our own tender to keep here all the time and answer to the leaders. It's just one of those things we're thinking about because of climate change with the urban wildland. Uh, fire potential interface around here with the hot weather and the winds we've been having the last few.
Think the other thing too is some of these plans have a lot of. Items and I think this goes to Brian's comments too. I think at some point the council needs to say, these are the priorities. These are the lesser priorities. Um, so that we can get the stuff done that needs to be done and. My, my one consternation is we have a lot of stuff coming from staff. We've got. Folks with a lot of expertise, for instance, on the E D C. That can help us vet some of this stuff as part of the priorities. And then the council gets the final sale. What should be the priorities? And for the administration that to carry out. I, I see that there's so many things on the plate. They're not all going to get the equal attention and, and we need to have a process in place so that we can. Um, be able to prioritize that a little bit better. And I'm part of what came through the E D C is we had a list of ten different things. Number eleven was S R eighteen. And we took a look at that and some Roger McCollum and I and said, no, eighteen needs to be one of the top items. And it became one of the top items, but I, I think that's our role because we are to set policy. We're not here to, to worry about whether, you know, um. A certain piece of equipment is something we need, but it's like, okay, we've got to hit revenue. Department Director, how are we going to get that revenue? And we just need to find tweak that, um. Mechanism. In how that goes about. So I think that's, you know, your comments are very.
I think a lot of parties would be set into the budget process as well.
Right. That's the ultimate say.
Right, exactly.
Many of those parties that can be set before my staff does their work to submit their budgets would save a lot of time.
Amen. Good job.
You did well, though.
There's about six bunk rooms up there.
Roll an oxygen bottle over here.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Mike. So. We are right on time. We are now at, um, addenda item number four on your agenda. And we're going to start this conversation. We're going to have thirty minute lunch. Uh, which, uh, Louis was showing that that's basically a working lunch, but I do want to give you a little time to check your. Cell phones, email, things like that. Uh, Dina is in the process right now of setting up her lunch. But this a- agenda item is what I mentioned before, review and potentially revise when appropriate. Uh, priorities, right? We have six priorities and each priority. Is supported by one to a few, uh, goals and objectives. By the way, uh, in terms of our discussion, goals and objectives are not. Not goal and objective, it's goal and objective. So you can see in our first priority here. Uh, which is encourage economic vitality. And we're going to be looking at the priority first. And then move over to the goals slash objectives. And what we're doing here is looking to see based on our current reality and the way things are changing post pandemic. If there is any wordsmithing that needs to be done. And so we have time, uh, to go through this and have some conversation around it. Um, so that is the goal. We're now until twelve fifteen, we'll do a thirty minute lunch. And then we'll come back to this agenda item completing the remaining priorities and associated or aligned. Goals and objectives. With that, um, primer, does anybody have any questions about this agenda item? Okay, so we'll go through each of these one at a time, one priority at a time, and we're going to go horizontal. So the first of six is encourage economic vitality. Now you know the priorities are all, you know, three, four words. They're, you know, big, you know, they're, they're focal points and then supported by, you know, what we're going to do. To assure that this priority is actuated. So first priority, encourage economic development. Is that shell stable? Do you need to talk about it? Uh, do we need to? Delete a word, add a word? What do you think? And again, some of these may be fairly shell stable. And so just because we're looking at it, that doesn't mean that we're asking for changes. You know, i- if, if there's something that's changed since we last revised this in June of twenty twenty two. Then, uh, we would do that. I saw Ethan's hand first and then Brian. Go ahead, Ethan.
I, I would, I was at a few of us were at a, um, merchants meeting the other morning and, um. They were talking about, by the way, they were, yeah, they were talking about attracting specific. Uh, development like, uh, I, uh, one of the, uh, merchants there was talking about how. We really need more restaurants. Um, Emily, Emily made, uh. An allusion to the woodman that if that, you know, we need, um, but, but that, uh, restaurants are. An incredibly important, right? And so I wonder if we want something in there, uh, that says something about targeted. Uh, specific, you know.
So, good point. And, and I'm, I'm going to be, uh, to Brian and then to Louis. So retail is in here. There, there's two different ways of looking at it. And whichever way you want to look at it is the right way. And I'm going to be notating everything here. So each priority. Like if there's a change on the priority, I'm going to go P one in this change. And then I would go P one. G one, G two, G three. So you're going to see me doing some weird coding so I don't mess things up. So two ideas, and I'm not doing, and I encourage the rest of your colleagues to jump in. Um, that, that really falls more under hospitality than retail. So we can attract more retail, E G. Uh, restaurants and hospitality, or you could add a third goal category. That is very specific. Um, also, in this, there is a third column called action items. Which we are not reviewing, but it may be more appropriate to be under one of the action items. Under this. I mean, so there's lots of. There, there's lots of different ways of looking at it. Uh, I, I'm correct, Mike. The, the column to the right of goals and objectives is action items?
Yes.
Okay.
And once you say the lot of that word, what's what we saw here is the tracking.
Yeah, and we're not getting into the, the tracking tracker and we're not really focused on action items. It's really. This higher strategic strata, but based on what Ethan said, hey, uh, specifically restaurants. Um, is, you know, um, and that was identified by Emily. Do we add a fourth area? Do we add a pendant to attract more retail? Do we change this to attract more retail and hospitality?
Like that.
I think that we're, I think that what Ethan's asking for is that we really call it out. Um, and so one of the options a cat like attract retail and hospitality development. Is that something that makes sense? That too, yes.
Yeah, so I know on the, well, Ryan added.
Well, we're not, we're not leaving the topic. Did you have, so the hands went up before Ethan talked about this.
Go ahead. Yeah, I have something to add to this specific topic. So on C D, um, the community development committee. Uh, as one of the discussion points, I know this is one of the big discussion points that we're going to have in one of our upcoming committee meetings. But I agree with, uh, uh, council member, uh, Vincent. That it, it should be one of the objectives now. I think hospitality is.
I think hospitality is broad, specifically.
As is retail.
Right, right, I think that's very, very broad, specifically, I know there have been calls for, you know, what can we do to attract more restaurants? Center Street and as well as downtown.
Yeah, and in that conversation, she not only said restaurants, which was really the focus, but also said, you know, kind of a, a hotel. And both of those fall under hospitality, so good point, so I think we have two options and if there is a third, you know, let me know. I'm not the boss, I'm just trying to facilitate the conversation, one option would be to add hospitality to this, attract retail and hospitality development. Another one, to, to your point Louis, is because it is so broad, is add a fourth goal category. Under economic vitality, I kind of like to go around the room and get other people's thinking. Both are going to address the comment and you brought it up Ethan and there's a lot of positive, yeah, we, we need to make sure that's called out. So, but what's your thought?
Well, the other thought that I had is that I think another really important aspect and I, I, I don't see it in any of the other priority. Fitting, fitting perfectly into any of the other priority categories, but I think that it's also, you know, important to attract people to Snoqualmie. With things like the model train museum and I think that kind of thing. To me, to me, that, that fits in encourage economic vibrancy more than any of the other priority categories and I think that. We might need a fourth.
And so what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that we're going to choose, we're going to eat this elephant one bite at a time, so before we get into the museum. Which is tourist attraction, maybe not, well, hospitality certainly is, so let's, let's make a decision on the hospitality piece first. And then let's move over to, or, or do you see them in the same bucket?
I'm going to, I'm going to okay the hospitality change, I've, I've already decided.
Do you like the hospitality appended to this or its own separate category, that's.
I think, I think it fits in there, in that one.
I know I got a, an affirmation from Cara, Brian's on the fence, well, and tell me what you're thinking.
That's the new clapping.
I thought this was, whoops, did I do that on recording?
I think you're below camera, you're alright. So. I, I kind of have, I don't have necessarily issue with the bullet, although this does represent what our priority is, okay. So is my priority retail and hospitality? Okay, but if you're going to do that, I would also business park professional services. Again. Just focusing on hospitality is going to bring in things that will result in other issues that we need to address.
So what, that's a really good point, one question is, you can see all six priorities, I can't. Is there another priority that the business park? The thing that has to do more with business rather than tourism, is there another priority that would be a, a more appropriate fit for that goal? And if there's not, then after we make a final decision, and I think we have with hospitality, then I want to move over. And I, you know, we've got a, a couple of different things going, we've got the hospitality and then there's, you know, the train thing and. I just want to make a decision on one before we move to the other.
I, I think hospitality is great, but also need one that says tourism development as well as. Professional services or business park, just called business park.
So before we move there, am I putting hospitality here, let's, let's just say, let's just. So attract retail and hospitality development, if you're okay with that, then that will be done, I will notate it and then we'll move to the next conversation. I also recognize Louis that you have your hand up and, I mean, this is kind of.
Bob does too.
I thought it was Rob, yes Catherine.
So we can, we can attract them, but we also want to retain them. And we need retail development that also encourages our residents to shop here. So what do we need, we need retail, we need full service, full services, and then you need hospitality to retain and attract. So to this small shop here, it's in also a residence can run and get the doctor's please or whatever they need for when their kids need them that night.
Okay, so.
We got a Trader Joe's coming in, which.
We got a lot of ideas, but I, I kind of need to organize this based on the format that we have. So we just made a decision, priority one, goal one, we're adding hospitality. So I've got three different things and I need to do this one at a time, so trust me in this organization. You were talking about other tourism attraction like the train museum. You were talking, pardon me?
Model train museum.
Model train museum, you were talking about business parks, very different, you were talking about something else. So let's just do these one at a time and then after we do. What Ethan's comment is, I wanted to honor Louis because he was next in line. So in terms of the idea of the model train, would that be appended to this or is that a separate category? Separate category, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Tourism that fall under this.
Yeah.
So a goal four would be tourism and then we're going to put some things underneath that, is that right?
I'm wondering if this priority is just too big because so many things seem to fall within it that maybe it needs to be broken into a couple of different priorities. Because the way we're talking with a focus on business park, that kind of thing and, and tourism. We, we might have five different goals and objectives underneath this one priority and.
And, and I'm going to suggest at the priority level, we look at it as a portfolio and not isolate one at a time. So we've got encourage economic vitality, we've got bolster neighborhood livability, very different than what we're talking about. Invest in transportation infrastructure, very different than what we're talking about, enhance quality of life. Assure a safe community, that's a public safety issue, ensure fiscal transparency and operational stability. So to your point, are, are you suggesting that we should add a seventh priority that is tourism?
I, I don't, I don't know, I just am noticing that this first priority that we're looking at is becoming. It, it, it's a very involved priority.
And I would suggest that they're all big, yeah, but I get your point, so. Getting back to tourism. Let's just do it one at a time.
The way she raises her hand, it's, it's, it means she has something to say.
Something on tourism, correct?
Well, I was just going to say, my, my personal recommendation would be to keep the priority is encourage economic vibrancy and then probably break it out between hospitality, retail, tourism and the business park. Under the goals and objectives and set those so that we can have individual action items for each one.
And strengthen cities employment base fits in all four of those.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah.
Cool, so there, there was a, a great cogent recommendation, would you list those? Goal groupings again under economic vitality?
Yeah, so I was saying hospitality is one, retail is one, tourism is one and the business development.
Okay, are, are you guys good with that? Because that takes the whole category, kind of breaks it out in a, and it covers what I think is everybody's thing, I have not forgotten about it. You're being very patient.
The point is that it probably should be its own, when we talk about hospitality, because we're going to add it, attract retail and hospitality development. But hospitality should probably be its own goal and objective.
They're all big goals, yeah.
Right, because then we would have to break out action items.
Well, we're not doing action items though today.
We're not doing that today, but.
So what I heard though is that everybody liked Cara's idea, so it's tourism. Remember my box, I can't spell, the next one was, did you say retail?
Retail.
And the third?
Tourism.
Pardon me?
Tourism.
I got that already.
Okay, sorry, hospitality?
Hospitality, thank you.
And the business park development.
Love that, that's a smart solution.
Wow, just kind of brought everything together, didn't, this, this is, this is.
This is a general rule of Cara raises her hand to skip everybody.
Well, I'm not going to argue with that, okay. Super, so notice that these, so we've great, we just took three goal categories, made them four. But as these, and none of them are more than like six, seven words, a lot of them are three, should we go ahead and then just kind of. Identify what's in each of these so that they're fully baked or is that something you want to do at a different time or?
So I, I think first of all, and I'll try to make it as concise as possible, attract real retail development, part of that was out of this, this. Frustration that some of our retail stores became medical storefronts. Up on Center Boulevard, I love the fact and, and Cara, you did an excellent job of, of summarizing. And I really like to see us put together an economic development strategy plan. And that's the part of encourage economic vibrancy and you can take all four of those and do overlays, map overlays. Of where we want to put the concentration on and you know, maybe woodman, because we don't own the woodman, we don't have any control over that. Maybe we need to look at like food truck policy, like Dival's done and say, okay, we're going to have food trucks to help supplement. And we're going to encourage it and we just need to make sure the power is where they need to be. And that might be part of that overlay, but then we can pick each one of those and go through them and say, okay, tourism, where do we need to put the support? So that we help drive tourists to that location, so.
Two observations and you can tell me if I'm all wet, number one, economic planning is already there, it's a key element of the comp plan, it's happening now. The other is everything you talked about like food trucks, those are tactics that would be in support of these strategic categories. And they would fall under the action items.
Right.
So this is all being recorded and everything you said is 100% correct, but I, I think that's a little too detailed to fall under the goal part, this is a higher strategic strata? Yes, like.
I just would recommend adding two words, attract and protect. It sounds like that's what.
Okay, well. Couldn't we, couldn't we make the case that all of them would have attract and retain? Except for business development, you were actually talking Brian about a business park, were you talking about expanding our business park?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be a different adjective. So kind of going with, with my, and I heard the retain earlier, would, would it make, would you guys be okay with to. Attract and retain tourism venues, attract and retain retail outlets. Attract and retain hospitality venues, expand on our existing business park. Is any of that, I think we have two conversations.
No, but I'm looking for, I'm looking for a different.
Different than attract and retain?
When we get into these conversations of the type of retail we want and guys, you can't pick it.
Right, but that would be at the action item level.
Tops we'd have today if we could pick what we wanted, so we do need to provide the opportunity. And the environment for the business part, I don't know that we can work on retention because if a business is bad, it needs to go away. Okay, but we need to have the environment which given, if it does it right, it can surround.
But if we're attracting and retaining, wouldn't we attract the ones that we'd want to retain? Because you could attract a very attractive hospitality venue and lose them.
Individuals will determine what they're bringing forward, we can encourage.
So what you're saying is I don't want to attract and retain, is that what I understand?
No, I'm, no, I do want to attract, I want to provide the opportunity, I want to show the opportunity of, here's a great place to open a business. Okay, but I want those people we're attracting to decide what would be the best business to have in there.
We're not getting into, that's if the action item list, you know, the specific individual categories, as we talked about before, tourism and retail. And hospitality, those are all big umbrellas.
Let me go back down to the, the business park one, maybe that's your hand, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily a business park, but I'm looking for.
Commercial.
Commercial businesses, manufacturing, distribution, whatever, something that. Broadens the base versus retail, okay?
If, if attracts commercial enterprise?
Okay, and we can have a discussion from there.
You can always wordsmith this later, but I want to, I'm just trying to manage our time to get through.
Lateboard shop or another glass manufacturer or space labs.
So you're, you're thinking bigger than just the, the business park, you're talking about attracting and retaining commercial enterprise?
Yes.
Okay, well, if everybody else is okay, then we finished one of those four.
Employment park. And then I chose the word protect because that is what you could do with a zoning code. Is you can, you can do ordinances to protect uses. That's why I didn't go with the word retain.
So let's eat this elephant one at a time and take them from top to bottom and we just need to add, we just need to include adjectives, tourism. Attract and retain or attack, attract and protect tourism.
I think is we have projects will fall in there, that's we have the model train, we have the roundhouse.
We're not getting into that level of detail.
Tourism development.
So are you saying establish a tourism development plan, is that what the goal is?
I, I think the idea is to, to dial in on what are our real priorities, I don't know that it's necessarily a bad thing for us to name some of these. Enormous projects that are going to be.
Right, what I'm suggesting Ethan is you're 100% right, but that's at a different level in this document. It's at a level we're not dealing with and that's the action item, so it's just like each priority is supported by multiple goals and objectives. Each goal is supported by multiple action items. And all of that has to happen, but we're not doing that today because it'd have to be a two day retreat.
Encourage and support tourism. And underneath that you have like the model train.
That'd be over in the action.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Say what you just said.
Encourage and support tourism.
Hey, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Because that's going to be a compass heading for those to populate the action items and get to that detail. Thank you.
Would you like, would you go with encourage and support versus protect?
Okay, retail. I, I mean, you literally could do, have the same thing and encourage and support retail.
Say that one, I'd say protect because it sounds like there's hard feelings because of, of use changes on Center Street. And downtown.
Oh.
And downtown, so.
Or we're going to zone, build professional offices?
That's certainly a tool you can use if you choose.
Well, then what, what you're suggesting Mike would be to attract and retain retailers?
Or protect, protect and support.
Yeah, I, my former city, our entire downtown became churches. Every, every, every building became a church and our tax revenue went to zero. And it was a significant problem, so we passed an ordinance to exclude churches from the downtown area.
So we have to go through the same conversation through six priorities. And we have lunch in seven minutes and I really, no, I, I really would like to finish this first priority to this to keep us going. So, but we're getting really close and, and I'm going to ask you to not argue about wordsmithing. Argue was the wrong word, to not get into a lengthy discussion about wordsmithing adjectives and things like that. Because we're not writing a document for legal review, we're, we're just, you know what I mean?
Peace, but. It may be a word, it may be a word in there, but there's, there's a debate in there, a, a issue in that. Yes, in some of these areas, instead of retail, you're getting professional services. Really from our standpoint. If, if a restaurant thought it could do better, wouldn't it have been in there? And if the best economic value of that property is a professional services business, why would we interfere?
Yeah, but.
I, that's why I said this, it's a word, but there's a, there's a debate in here.
The but part is if you have a. The but part is if you have a restaurant. You have a commercial kitchen. And the startup costs for a commercial kitchen are in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty thousand to a half million dollars. So you never wanna lose a commercial kitchen if you have one in your, in your area.
Okay, now that may be something we wanna look at of how to say. If it's got a kitchen, don't take it out or something, okay?
So, uh, again, trying to reframe, we did great here. Um, we, uh, encourage and support tourism. That is gonna lead to what we need to do to make sure that we're able to populate the action items to get us there. Uh, retail, uh, to use Mike's as a starter. So somebody said, uh, uh, attract, protect and support retailers. Attract retailers, um, protect them. What, what, what do you mean by protect? How is that?
Reserve.
Reserve. Well, a head tax, for example. A head tax will not be protecting retailers, wouldn't be protecting anybody.
No, protecting would be through the zoning code saying retail only in these areas.
That'll be one way, yeah.
Promote. Cause if we're promoting a certain type of retail. Or retail versus professional.
Let's just stick on the retail. For right now, cause we got retail here. All I need is the adjective.
Attract, retain and protect. Cause we also, we need, the city needs for. We need. You know, if you have pretty streets, clean streets, or emptying the garbage or anything, that's gonna attract. Retail and keep them there, right?
Well, I did amen to attract.
Yeah, we should keep doing those things.
Retain, no, attract, support and protect, right? Was that what you just said?
Amen.
Or retain, retain, whichever.
Preach, Mayor.
Attract, retain and protect. And that's policy to. Do those things.
Yeah.
Because that's all we have an impact on is policy. It's still be a policy standard.
Right.
Okay, great. Hospitality, um, could, um. What, what would the, I mean, you know.
Encourage and support, um.
Encourage and support hospitality. Can we do that? Nice work. We, we just got over.
On that too.
What's that?
You want protect on that too, hospitality.
So word the whole thing. You're kind of a, a, a word, uh, guru.
I don't know about that. Uh, encourage, and what is it? Encourage, support and protect hospitality.
Okay, um, now I'm going to Brian. We're really not, we're, we're. You, you've said not business development, you said business park, but then we talked about commercial.
Commercial business.
So what's the adjective? Um.
Board encouraged.
So encourage, commercial business. Excellent.
Employment centered. Commercial development.
Help me, help me the distinction you're trying to make.
We have buildings with no people in it throughout.
Oh, absolutely, and, yeah. Yeah, that's the, the issue with AI. It's not really, ultimately, it's not an employment generation. It will be an employment consumption. Activity. No jobs will be lost to AI that create.
Okay, huge breakthrough and really good stuff. Can I, I just want you to, I wanna read this to you and then we're gonna break for lunch. So this is all under the first priority, which we just did. We got one sixth of our work is done. Encourage economic vibrancy, but you can't, um, see my chicken scratch, I'm gonna read it to you. Encourage and support tourism. Attract, retain and protect retail. Or should we say retailers?
Retail is great, retailer is.
Perfect. Um, encourage, support and, uh, protect hospitality. Uh, support and protect employment centered commercial businesses.
Excellent.
Yeah, well, you're the ones that are excellent.
Closed.
But.
Yeah.
Question, sorry, sorry. How about it's hospice, uh, do this for hospitality? This, um, encourage, support and protect hospitality. Should it be hospitality services? Cause hospitality, it could be like we're running out and greeting people. That's hospitality.
Well.
And everything. Cause I, I think there will be some EDC goals that come out about actually going out and greeting new businesses, for instance.
So you're suggesting leaving the bigger umbrella allows for more. I get what you're saying.
Yeah. Cause under hospitality, there's a lot of services.
Not even more, there's more than just services.
Yeah.
I think hospitality with a capital H. Has a, has an industry meeting.
Yeah, everything, it's like read. Excellent hotels. Okay, I, I want to, um. I, I want to compliment you on, I mean, this is not easy stuff. And you guys are rock stars. And thank you for allowing me to shepherd you through it. And do it in a timeline that's gonna get us out early, right Louis? We don't leave five minutes late. We leave five minutes early.
I gotta, I gotta haircut at four forty-five.
Everybody, great morning. Is lunch already, Dina? You, it's, uh, it's all out there? Yes.
Real quick though, aren't we done pandemic recovery?
No.
Oh, no, no, I, I thought we had already. I thought we had just.
Getting rid of those.
Yeah, we're, we're replacing.
So, so we would.
We'll go back and look at that after.
I didn't realize when we said take those other ones off.
Good point, and yeah, we're definitely getting rid of this. Um.
I think that.
That is embedded in all four of them.
Even quick, I think those last two can be stricken. Anybody object?
None, all three of them can be.
Say the continued efforts for the pandemic recovery. Should be resiliency instead. Helping resiliency. And here's the reason why. The last couple of years, we've lost almost twenty percent of the businesses.
Right, yeah.
Lunchtime, everybody.
Say that fits into retain or, or, or protect.
Retain, retain.
And support.
I want you to look at your clock and I want you to be back here ready to go in twenty-nine minutes.
Twenty-nine.
Are we behind now? We're behind now. Nice going.
Like we're going anywhere, right?
Right, but this is the deal. Have you ever been to a conference with a fifteen minute, uh, break? I, I don't allow that. The reason you hired me is so I can.
So much of your job, you, you're policing.
Nice work, everybody.
Yeah.
Depends on what it is.
Yeah.
Oh, I never bought into that. If you were an editor right now or a legal clerk, I'd be really worried. Look at if you're a taxi driver. AI drives most of these self-driving cars, so it's gonna take your job. So.
Industries go away, but I think overall the net, net is gained.
But I, doesn't matter, we don't need to. I just.
But, so, so.
Actually, I'm related to the presentation earlier, which had AI in it.
Yellow books.
What are yellow books? Oh, yeah, that's gone away. Those whole line of businesses are gone.
You know, I, I would say the, the economy keeps expanding, but it. Reshuffles itself and it consolidates some areas. That's all.
I'm more reacting to, like I said. AI is not something.
Senior Vice President. About our company, about our company, kinda where we're going. And being, um.
First, you haven't heard any bells or alarms yet. I know. They, they choose a kind of a nice interruption, you listen to it. Yeah, you, and, and you'll definitely know what it does.
A five minute. Council President Hallway has something to share.
Pro temp.
Pro temp.
Um, just, just to make you aware, um. She roll, we've had fun and games with online public comments.
Oh, my God.
Trying to get. Stop. Just to get ahead of that, alright, so the council agenda that's coming out, you'll see a note of public comments saying. Uh, online public comment may not occur since. So at the top of the agenda, I'll make motion to actually not have online public comment for our next meeting. We will get into a discussion later on in the meeting of. What do we, what proposal, what do we think we wanna do moving forward, okay? But I don't wanna leave that public comment open for more fun and games until we figure out how we can control. Just make you aware as you see that on the agenda. Okay?
Ah, got it.
Very fast five minutes. Okay, um, to bring us back to where we are, we completed the first of six. The second one is up. I want you to only look at this swath here. Bolster in the same process, um. Bolster neighborhood livability before we get into. Um, so if the header were up there, this would be priorities, this is goals, objectives. This is actually, uh, an image, that's why I want, no. Bolster neighborhood livability is that priority shall stay as it is.
Definitely don't think we wanna do the antithesis.
Yeah. Now it'd kind of be the opposite, opposite of everything out your effort. Well, hearing no comments, I'll move over to the two supporting goals slash objectives. The first is support affordable housing development. Uh, which has been a conversation for a very long time in this body and just about every other. City, yeah. And then the next one is provide aesthetically pleasing streetscapes. So let's just, um. Is there any wordsmithing we're gonna do? Is there any deleting? Is there any adding? You value constructed the first one really well, um, Ethan.
Yeah, um. Support of affordable housing development is, it's a, it's a tough one, uh, for me in that I feel like we do that. I feel like we're, we, that's a. That's just the way that, that we operate is that we are supporting affordable housing development. Um. At all times, but there's only so much that we can do. We're not gonna build. We're not gonna build the affordable housing ourselves and we can only support it with the tools that were provided. And, uh, so, uh. As far as, uh. I, 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 I don't know the value of. Putting it as a goal or an objective. It's something that we're constantly doing. Um. And I, and my concern is the perception that if there is not. Affordable housing built, it's somehow because. We're not doing enough to create affordable housing, which is something that's beyond our ability to do. Uh. I certainly agree with the second. Goal. Um, that, that our streets should be aesthetically pleasing. But I'm. I guess, I guess my, my issue with the first goal is. Um. What is the expectation, uh, that comes with having that as a listed goal? Because. I'm not sure what it is that we are expected to do beyond what we're already doing, which is employing the tools that were provided. To address affordable housing. So, uh, that would be my thoughts on that.
Let's hear from some other folks. I, you know, when I see support, it doesn't dictate, uh, exactly what it is other than we are in support of. Within the construct of what we can and can't do. But let's hear from everybody. Catherine.
So, so you would have action items as to what you're gonna do for supporting. And I know we have, you know, the chair of the housing task force is here. Um, but if we're moving as a priority, then we're not gonna work on it. So, cause we're, we're, well, this is given this, the, the, um. Like the plan as to how we're going to budget. And type of capital projects and where we're gonna spend our staff time. And what council is gonna focus on. So if we're not gonna, if we're gonna wipe that off, then. We shouldn't be working on affordable housing.
Great point.
I think. Go ahead, Louis.
Yeah, no, I just think there are other ancillary things that go with it. So support affordable housing development. So kinda getting back to Council Bob's opinion.
Just for today.
So, um, you know, Rob, Rob spoke, well, uh, very intelligently about, um, transportation. You know, and, um, kinda the war for housing, if you will, but. Having that housing available or, I can get into numbers, but a certain AMI. Level. And, uh, so I think that, you know, when I, when I kinda read that, I think there are some other. Things that kinda go into supporting, uh, affordable housing.
Yes.
Well, uh, maybe what would help me is what, what is the last affordable housing that was built? And.
Panorama.
Yeah, panorama, at sixty percent AMI. Um, is it still? It's, it's still all right in that.
It's stated.
Um, and, uh, uh, okay. And what did, what did we as a city do? To help support that happening?
Brian was there. Yeah, height was one. Yeah, we gave him a height deviation. I can't remember, there must have been some tax credits or some sort.
Oh, yeah, I think difficult, so they, that's built on taxes.
Right. So, yeah, there were, there was, there was give and take and there was encouragement. In tax credits or whatnot to make that happen. In order to get the tax breaks that they got and the financing, they had to build at sixty percent AMI. But originally, that was supposed to be like a hundred and twenty-one units. So it was kind of a bonus that they built with more. It was when, when a man. Well, that's worth a consideration. There's either. They still have to close the business case. They still got, nonprofit doesn't mean negative. Oh, so they still have to.
This goes into a different.
And so they put, we did the height deviation, gave them a couple extra units so they could actually make these close and make it work.
And this was a for profit in. On this one. Louis? Yeah, just, uh, kinda back to, um, Madam Mayor Ross. Council member. Uh, Bob, yeah, Council Member Bob squared. What, what did we do to kinda help? To support and encourage. From, um, so I mean, obviously, certain, I could. Imagine certain services were required, certain services have in place. Were there any other?
Well, and take a look at what happened with the, the mill site. I mean, we, we as a council voted actually some tax relief if they committed to a certain. Number of units at a certain AMI. So, I mean, we forego revenue, they provide. The community service of affordable housing. But, um, to Catherine's point, didn't have to do that. Under normal circumstances, wouldn't have done it. But it's because we did have a focus to say we need for these developments coming on, we need to have some focus on affordable housing. We did do it. So you do need it, cause it's, it's not breathing. It's a moment of holding your breath, so you have to actually take the action. Um.
Seems like it's more of a softball than a hardball. If that analogy plays. It doesn't say mandate.
Right.
There's support.
Eventually, we're gonna think about for a request for proposal to try to build some on city owned property, for instance, that's a policy. So, there's a lot of different things that's coming.
And, and just to tie the loop on, on the.
And, and just to tie the loop on, on the panorama, it was part of SR two that it had to be built. The only difference was it wasn't front loaded, it was the very last thing of SR two. There was no timing, like it has to be done now. And we've learned a lot going forward that there are things, you know, in hindsight, will do better, and that's where it comes into not only affordable housing development, but then the next piece to that is making sure there's supportive services, because that's part of the thing that we can approve of.
So Ethan, you've heard from four of your colleagues, do you have other questions or comments?
No, I did, it sounds to me like what we, what we have done is employ the, the tools that we have available. And, uh, to the mayor's point, we've sought the opportunity to create those, uh, to, to create that support. Um,
Does that give you less heartburn about having it up there?
Uh, no, I, I mean, yes, I, I, I think, I think, uh, I, 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 I think as an action item, and I know we're not on action items, but I, but as an action item, I think that if we really do want to support affordable housing development, then we need better tools to make it happen. And that's, that's a, a state county thing, uh, as well. And, you know, the, but the tools that we have available to us, I feel like we're doing everything that, that we can and doing creative things to make it happen. Um, I don't think panorama is the best example of affordable housing. I think it might have been cool to have maybe more than one point of ingress and egress to that gigantic, uh, development. Um, so I think that if we're, if we're more thoughtful ahead of time to, to how it's done, uh, and to Councilman Holloway's point, having it as a priority helps us to do that. So, uh, I think these are excellent arguments about why I was wrong, but, no, 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 I, 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 I don't, I don't mind being wrong.
An opinion and we had very civil discourse, and this is the example of doing it right.
I, I think affordable, affordable housing is, is, is just a hot button issue and, um, and I've been accosted by, by, uh, uh constituents who say, you're not doing enough. And I say, I don't have a whole lot of things I can do, you know, and, um.
It's a goal, we're exercising the tools available.
Yeah.
Shut your pie hole. No, you probably don't do that last part.
Uh, I did, in that particular, I did, uh, there was, there was a pie hole in.
So, excellent conversation. So that was, uh, that was brilliant. And I think that we made a case why, um, number two is important. And by the way, number two supports everything in priority one, the, the new ones, right? Uh, the tourism, the hospitality, the retail, the commercial business. I mean, if this just looks like a little blah, um, that's not what was in my head, but I'm not gonna share what was in my head. Um, that, that would, we'd be very hard pressed, which is, so this is, you know, kind of an, an overarching or maybe more ubiquitous goal. So, does anybody else have any, oh, yes, Kat, I'm sorry. Make it in front of me.
Um, on the, uh, I mean, I, I think we ought to enhance the provide aesthetically pleasing streetscapes to include also, um, a, and, and not just under the action items, but to include accessible. Um, you know, that we, that these are beautiful streets, but they're accessible to all. Um, I think that's something that we ought to, um, you know, put into play as far as the, the streets. I, I'm not so keen on just the aesthetically pleasing streetscapes, because there's much more that bolsters the neighborhood livability.
Good point, um, so you're talking about maybe, um, adding something to this? Do, could you share an idea that's in your head? You used accessible, you're talking about, uh, um, ingress, egress, all that kind of.
Yeah, uh, certainly ADA accessible, um, we're doing a lot with some of our communities, um, as well as the, uh, business areas to provide, you know, the, the walkways and the, the curbing and marking and, and things like that to make it, um, accessible to, you know, all, all, um, um, folks and, um, I think we ought to, you know, incorporate that to not just the aesthetically pleasing, but also the usable or.
Sure, so the word is provide, how about this, I'm just trying to emphasize, provide aesthetically pleasing streetscapes and accessibility. Would that get to where you're thinking?
Why not just said aesthetically pleasing and accessible streetscapes?
Or fully accessible.
No, not fully.
Fully.
Not fully.
Not fully, no.
The, the term in the industry is inclusive.
Inclusive.
It's the pursuit, it's the pursuit of happiness, we don't say we're gonna get you happy.
And inclusive, accessible.
We're gonna pursue accessibility with.
Old, old term, inclusive is the new word.
Oh, so what you're saying is provide aesthetically pleasing and inclusive streetscapes. So that's, um, that's kind of taken what you said and changed it to what the industry is. So you guys get with that? Provide aesthetically, it's, uh, pleasing, can't talk, and inclusive streetscapes. Yes, Cara.
Uh, Cara, and my.
Cara, I'm sorry, Bob.
Yep.
I did every now.
Sorry, Cara.
That's, okay, anyways, um, and then mine is more of a question because I, I do think that it's important to recognize the multimodal component of this as well, and I know that it could also fit in with investment, transportation, infrastructure, as well as enhanced quality of life. But I do think that transportation and having an option just beyond looking at the streetscapes and where the cars are driving and things like that may be something that we want to work in as well. Because people are starting to engage more and use more biking or walking and other things like that. And that does help the livability. And especially for our residents who may have limited transportation, continuing to keep that at the top of mind, at least with the tools that we have, will be beneficial to them as well.
And that goes with walkability.
Yes.
So does the inclusive term in the industry hover multimodal?
I would add multiple, multi-modal.
For dinner.
Line of words.
Yeah, that was the question, because it could fit in, it could fit in neighborhood livability, it could fit in transportation, infrastructure and equality of life. It's kind of a, a component to each of them, but I think that it is important to recognize that under livability as well. Cause you can't get anywhere.
I'd almost go back to accessible there, because I think accessible does include multi-modal.
It's a perfectly good word.
Go ahead, Bob.
I'm gonna use the same word that Mike has here, parks, because bolster neighborhood livability is making sure that we have parks in every neighborhood of.
That would fall under a goal. I mean, uh, you, you don't want to make this thing have all these line items, this is the big umbrella.
I think that bolster neighbor livable, neighborhood livability includes housing, includes streetscapes, which is probably number four on my list. It means multimodal transportation integrated into that. And it means parks, and then inclusive parks, by the way, we do have a priority about transportation.
Yeah, but I think it goes back more importantly.
Yeah, wouldn't, wouldn't the multimodal thing end up down in, under this priority?
Well, that's another thing, is it could fit in with neighborhood livability, it could fit in with infrastructure and transportation, and it could fit in with quality of life, but I think that it is also a key component of being, of having that neighborhood livability. Again, the ability to get to the places and the services that you need within, so calling.
As a reminder to staff working on it, I'd recommend just putting it in both places.
So, can it bolster neighborhood ability and enhance quality of life, can that be the same? Because it seems like what we have in our enhanced quality of life is part of livability.
We have too many categories. What have we said, bolster and enhance livability of life?
Well, actually, this, people are laughing, but I, and I'm gonna say something and I have a pretty good idea, given the fact that we're working with twenty-six cities, that Mike will agree with this. And that is, when it comes to council establishing a set of priorities, less is more, simpler is better. Every time you add a priority or every, or every time you add aesthetic goals, you're adding a hundred and twenty-five things to staff's work. Am I, am I even close to being off base there?
I would use a different example, but yes, I just.
Trying to help you out here, dude.
I understand. But adding goals without, without revenue sources dilutes all the goals.
Should we add a goal to reduce the number of goals?
But, but that's the point that I would make is the more goals you have, the bucket of wa, the bu, bucket of money is only so big. And you're spreading your purchasing power across.
So the first thing, because we always start at the priority level and then we move right, um, are we talking about consolidating two priorities into one? Cause that's not a bad thing. And then, of course, you're gonna end up with more goals, but was there enhanced quality of life, is that what somebody was saying?
Yeah, we have enhanced quality of life is the fourth goal. Below transportation infrastructure.
Fourth priority, is it?
Are we, we got, are you a goal? Priority?
If you scroll down, it's, it's right below transportation.
And under enhanced quality of life, to Cara's question, now you got me doing it, is, um, provide multimodal mobility options for connecting neighborhoods and recreational amenities. So, I mean, it is listed, just, but it's not listed in the one up above.
And not that I'm trying to argue with Mike, I am not the boss here. You don't, but, um, I mean, do we really need to list a goal multiple times? Isn't it, if it's listed once, isn't it gonna be a focal point?
Different departments are looking at different.
Got it, okay.
But to me, that one bolster neighborhood livability really is about livability. And maybe we put too many words in there and then we go down below and, and, you know, put, I don't know. I don't know, there's just too many.
Think about urban forestry, what is that, I mean, that's important, right?
Right.
To us. Where does that go?
Enhance the quality of life.
The quality of life.
Yeah.
I, I like your idea.
Neighborhood learning.
Neighborhood livability and quality of life.
Okay, so let's, let's land there, because right now we've got six different things going on. And we know from our first experience, we need to tackle these one at a time. So let's start at the priority level and then we can, uh, organize the goals. So do we have a suggested reworded priority that would combine, uh, bolster neighborhood, uh, livability with improved quality of life? Somebody want to give me a proposal? Connecting those two together? Yeah, by the way, uh, I thought it was Cara.
No, it's Cara.
Um, by the way, Cara, we're asking you to do this, and please don't screw up. No pressure.
I mean, you could just say bolster neighborhood, neighborhood livability and enhance residents' quality of life. I mean, you could just literally combine them, or you could choose a different way.
Or couldn't we say enhance neighborhood livability and quality of life?
Yeah. That's good.
Um, so are we okay to put those together? And then we'll talk about the goals that go underneath them? Cause that was a, that was a, a, a pretty big leap, uh, in a very positive way. Everybody okay with that?
We're running out of time last time.
Do you wanna? No, there was a reason, I just can't.
Do you want the word preserve? In there, anywhere retained?
Well, let's, why don't we talk about, uh, the more detailed language under the goal section? Uh, cause if you look at all of these, these are really short overarching umbrellas. And if we start adding, adding the adjectives de jour at this level, I'm just gonna recommend that this is where they are currently, and maybe that's where they should reside. And if you think I'm all wet, then I'd like to hear from the electeds on that. I mean, you've asked Mike to be here for a reason, he's an expert here.
I was asking the electeds.
Oh, okay.
I was insane, put it up there.
Gotcha.
So why would you, why would you add the word preserve?
Well, currently it's enhance. And if I can't enhance, then I failed, right?
Right.
But if I enhance or preserve, if I can keep the.
Enhance and preserve.
I haven't failed, I did my job.
So you're suggesting, and I just caught up.
You're trying to lower the bar for yourself.
No, I'm trying to keep the workforce from getting.
Burnt out.
Burnt out and, and hopeless.
Having to constantly look for the next thing that they have to do to make things better, rather than recognize, we got a good thing here, let's, let's preserve it.
Okay, how about this? No, no, you're, you're, you're the leader here, not me.
I was just gonna say, like, his, his point is also obviously supported by the resident survey that we have, showing how happy people are with the current levels of service, and they want us to keep providing those, so I think that that would be important, important to include as well, to recognize that.
So here is the next proposal. Enhance and preserve neighborhood livability and quality of life. Are we okay with that? I am seeing a way more than a consensus. Okay, excellent, so that is two, three, that's, so it's, it's adding two and four.
Call me Mike. You call me channels.
Oh, that's Michael.
Okay, awesome.
I was afraid to eat too many.
We just consolidated, uh, two and four. Now, take a look at, uh, the goals, you know, one column to the right. And, um, let's start kind of bringing those under one group. So, um, essentially.
You can keep that.
Really?
Yeah.
So essentially, um, we have right now a total of four, uh, goals. We have support affordable housing and development. And I think that we all agreed on that. Uh, provide aesthetically pleasing streetscapes, and that's where the conversation about accessibility or inclusiveness, and then it led to multimodal. And then the two, um, oh, actually, there's three goals under enhanced quality of life. Implement opportunities to expand recreational programs and activities, that gets into the parks. Cultivate environmentally conscious community. So, you know, again, addressing the sustainability, and then we get, uh, to Cara's point. I'm having a really hard time, did I do it right that time?
Yeah, Cara likes Sarah.
There, there, there you go, I have a mnemonic, all dyslexics need a numeric. Uh, uh, um, it's a mnemonic, that's what it looks like in my head. By the way, my dyslexia is so bad, I'm not dyslexic, I'm dyslexic. That's what it looks like on paper to me. Really scary. Um, Cara likes Sarah, I love that. Uh, provide multimodal, uh, mobility options for connecting neighborhoods and recreational. See, it seems to me that when you add those five together, you've covered everything. Um, is, I say, I'm seeing lots of heads nodding forward, I'm seeing some heads not doing a darn thing. Um, so I'm gonna read this whole thing to you and I want you to hear it. And if anybody hears any glaring gaps, understanding these are priorities and goals, not the action items. That's where the, that's where the devil gets into the details. So, our new combined priority two and four is enhance and preserve neighborhood livability and quality of life. And the current goals are support affordable housing development, provide aesthetically pleasing streetscapes. What's that?
And inclusive.
What, oh, uh. Well, but we might not need that when we get to the multimodal, mobile thing. Let, let me just go through all of them and then tell me if I'm missing something. But I'm gonna just start over to get a train of thought here. Um, the priority enhance and preserve neighborhood livability and quality of life. Goals, support affordable housing development, provide aesthetically pleasing streetscapes, implement opportunities to expand recreational programs and opportunities, act, programs and activities, cultivate environmentally conscious community, provide multimodal mobility options for connecting neighborhoods and recreational amenities. That was, it doesn't mean that we don't want to include, uh, inclusive, but I thought the inclusive, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Mike, was under that last goal.
Typically multimodals, talking about hiking, running, biking, scooters.
Got you, so where would you add inclusive, uh, up to, uh, aesthetically pleasing streetscapes? So, so exactly what, um, So it's so exactly what um Catherine was saying. Provide aesthetically pleasing and inclusive streetscapes.
I I like the word uh accessible much more. Accessible isn't isn't like a buzzword. And inclusive has become a buzzword and it doesn't buzz pleasantly for everyone. And uh, people make assumptions now when they see the word inclusive. Uh, to think, oh crap, what are we talking about now? And I think nobody feels that way about accessible. I may be the only one who feels that way. Yeah.
Americans with disabilities.
We just did an inclusive part. Why is it inclusive?
That's the term that's being used now because historically accessible only recognized. Mobility impaired individuals. When there's a lot wider spectrum of impairments out there. And so we changed the design of playgrounds. To be more inclusive to all.
Mike, could you give us an example of inclusive that is not ADA related?
Yeah, noise, color, sight, um, I mean, they are ADA related.
Right, but I was just looking for another example and you gave me several. Uh, I know color is a big deal, I have a a very close friend who's colorblind. And I literally started changing my AB pros- proposals for the As would all be in italics. Cause it was red, which is you're adding it, but I included, I made it italics, so someone who was colorblind. Could actually see the distinguish the difference.
So it's accessible to them.
I'm not getting in the middle of this, um, I I think there's cogent arguments for both. Um, I am not the expert, uh, Mike is and he's here to share what is and you're here to share. What is and and isn't, um, I always liked to, I'm a marketing guy, okay? I I have been um. Screwing up in marketing for forty years and I always liked to think about using language from the customer's perspective. And so. You know, maybe accessible is more understandable and maybe it's very limiting, I just don't know. But what I do know is that we're darn close from nailing this because we have uh consolidated. Uh, two priorities brilliantly, by the way, and I'm. Uh, crediting you for that, then we've got five really good goals. And the only thing we're doing is looking at doing a little word smithing. On uh the second goal, which is to provide um aesthetically pleasing street ca- uh scapes. To include access, inclusivity, whatever word you guys wanna use. Kara, see, I'll never get it wrong, Sarah.
I understand Ethan's point, um, absolutely, but I think if if we're doing this to staff to help with. Action items and to direct where we're going, we may wanna use the the term that's being used and thrown around in industry now. These may just make it easier than having them try to cheese.
Against the staffs using this as their compass heading.
Yeah, I do, I do understand your point though, and I don't want to gloss over that, I just it may be easier to maintain consistency. Throughout this document with other things that are being prepared or other studies that are being done, does that make sense?
No, I hear what I I hear what you're saying.
I mean, like a legal document gives me anxiety, so like. Not being careful with the terminology here, if we're if we're also talking about that other thing, or if we're not going to include the types of things. That an inclusive situation would provide, then I think we need to have a deeper conversation about like. What's included and what's not included in our accessibility inclusivity conversation.
Yeah, the 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 examples that I've heard about why you would use inclusive. No offense to anybody, but they don't appear to me to be. Adding anything that isn't already encompassed by the word accessible.
Kat, you've been very patient.
To kind of dovetail into what you're both saying, my question for Mike is, um, is. Does inclusive pertain to, so I I understand on the playground side of things, how that works. Does it also pertain to, you know, since we're using it under a streetscape or, you know, kind of those things? Is that a word used for, you know, accessibility to the. To the streets, um, and move and, you know, that that type of thing? I just wanna get the right word in that uh means that we're, you know, um, in enhancing or improving the. That everybody in every situation, they don't maybe necessarily need. Colors, although I guess with the bright yellows and things like that, we have marked out there that might apply and.
If if you, if you tell one of my engineers to go make a street accessible. They're gonna go out there and they're gonna throw wheelchair ramps at both ends of the block. And they're gonna walk the block and see if they have to move any poles out of the way, so there's enough clearance for a wheelchair to get down the sidewalk. Whether there's landscape seating area or whatever else, if you tell them to go design a a inclusive. Pathway, they're gonna put the wheelchair ramps, so you're gonna make sure the poles aren't in the way. But if there's a picnic area off to the side or seating area off to the side, they'll make sure that table is accessible. And have the missing bench and and they'll look at it through a little different lens.
Okay, that's.
Now, as far as the difference between inclusive and ADA, here's an example of an inclusive. Thing that we do in programming, Big Truck Day. So Big Truck Day is accessible to some. Cause the wheelchairs can get up next to the trucks and stuff, they can't get in the cabs unless somebody, you know, depending on their level of skill. But one of the things we do to be inclusive is we have that hour of no horns. For autistic children. Now. Accessible, that wouldn't really fit that definition in my view.
I get it, and autism is a spectrum disorder. I'm autistic, but I I'm very different, that that more on the Ashberger side, yeah.
Why not uh accessible multimodal? Just put them in it.
I'm I'm I've just given, we've already got multimodal in the goals under this category, it's already listed. Can I ask a question? And I I mean, I mean this in all sincerity. I'd like to know what you all think the definition of streetscapes is. Cause I'm hearing a bunch of language that doesn't connect to what I think of streetscapes. What I think doesn't matter, what you think does, can you share with me what the definition of streetscapes is? Oh, I'm 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 just, I'm darn serious.
So streetscape meaning is. It's integrating the trees and the sidewalks, but the inclusive thing I'm thinking about is. At the lighthouse for the blind, when I see people that can maneuver through a manufacturing plant. Using a cane.
Right, but that's not streetscape.
No, no, but but to your point on the inclusive, why I'm a little bit passionate about it is we have new sidewalks. If it's a matter of accommodating the one or two people that I see walking downtown with a cane. That's not as accessibility, that's an inclusive thing to me, if if we put. Bumps or whatever, so that they know the track and that it's a safe place.
Can I get?
So I guess the whole overarching thing is the streetscape is. What we have today, but also when we build new streets or we recreate streets, what it should look.
So you think streetscapes include streets?
Joe Johnson has just joined.
Well, he doesn't have any thoughts on this.
I'd like some other people to chime in, just on the word streetscapes, because that is the subject matter, Lewis.
Yeah, when I think of. Streetscape, I think of um, kinda what Bob was saying. The canopy, but high quality curb appeal, I could say it like that.
Okay, yeah. Hi, Joe, Andrew Ballard here, I am your faithful facilitator, we're using first names, I hope that isn't uh offensive and we. Wish you safe, you and your family safe travels, you had your hand up. Uh, do you have any questions about what our conversations about?
Uh, first of all, I do apologize for missing so much in the meeting.
We gotta turn your volume up. Uh, one second, Joe, we're gonna get your volume up so we can hear you, it's it's.
Okay, can you hear me?
Oh, perfect.
Little bit, little bit.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so I am. Lowered my hand, lower hand, anyway, whatever, um, yeah, so again, uh, sorry that um, I missed so much of the meeting. And I'm coming into the parkway um, in into our current discussion here, so I don't want to uh. Say something that has already been said a million times and hashed over and all that, however, I did wanna address this issue of streetscapes. Because uh, the past I've used that term when we've talked about these kinds of things and uh, what I envision as a streetscape is literally everything. Um, facade to spa, one side of the street to the up and then. Um, in a perfect world, the entire length of the street from one end to the other, so think. Uh, a perfect example of this is center, so on center, it starts at the parkway more or less. And it ends at um, kinda by the Y. Uh, so you can look down that street, you have walls on one side, walls on the other side, and then you have something at the end. And that is a picture of a street, so things to think about in a streetscape include. Uh, as much as the height to width ratio of how tall the buildings are compared to the width of the streets. There's a significant difference in how walkable a city feels, um, and how safe a street feels. Uh, when you have. A uh lower ratio, or wait, a, let's see, if it's height to width, I wanna make sure I get my math right on this. Uh, that would be a uh lower ratio, I guess. Whatever, anyway, whatever, I don't wanna do math, point point is, uh, people feel more secure and safe when there is, uh, when there are taller buildings and a narrower street. So uh, an extreme example of this would be if you've ever seen the main street that goes through uh Salzburg in Austria. It's called like Drats or whatever, anyway, that's kind of an extreme, but extremely friendly walkable, you can think maybe Parisian streets. Um, it's something that's more commonly, something people can more commonly visualize. Uh, and then you have kind of the opposite end of the spectrum, which is uh, where you have big box stores with a massive parking lot. And then you have a six lane street with uh crossovers down the middle. And then a giant parking lot on the other side, and then a big box store on the other side, um, no one walks those streets.
Okay, excellent.
No one walk. So then you, what that includes then is real quick, what that include then would be the street trees. How wide is, uh, how wide are the bike lanes, are they protected bike lanes? Uh, how tall are the street trees, uh, and uh, how many lanes wide is the road, how wide are the lanes? And what's appropriate intended use of that. That's what I think of the streets.
Okay, thanks, Joe, and continue to raise your hand when you wanna talk, where I can't see you, your colleagues can and they'll stop me. Cause we wanna include you, so let me just share why I asked that, is I wanted to make sure we weren't spending a ton of time. Coming up with an adjective for streetscapes that wasn't well connected. Um, and again, it's your definition that matters, not mine. So let's go ahead and wrap this up, I know we're a little bit high centered, uh, but we still got forty five minutes left, so I'm not freaking out. Cause we only have two more priorities after this, but there is only one of the five. Goals under our newly fashioned priority that we're stuck on. And that is provide aesthetically pleasing streetscapes, there are two proposals. One is provide aesthetically pleasing and inclusive streetscapes. And the other is provide aesthetically pleasing and accessible streetscapes. There is a facilitator trick. When we end up kinda high centered on something, and that is to do a thumbs up, thumb sideways, thumbs down. Right, I mean, this is just simple Robert's rules.
Just put them both in and call it done?
Inclusive and accessible? Well, if that's the remedy. What?
What didn't I give you with that?
The issue is that one includes things that the other doesn't, so if we just stick them both in, then. Yeah, it would be redundant and a little bit unclear as to to what you're doing, right?
I would also say that they both include everything that we're talking about.
I was drunk.
No, no, this is part of the conversation, anyway, let me just finish mine, it's called the nominal group technique, did you have a hand?
I was just gonna ask, uh, yeah. Okay, sorry for your coffee, it's what's the, I mean. In your opinion, what's the downside of including both accessible and?
I think you say. She said it was redundant.
But you're the expert, right?
So.
Just asking for an opinion, not.
You're not setting policy, yeah.
Definition, I like the person to be able to address this.
My definition is redundant, parts of it would be redundant while one goes further.
And the inclusive is what goes further, based on your previous statements, okay.
And I I I would I would just, I'm I'm just gonna make this point and then I'm not gonna fight about it anymore, but. Um, I, uh, all of the examples that I've heard. That are ostensibly inclusive and not accessible, I don't believe have a, I. I don't believe are not covered by accessibility, Big Truck Day having an hour where nobody honks their horn. Is an accessibility issue, it's not accessible to those to those kids that can't handle the horns. If you don't make that, uh, my my concern with the inclusivity. One is that it's it's a, it's a, it's a hot button word that is creating. Feelings in people that I don't see being created by accessibility.
So I think we've all um, given everybody time and respect to share um, their their views, which is. What you have to do in governance, right? But now I wanna move into this uh nominal group technique, so we can get off high center, and by the way, being high centered is normal. I'm not trying to denormalize it, it's absolutely normal. Nominal group technique, it's the process of giving everybody equal time, everybody had, everybody's opinion. Is equal equally matters, but it's the process of moving from discussion to decision. So thumbs up means I like it, thumb sideways, I can live with it, thumbs down, I don't like it. As long as the thumbs up and thumb sideways are in the majority of the thumbs down. Then it passes like any simple majority um, vote would in uh a council. Um, if the thumbs down is equal to thumbs up and thumbs sideways. The decision's not made and um, the discourse continues. It's a real simple rule, are you guys okay if I just do the, just to kinda get us going, cause we got, yeah. About forty minutes left, so all those in favor of um, using. Accessible instead of inclusive, show thumbs up, everybody has to vote, if you're against that. Uh, if you can live with it, go thumb sideways, if you're against it, go thumbs down, hundred percent vote. Did you have something to say? No, I said accessible, I can only pick one, I I'm trying to be inclusive right now. So if you don't want accessible and you want inclusive, you would go thumbs down, if you don't care, you'd be thumb sideways. If you want accessible over inclusive, you'd be thumbs up. So, yes.
Well, having sat here and thought and everything else, uh, and I won't go into the train I went through, I would like a third option of having both of them listed.
I think that's fair. So, for those of you that. Those of you that prefer accessible over anything else, uh, th- throw thumbs up. Uh, show thumbs down if you don't, or thumb sideways, everybody votes. Joe, thumbs down, okay, that's, okay, thank you, Joe, so now, uh, accessible by itself is off the table. Uh, at six to one, um, so continuing, now we're gonna go. And by the way, I'm purposely stating it in the minority opinion, so I don't look like I'm biasing anything. So now I'm stating it, those of you that want inclusive and accessible, I want a thumbs up, if you don't care, thumb sideways. If you would prefer uh inclusive only, go thumbs down, is that clear? Okay, vote. Okay. I can't see you. Sideways, thank you, okay, um, um, the majority rules, uh, inclusive. Excellent. Great, we're gonna move on to the next. Great, we're gonna move on to the next one, just a second.
I still like you, Ethan.
You still like what?
And I, I appreciate the point, I just want to make it a simple. And I don't want that to be, I don't want that to cause an issue, but I understand what you're saying, a hundred percent.
I didn't look how anybody voted.
Okay.
I grabbed my head down.
I, I guess I would add, I guess I would add this, that I'm just thinking for this.
We've already gotten off high-center, but you have the floor.
Yeah, can I just make a comment?
Absolutely.
There's something that maybe, you know, I guess, uh, what's the wording? Well, no, 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 but when you talked about inclusive. Political hotline.
Yeah.
Okay, understood. And I, I guess, I don't know, therein lies the conversation, because just because something's a political hotline doesn't alone make it incorrect. So, do you understand what I'm saying?
I totally understand what you're saying. My, my, um, my only uh, response would be, but if there is a, a solution that is not that um, it's more inclusive to our constituents to go with the uh,
It's a Jedi mind.
Okay, good work, everybody. So, we're only halfway done and we've got just less than forty minutes to go. So, we um, we want a boogie. Just a second here. P and G number three. I gotta code it for my team, okay. So, we're right here. Invest in transportation and infrastructure. Are we good with the wording on that priority? Sarah says yes. See, the Sarah thing, I'll, I'll never pronounce your name wrong again. I will see you in twenty years and I'll go. There's Kara, there's Kara.
Yes, Sarah.
Kara from Sarah.
There's Sam.
Oh, Sarah, she was sitting right next to Bob.
In twenty years, you'd have an excuse.
Oh, that's great, I lo- I love you guys. Even Dean is uh, just kind of going, oh, let's just give the guy his props, he's just, he's, he's doing his best. After all, he's an autistic dyslexic. Okay, here we go.
That was so dexter.
Wait, I know this is an old joke, uh, what does uh, an insomniac dyslexic do all night? They, they're up all night wondering if there really is a dog. Sorry, here we go. So, we just said that's good, we actually have two goals. Which we will maybe do some wordsmithing, maybe not, I think I just, I just lost Brian.
Um, I, the train made it, I got my.
Okay, um, so maintain, okay, transportation and infrastructure. And we covered multimodal in, you know, quality of life and, you know, good neighborhoods. Maintain sustainable streets, parks, utility, infrastructure. Okay, clearly about infrastructure. Uh, collaborate with um, WashDOT to enhance regional connectivity. I think I was part of this discussion with you guys five or six years ago. All of a sudden, the light bulbs went off, I remember this. Well, I guess if you hate all this, you really could blame me. So, I'm just gonna open it up. Before, I wanted to bifurcate it between its thing and things, but your conversation led me to believe that you can mix and mingle. So I'm just gonna shut up. Um, opening comments. Are these two inclusive? I'm sorry. Um, do they need to be wordsmithed? Do, is there something missing, is there something excessive? So, you know? Is there, is, are, are either, are either of these, they become irrelevant, Ethan, start us off.
Uh, actually, Rob had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rob, go, go for it.
So, I put these together as infrastructure, because transportation is part of infrastructure. And the third one that I would like to see on there is to make sure that we have equity across our neighborhoods, because um, sometimes those in downtown Snoqualmie feel like they're not getting their fair share. I've talked to merchants that are frustrated with like, the, the, the wifi or, or, or um, just the, the broadband, thank you, isn't the same as it is on the ridge. And I think that there's probably a third factor that we need to add into this under the whole thing of infrastructure, and that's to make sure that there's, the streets downtown are considered and people know that they are put on the same priority list.
Infrastructure equity across our entire right, our entire city. Okay, so that makes a lot of sense. Anybody have a problem with that?
Is that more of an action item though, or?
Yeah, I think, I think that's what Rob's talking about. I think, I think that he's talking, I think he's talking about adding a goal.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, that, that's what I heard, but really good clarification. So, um, I, everybody was kind of like, yeah, it makes sense. So, adding that, um, let's go ahead and wordsmith it really quick. Support um, infrastructure equity um, throughout the entire city? Does that, does that work for you?
What are, what are they, what are they called, that, that, are they um, districts? Uh, does the city have, uh?
Oh, precinct.
Precincts.
Precincts.
Well, yeah, but there's voting precincts, but there's considered two districts.
Two districts, there's, there's the ridge and then the downtown.
We have to say more than, we don't have to, work on.
Yeah, see, but. We're trying, we're trying not to make it divisive, so.
I mean, ours go business city.
Yeah.
Right.
Let's put a million and a half dollars playgrounds downtown.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Ninety percent of the infrastructure money goes to.
Right.
Absolutely.
Streets and the
All the infrastructure improvement goes downtown.
Right, yeah. But now, as we start seeing the
Because it's aging lower than the good.
No, absolutely, but, yeah, the conversation is, some of the conversation I hear is that, well, downtown's kind of left behind. Whereas the ridge has the newer streets and the alley is, yeah, just some, most of the ninety percent.
So you're supporting what Rob is saying?
Right, yeah.
Making sure that there is infrastructure equity across the Excellent, so let's go ahead.
Not right now, I think the last ten years has been like millions of dollars that have been gone into downtown and the infrastructure. The water, the sewer. There's more coming.
Because of the age of.
Just to make sure that we're not gonna reverse engineer anything we've already done. So, we're good with equity, infrastructure equity.
Yeah, yeah.
It says support infrastructure equity throughout the
Take out throughout the city, though, it's.
Right, okay.
That's our skull.
I didn't see that throughout the city.
So, just
That's what I'm saying, breathe air.
Because I work for the Department of Redundancy Department, no, I get it. Um, yes.
Yeah, I, I think my, the, my concern is that do we want to have goals that address perceptions or actual issues? Because to Lewis's point, when we address infrastructure issues, we address the issues that need to be addressed uh, most urgently. And, and, and the whole city takes care of that problem regardless of where the problem is. It's not, uh, there's not Oh, oh, you, you, give me a sec. But, but, uh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's the sense that I get. Is that if there, if there's a problem with the, the sewage system and it's downtown, then that has to be addressed and we need to replace the, you know, wooden pipes going down Euclid. Uh, because they, you know, it's time for that and the whole city pays for that.
So, are you suggesting that you do not want this added?
I'm suggesting that, I'm, 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 I guess I'm asking a philosophical question. Do we want goals that address perceptions, or do we want goals that address realities? That's, but Brian had a problem with what I was saying, so let's hear what he had to say.
Okay, then, Joe. Um, no, because there's this will drive uh, decisions you make in part, uh, two examples. One, uh, we had discussions at one stage of doing utility districts downtown and the ridge. We said no, because that'll drive you to actually have different utility rates because of where the things are. One city, one utility rate. We kept it that way as part of equity. Okay, the other part of it is, you're, i- if you took it a strictly financial basis of doing street maintenance, you're going to uh, main, you're going to focus in on the deteriorating new streets. Because it's cheaper to bring them back up than to let them fail and come back up. But if you strictly go at that, you won't go back and get those failed ones. So the equity says, no, you're gonna, you're gonna split those concerns. You're gonna try and maintain the deteriorating new or newer as well as go pick up some of those already failed, more expensive ones and bring them up. So, yeah, I think equity drive, better, which was a better word. Uh, equity would drive you along those decision lines.
Yes, Joe, thank you, I can't see behind. Go ahead, Joe, you're up.
Thank you, yes, uh, I absolutely hear what uh, uh, what Ethan and Brian are saying um, uh, to, to both ends. Um, and, and I think the way I'm coming down to is this issue of, um, this is supposed to drive our policy decisions. And I do think that there's uh, something to say for being intentional about making sure that our uh, that our policies that we implement are equitable across the city. And um, you know, there, there is a reality of the perception out there that, uh, that we don't. And I think that maybe we should address that. That said, um, there, there is going to be a, the opportunity for such issues to arise again as uh, streets and other pieces of infrastructure on edge start to show their age. Um, you know, the ridge has been around for a while now, certain parts of it, and that will have to be addressed. And the ridge is a much larger development than downtown is. Uh, so for a long time, there's gonna be, in the not-too distant, in the not-too distant future, a significant investment in uh, making sure that the ridge is holding up. Um, so that the streets don't fail like some of those downtown did. Um, after many decades of not having been maintained. Um, so anyway, my point is that um, I, I think that, uh, while I completely agree with what Ethan said, that uh, our purpose for including this, if we do choose to include it, shouldn't be strictly to address uh, the issue of um, of perception. It should, uh, in addition to that, and even more importantly, drive our uh, decision-making. Um, so I hope that that made some sense. And um, after hearing both arguments, uh, I think I'm gonna land on the side of wanting to include it uh, with the understanding that, that the, the meaning of this is that we mean it to drive our policy decisions.
Thank you, Joe. So, I think that we can move off from this and then uh, do, so, excellent, let's get in here. So, this is bifurcated between transportation and infrastructure. I know you think they're the same and they, transportation falls under infrastructure. But, we separated them out as two separate goals, clearly infrastructure, clearly transportation. And it may have been the conversation here that led us to make sure that transportation was called out. That's just Catherine.
Oh, I, I was gonna just say that I agree with that, because it was it's, in my mind, dealing with Wash, obviously, we don't control any of their infrastructure, but we do need to work with them to enhance regional connectivity, including the buses and things like that, which would not fall under just infrastructure alone. So I do think that we need the transportation.
Got it.
And I'm sorry, I made a
Um, okay, Catherine, and then Ethan.
Um, so in WashDOT, I think we should also include maybe metro, other districts or transit.
And SVT.
Right. Trans, there's transit. Option, but that's under transportation, so.
Could we just put uh, regional uh, transportation authorities or something that's a bigger umbrella? Rather than calling all of them out individually?
It's actually more letters, what you're saying.
Um, your hand was next.
Uh, actually, I was after Rob, and I was gonna say what the mayor said. That we should
I only got two eyes.
That, I, I wasn't, I was, I was actually gonna ask the question as to whether or not we needed to call out metro specifically in that if we wanted to address busing with uh,
Okay, so you're the second person that's brought that up. How many are there, so there's uh, Seattle dot, you know, S dot, there is metro, which is King County. Are there others?
SVT.
Got it, so um, do we want to say um, re- regional transit authorities, or do we want to list them all individual?
Uh, metro and SVT maybe, is that, is there anybody else?
Or just be transit.
Yeah, in case, in case we want to embrace somebody else in the future.
You always want to embrace people.
Well. Or transportation entities, whatever words you want to use. But, you know, the, the kind of thing that you don't have to change, because there is a brand new one that just came in. Um, so what is the words, transportation what?
But then WashDOT is roads, so we're talking about.
Oh, so maybe we do need to call them out all individually, because metro isn't roads, right? That's just the bus system. And uh, S dot is everything.
They're not ours here.
No, well, I got it, that's why you As, as
Valley Valley Transport.
Got it, so why not just um,
Miguel?
How about a new goal, work with transportation partners to enhance regional connectivity?
Hey, everybody. We, we gotta, I'm sorry, we've got three conversations, so I'm gonna ask everybody to come up forward. Um, Mike just had a suggestion that those of us that were in the front part of the conversation kind of went brilliant. Would you say it again?
How the pressure's on.
New goal, work with regional transportation partners to enhance regional connectivity.
Good, love it, nailed it, perfect. Yeah, what, what's the other one, what's the other one? Wait, wait, he's gonna want to write down your first one first.
Yeah, what he said, say it again.
Work with transportation partners to enhance regional connectivity.
We'll start.
And, but, the
You know, that activity.
Connectivity.
Thank you.
You need to have shots more open.
The extra point is, I think facilities is missing from the
Say that again.
I think facilities is missing from the infrastructure point.
Maintain streets, parks, facilities and utility infrastructure? To add facilities to the first one, okay?
This is a facility.
Wow, you're batting a thousand.
M and M's over there.
Shouldn't we stick a fork in this one and move on to the next?
And the bag got delivered.
I think we're on number five now.
Five or six?
Andrew. We added the
M and M's left in that bag.
Hi, Joe, I just want you to know I'm paying attention.
Yes, sir.
Do you want some of my uh, M and M's?
Well, it's, this is, you know? Okay, so we finished that, and we are now moving on to uh, assure, assure a safe community. And we have two, so our, this, this is pretty cool, we're not gonna ever stop doing that, right?
We're top dead.
Love it. Okay, so we've got to maintain proactive community policing services.
Oh, I'm not.
Deliver exceptional first responder coverage and response times. Do we need to do anything with that?
I wouldn't change a word.
I like what Ethan has to suggest, what are the rest of you think? Okay, let's go on to number six. Louis has seen right through me. Are you good with that, Catherine? Yes, yes, sir.
Around the horn here. Community policing means different things to different people. So, generally, when we talk about community policing, what are we talking about?
Um, I saw. I was gonna do it. You gotta understand, when you have dyslexia, it's because the neurons in your brain are not wired correctly. So, from point A to point B takes me longer than someone who is perfectly able, go ahead.
Um, in my mind, it means that the police are not just having to be reactive to calls coming in, they're going out in the community, they're engaging at schools, going out. Just basically spending more time in the community, having their presence on the, the front end instead of just having to respond to whatever's happening. Does that make sense? Working on those relationships with community members, yeah.
Yeah, where this is more about, uh, you know, reacting to a nine one one call. Really good distinction. Um, anybody else wanna jump in on this? Cat, I'm sorry.
Uh, I totally agree with what Kara is saying and it is, uh, they're out, it's like the bee cops, you know, that would be out and. You know, stop at each shop and, and know everybody's name and. Um, and if, if you do ride along with the cops out here too, you'd see the, um, they, they do that type of policing. It's like they can pull up to somebody walking down the side of the road and say, hey, so and so, how's the, you know, whatever is going on type of thing and. Um, and so they do uh, really try to integrate with the community and, and uh. Um, you know, keep it, keep a finger on the pulse, so to speak, of what's happening.
And I say it every year, but I highly recommend every council member do a ride along because it's, it's really helpful to see what they're, they're doing and what's happening on our community.
Especially after eleven P O.
Hi, Joe.
Hello, yes, um, I absolutely hear what um, uh, what I think uh, Councilmember Washington is uh, is saying that. Um, policing can mean different things to different people, like, we don't wanna have. Uh, you know, cops standing at every corner with cameras pointed at everyone, tracking our movements, making sure that we're doing all the things we're supposed to be doing. Um, that could be how someone interprets uh, policing, um, or, you know, that they are, are only doing it to certain communities. Where uh, policing as, uh, I think that uh, it. Uh, it has historically been intended and uh, and when I think it's working at its best. Um, is when the police are helping people, you know, they, they see someone who's um, uh, who uh, is differently able than is struggling to cross the street. So they, they park and help the person across the street, assuming they have time. Or they see someone who uh, has a flat tire and like, no. We could call a tow truck and have them tow it away, or we could uh, wait for someone to show up to change the tire, but. Most police are capable of changing a tire. If they aren't doing something that's particularly urgent. Then they can pull over and change a tire for us. Uh, that happened to me uh, in Snoqualmie. Um, I was uh, turning onto the parkway from two oh two and the tire blew and a police officer pulled up and just changed the tire right there for me. Um, so policing doesn't have to necessarily be uh, all about following people around and making sure that they're doing all things they're supposed to be doing. However, there can be that connotation in that term, um, which, which I don't think is what we necessarily want. Um, certainly I don't, uh, but I also struggle to come up with a, a better word to replace it. Um, so um, lacking a better terminology, uh, I'm fine with it the way that it is. Um. You know, one possibility is we could say, uh, community law enforcement services, if that gets away from any negative connotations of policing people.
Okay, uh, any other comments? Uh, I did have one proposal from Ethan and he just said they're great the way they are. And um, Louis stimulated um, a conversation that people were engaged in. And we heard uh, from Cat, Kara and Joe. Um, are we, are we good with these? Can we move on to our next one? Looks like I'm, I'm getting the thumbs up. Okay, so that means we are on to the last one and we still have fifteen minutes.
We can stretch it. You ready for this one, are you?
Okay. So. The priority is ensure, are you able to see the screen, Joe?
Yes.
Excellent. Ensure fiscal transportation and operational stability. Pardon me?
Fiscal transparency.
Yes. Did I say transportation? Sorry.
I heard transparency.
Thank you. I'll give you the twenty bucks that we talked about. Ensure fiscal transparency and operational stability. Uh, is that good as the priority category? Okay, then we have two goals. Reinforce Snoqualmie vision, values and mission. Um, and then next is maintain appropriate financial capacity for present and future service levels. Who wants to start our conversation? Rob?
I'd like to see a third bullet point, or maybe it's the one for the second. And that is, we need. To design a dashboard so that we as council can see it. On the top things that we need to keep in consideration.
Yeah, I would.
Am I one more over, one column over? Is it in the next column?
Yeah, I, I think it's an action item and I put something about like basically. I mean, it's gonna be more of like a communication thing where we are communicating with residents. About the current status of the city's finances, basically, that's terribly done, but then include that as an action. And it's one of the ways that they can interact with and get information about it.
So both of what you guys suggested were action items, I just qualify.
Right.
Okay. Yes. Ethan, the only change that I would like to make is to um. Change ensure to ensure. Because I think what we're. You mean with an E?
Yes.
Yeah, I saw that too, even though I'm Lex Dixit, I, I, that did pop out to me. Joe doesn't understand my dyslexia, ensure.
Um, I have my hand up and I was gonna say the same thing, it should be ensure.
Hey, if I'm gonna get dinged, I wanna hear it. I did not. Well, you mean five or six years ago. Yes, that would, that would have been me.
Only takes us five years to fix a spelling error.
Okay, Joe, thank you. Uh, who else did you did? Okay, we've got two. Um, pretty simple change and we had two great additions, but they'll both fall in. To the third column, which we're not getting into, however, it should be documented.
It's number twenty one.
Okay, it's already documented.
No, it's not, it's not there. Oh, then go up to twenty.
So is anybody, I see this is outside of uh, the agenda. Somebody taking notes on um, action items, we're not doing action items. Okay, well, I'm just gonna move on so we can complete the agenda at hand. Um, well, uh. Go ahead.
One, cuz I don't, I, I, I don't. Not sure what reinforce Snoqualmie, it's, there's air, yes. Uh, I guess one one is can we promote the action item as a goal, this is adopt a strategic plan. That I can, I can put my head around and go, yes, I know what that is, where these words, uh, I'm not sure what they are.
Yeah.
Why do now, this is adopt a strategic plan? Oh, I know what they are. But what are we doing to reinforce? Other than the strategic, right now we're saying strategic plan, I'm just saying, look, if it's one goal, one action, just move the action to make it a goal.
I, I would just think this kind of covers everything that we've talked about, every single priority, right?
Yeah, uh, uh, so.
Responsibility, accountable, innovative, trustworthy and sustainable, that would.
To Brian's point, isn't that a bit general for a goal or objective to a specific priority?
Right, I don't think this should be up there. That maybe it's the top of the whole.
And by the way, you, your mission, vision, values, which is the order it's usually referenced that. I probably did this by accident, but your mission, vision, values are the highest strategic strata of a strategic plan. They are not mutually exclusive. Your strategic plan starts with your M V V, mission, vision, values, then you get into goals. Which you should be able to measure and then below goals, you, see, goal is to find what you're gonna do. Strategies to find how you're gonna do it and then council gets the heck out of the way and that's Mike and his people. Dealing with operation plans and tactics.
We are never getting out of.
Let me come at it the other way, if we're doing things that are not reinforcing our vision, mission, goals.
We're in trouble.
Yeah, we're in trouble. Um.
And we're undermining all the priorities.
Yeah, undermining all the priorities, but let's, let's take it out at this level, move strategic plan up and put, do a strategic plan.
It sounded like um, Catherine was playing that.
This is kind of the overarching document for all the priorities, right?
No, yeah, but I say we do what Brian says.
Yeah, feel me, I agree.
Um, so what I'm hearing, and I haven't heard any problems, is that we're gonna move this to an action item. And we're gonna change this to. Or move it to the action item, which means taking it out and we're gonna replace it with. Uh, develop and implement a strategic plan, our strategic plan.
Yeah.
We have a strategic plan, but we need a current strategic.
We're now to adopt a strategic plan, so it kinda.
We don't have one, we don't have one.
Okay.
So anywhere twenty twenty five, let the games begin.
Is it comp plan? And then the C I P.
I need, I need to budget for strategic.
We'll get the consultant in there and get to work.
That first word you wrote there, Andrew.
Um, delete. Delete M V V, mission, vision, values, replace with develop a strategic plan. Yeah, I'm just using code that my team knows.
We always have a, a strategic plan, don't we? Don't we, isn't that something that we always have? What am I thinking of then?
Hey, guess what? Aren't we done? I'm asking.
It's not a guess.
Oh, no, not done there, we still have a, a, a couple more agenda items. What I'm wa- asking is if uh, our review and revision of our priorities and goals is done and we can move to our last break. And since we're moving into our last break a few minutes early, I say we take the full fifteen minutes. Is everybody good? Okay, everybody please look.
It was rebellious period, alright.
Now we're recording.
Okay. So, uh, now that we're recording, I'm no longer anal retentive. Here we go. Uh, uh, status quo or shake it up, and there's three different things, and the reason I have them numbered. Is so, as I'm writing them down, if somebody has a comment. I can just say number one, comment number two, comment number three, so we can tackle this as a portfolio, which will be a lot faster. So the whole notion behind, behind status quo and shake it up and I'll let Catherine speak into this if she wants to. We were both at uh, the F C A retreat in January. And uh, Catherine is on their board of directors. And this was um, a really cool and a very appreciated topic. So status quo or shake things up, do we keep doing what we've been doing, the way we've been doing it? Uh, do we do what we've been doing, but do it differently? Should we be doing different things? And so the point is you can have any comment, all I'm gonna ask you to do is say one, two or three. And that way I'll know which of these bullets you're talking about, so my team can co- I, I'll code it, so the report will be accurate. So I mean, this is just kinda open mic time. Now, obviously, it's within the context of the, the council, uh, the elected purview. You know, we're not, we're not talking about getting into the operational weeds or, you know, telling Mike. To do different things, but it really has to do uh, with our eight electives. So with that introduction. Does anybody have any questions or comments? The later we get into the day, the shorter each agenda item happens, cuz everybody wants to get the heck out of Dodge. Dodge in this case is this room. I'm standing right in front of you, Cat, I'm not gonna miss you. You see this here?
I see it.
And we got Joe back, hi, Joe. There he is, he waving his hand.
Yeah, he's just raising it.
Yeah, he, he, he is, he, he just knows how to use the machine.
No, he wants to speak.
Did you have a comment, Joe?
Uh, yeah, if, if you're taking comments, then um.
I am.
Yes, on the number one, um. On the whole, uh, our playgrounds are as awesome as they can be. Uh, we've been going through the process of um, replacing them on a cycle. Which obviously we can't just do them all at once, if we could wave magic once, we would do that. Um, but we have amazing parks and um, I, I don't know if anyone uh, who seriously wants to uh, do anything. Uh, to our parks department, uh, at least as far as our playgrounds and open spaces go and um. Uh, and uh, continue on with the playground replacement uh, program. Um, I think that's been fantastic.
Excellent, thank you for starting us off, Joe. Be kind of sta- stated, you know, under number one, so that's uh, that's the way we're gonna do it, just call out a number and then you can share. And I'm just gonna say, I mean, you can give me an essay of response, but I'm gonna ask you for a short bullet. We call it a headlines game, where you're gonna give me the headline, the average headline is four to seven words. So give whatever background you want, but conclude with your headline. Yes, Ethan.
Joe reminded me of an issue that I've been a little bit concerned about.
What number are you? What category?
I guess it'd be three.
Okay.
Uh, we have an issue in the city where um, a, a lot of trees have failed. Uh, because they were improperly planted when the, when the ridge was developed. And so we have streets that don't have trees and don't expect to have trees in some cases for a very long time. And um, uh, some residents have asked to be allowed to do something with those areas. On the other side of, of their sidewalks, which seems reasonable to me and so. Uh, as far as that's concerned, if we are getting into these kinds of things, I think we should consider figuring out a way to give. Residents um, some level of uh, autonomy with their space across the. Their streets, at least in places where. What was planted there has failed.
Excellent, can you give me the four to seven word headline? Allow residents to.
Allow residents.
To beautify their streets game?
There we go.
Nice going.
Uh, and, and I'm not.
Downtown already.
Yeah, yeah, there's no rules down there. Down, downtown, that's great.
Brilliant. Nice editing. Great. Somebody tell me when uh, when any of Joe raises. Yes, Louis. Which, which number?
Thank you. So, what is it? Retention ponds, thank you, retention ponds. So um, probably during the pandemic or right shortly, kinda after we were getting out of town, call it twenty twenty. Two, um, and I can only kinda speak from my neighborhood up on. And Brinkley, but some of the retaining ponds were not well maintained. And so me and a couple neighbors actually got out and did some work, cut the grass and pull some weeds. And uh, this is even before I got on E D C and I think I submitted a request to the city. And it was just so funny, I was out walking the other day, but yeah, over the last, I would say, probably two years, they've been very well.
Retention ponds have been well maintained, keep it up, love it, thank you.
I could tell you why.
I don't think I can right now, but I can tell you why.
I don't think I can right now, but I can tell you why.
I appreciate it.
And you're the reason why in the last two years, they've been maintained.
Oh, wow, okay.
Well, I hope that's positive.
You gotta send it back to the budget.
Um, I would, I would include this under number one.
Yes.
Keep doing what we've been doing. Uh, one of the things that Parks and Public Works has done, that I think is really cool. Is respond to needs that people have for their parks. Uh, the painting of pickleball lines on basketball courts has increased the ability for. People in Snakwami to play pickleball enormously. Um, I think we need to, to keep on responding to those kinds of thing. Right now, there are. Uh, we have a significant Indian population in Snakwami that's uh, really wanting. Us to figure out a way to put in a cricket pitch somewhere, and I would love to. Continue along the lines of what Parks and Public Works has already shown that they can do with. With pickleball courts in figuring out a way to, to accommodate that, because our Indian population is significant.
So would that be a second bullet under number three?
Um, no, I think it's the same thing. I think it's just a, I, I think it's.
Cause I've got Parks and Public Works responsive to parks. I mean, just, you know, maintaining them, keeping them.
Looking for other opportunities to make those kind of connections with the citizens and residents.
Awesome. What else?
I did, well, I was just trying to figure out, so are we talking about status quo or shake things up with respect to what council is doing, with respect to what the city is doing?
What council, uh, within the council context?
I think the answer to your question is yes.
Uh, so I like that there's been more opportunities to get.
If it's under number one?
This is under number one.
Okay.
I, and it's a, a more recent thing that I've seen, or at least become aware of, and that's um. That the city has been facilitating having council members go and sit down with members of the public at times, other than just the meetings, in order to get. Um, public feedback and having the chiefs do the same, so I think that's. Not, not accessibility, but just allowing us more time and supporting that effort, so we have more time to interact with constituents in other ways. Kind of comes back to what the, what the American time is trying to do with another, another setting as well, or another evening to get public feedback. But just encouraging other opportunities to speak with folks.
Excellent. Can you give me the headline? You know, public engagement. Public, public engagement.
And maybe I'm wrong, maybe that was there before two years ago, I, if it was, I wasn't aware of it, or even before a year ago. And in that same vein, I'd, I'd like to see it continue. I can't give any of it.
I actually wrote continue uh, as the first word. Excellent. It's not spelled right, but I'll know what it means. Yes.
So I guess, um. It's wild here, sorry. So uh, more development visibility of volunteer opportunities, such as, you know. Adopt a park, adopt a tree.
What number are you putting in this?
Uh, this may be number two, although somebody may, reminds me, I'm just not aware. Which goes to the awareness portion. Um, yeah, do different things. More citizen volunteer opportunities. Again, like you said, adopt a park, adopt a tree. I, I have one constituent who'd love to go out and paint a certain park bench. How, how, tell me what color, I'll go do it. She's willing to adopt a park bench and take care of it. Great. I don't, uh.
When you did the tree.
I know there are some, I mean.
Well, did you want to make this number three? I thought you said two.
Three, it's three.
Okay, thank you.
If, if, if my wife were to win the Lotto, yeah, those trees in front of my house might be replaced.
Let her tell you about a different color every time. Did you have something, Rob?
Number two would be, our citizens academy needs to be in emphasis again.
Yeah.
But I hear North Bend having them, and they were our idea to begin with. We need to get back to doing them. And then under number three would be. We need to figure out the mechanism for council members suggested. Hmm, initiatives. We just, what we're depending on right now is what staff brings to us. And sometimes it's a state mandate or a county mandate, but we need, and, and there's another city, I won't name it. Um, they do, um. Task cards or something where, where everybody from the council submits something that they'd like to see. I don't know what they call it, idea card, but we need to have some mechanisms so that we're doing what we were elected to do. And that's thought about idea, or did they steal it, or what?
This is just an box idea.
Suggestion box, yeah, that sort of thing.
I agree with that, I mean. Usually we bring the policy and you approve it, so you think about other councils. It's a big city, where they actually come and they run on certain policies that they wanna initiate, and they bring it forward and then. Session vote on it, so.
Yeah, and some of the difference too is a larger jurisdiction might have a staff person that supports all of us. When it's us doing. So.
Well, staff of one and part time.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. And that's the nature of those communities.
Excellent.
Guess we had a number, another number three. Well, economic development recruitment. And this is a tough nut. I'm not saying that there's a solution here, but. We have had individuals in the city where we wanted them to go out and recruit and everything, it's. Ha- Hasn't been all that great, but we do need to do that economic development recruitment, so we. I think it's some different ways of doing it, but I have no answers.
What are you talking about? Recruiting people for, recruiting businesses, whatever, yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, we do have someone who's recently on E D C, who may be able to assist that, so she does the same type of thing for Redmond. That would be a great place to start.
We're developing job descriptions for it right now.
Okay, but look at the passwords, because the passwords have been marginal and write it differently.
We will.
AI. AI.
Yeah, AI, chat video right now for you.
We had the whole presentation.
I agree it's important, I'm just.
Yes. Oh, thank you. Hi, Joe, you are up, sir.
Alright. Uh, so a, a number of other cities have a grant writer on staff whose full-time job is to look for grants for things like. You know, community center expansions. Um, I do not believe that we currently have that position, uh, or funds for that position appropriated to the administration. If they wanted to go out and hire someone, maybe they, they, uh, they don't wanna hire someone to do that, that's fine. But we could at least, uh, as um, a council, uh, provide the appropriation, uh, so that that's an option. And uh, it's, I, I think it should be fairly easy to budget for, since they would bring in enough money to pay for themselves, plus the extra money. Uh, on top of that, that they would bring into the city. Some small cities have multiple grant writers, and I don't believe that we have any. Um, where that's their dedicated job, so this would be under number three. Um.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
Number three before you did, and I got it, I knew.
Appropriate, um, funds for a grant writer.
Excellent.
Maybe there's grant funding for that.
Yeah.
You work for the Department of Redundancy Department too, gonna get a grant writer to acquire a grant writer. No, that's great. Cat, hey. I saw you.
Oh, thank you. Under number three, um. Uh, I would like to, um. Put, um. Uh, quality personnel retention, uh, as the headline, and then, um. Have us, um. Kind of shake things up with, coming up with creative strategies for. Keeping some of our really good, uh, good people, and also vital services people, so, um.
Quality personnel retention strategies.
Yes.
Got it, love it.
Uh, can I reflect on Joe's suggestion?
Sure.
I guess counter, I, I'm not sure that a full-time grant writer would actually pay for themselves, just because the size of the city and the opportunity space we have. But, uh, doesn't mean that we can't, I'll go back to the three, three M corporation example. Then we can't reinforce the behavior such as. One day a month, each director is to devote to exploring what are the grant opportunities out there. And to actually starting to put in action, grant writing for those opportunities. Would actually give us some time on the calendar to do. Uh, that shows emphasis and gets them actually exploring where day-to-day will absorb you and you'll never get to this stuff. I, that's how I spend my life.
That basically describes the process we have now, and I can tell you that we have a team of three people that it's an additional duty. But work on their grant, the grants we do. Um, and I participate also, I mean, effectively, you do have a full-time person between, if you add up all the times.
Is it, is it the, the directors currently writing all the grants?
No, I think it's, it's the communications division, it's the C I P manager and myself. But I, I mean, we have a poverty level of point four percent in this town. Uh, we do not qualify for a lot of many of the grants. Um, uh, uh, I know there was a town referenced by a previous council member in the past, and I looked it up. Poverty rate, and that town was forty percent.
That's more.
That's more.
And much more eligible to receive grants.
Well, maybe we need to drive up our poverty rate. So that we can.
Well, and this is kind of a laundry list, so I'm just gonna leave it there, and everything you said makes really good sense. Uh, you're gonna be at the bottom of the recipient.
Yep.
Did you say the poverty rate is point four?
Right.
So that's a factor of a hundred.
Yeah.
That's crazy. I mean, to the, the town, um, I'd rather live in Smoahmi, I'm just telling you. Then.
Alright, no grant money for you, guys.
What's that?
No grant money for you.
I accept that.
Well, it's just the.
I think we're.
Hustle living and housing out here. If you're at the poverty level, you can't live out here.
Right, no, I get it.
We were, we were in an article last week in the news, we are one of the eighteen Washington cities. Where the median house price is over a million dollars.
Yeah, I get it. Um, I live in Mill Creek, I know what you're saying. I think our poverty rate's higher than point four, but it's pretty darn low.
But that doesn't mean we're not trying. I went to the mayor. I went to the mayor last week and said, I got an idea, I know it's scary, but we, we're gonna take a different angle with the county on pool funding.
Well, and you look at what Larry White did with, uh, with this park, I mean, I don't know how much. Grant money he was able to track down for that, but it was the vast majority of the money that went into that, that park and. Uh, and thank God he did all that, because I, to build that same park.
No.
Now, we'd have to raise three times as much money.
So the park station.
And with higher net worth communities, uh, sometimes it just involves communications. And you replace grant money with fundraiser or an event. Um, I'm not gonna give you the details behind something that, that I've experienced, but it can be very powerful. You know, when you're in a more affluent, you know, and ours was particularly the food bank. But just depleted, and just a newspaper store, and a little community paper, and just crazy.
Yep.
In a good way. It's wonderful. Did you have your hand up a minute ago, Catherine?
Yeah.
No, okay. Any other ideas, or do you wanna move into our next topic? We've got plenty of time, I'm not pushing. We're, we're ahead of schedule, five minute break. Already? Uh, we came off our last break, it's too old.
Rob needs a lot of breaks, he's old and infirm.
We've only been working for twenty-two minutes.
We work for government.
Okay. So, and I, I, I tell you what, let's move on, but. Let's allow the thing, if somebody comes up with a new idea, they go, oh, I wanna go back to this. So let's just kind of be fluid there, are you okay with that? Okay, oh, where's my, there it is, I don't even know where my technology is. See, now that I have control over it, it doesn't freeze, it's just nuts. Okay, so this is county connections, uh, with the public, and there's four items, same thing, you're just gonna use the number. Are we connecting in the ways we want? Uh, that'd be like the other one, like, hey, we like the way, what we're doing and the way we're doing it. And then these are, uh, just thought starters to stimulate some ideas. One idea was maybe a council podcast, or maybe other communications ways of doing it. And I know the way that other cities have done it is it's pre-recorded, and so it's asynchronous. People can access it on the website whenever they want. Most podcasts are between, you know, twelve and seventeen minutes. You know, we're not talking about, uh, a three-hour production.
Well, it'd be a way to engage people beyond the overflow of people that are watching our meetings.
Like right now?
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we went from zero and we, we grew to zero after lunch. I get it, I do watch it.
That's a hundred percent increase.
No, but it, it could also hang. Annexation, we could do a podcast, just, what is the process and how do we go through an annex?
Right, you can hit hot topics.
Well, and even hit it before it's a hot topic, you have it on the shelf, and as we get the opportunity to go to an annexation, you go, okay. Before you do public comment, go watch a video about what this is all about, what, what are the considerations, everything else. Or at least give them that opportunity.
I just put it up there under number two, podcast on annexation. Good idea, I'm just throwing it up here, yes.
So, I'd like to ask.
Kara.
Thank you, I'd like to ask a question to distinguish that, so are you talking about a council podcast? Because that sounds a lot like it would be something that would be done by the city.
Well, and this is.
To have.
Or under communications, et cetera. So this is the thought starter, but it's designed to stimulate thinking, not limited.
Yeah.
To your point.
My, my concern is just that, you know, we're a group of seven people, and unless we've made a decision together, we just have to be very careful, we are. If, if we're gonna be doing something like a podcast or the communication, we're being very clear that that is our own. My personal, you know, view on the world or whatever it is, so that we don't have information out there that's conflicting, you know, or. Just because we have to be so careful not to represent the statements we make, or have them conflate with the opinion of the entire council, or.
Right.
You know, so that, that would be my hesitation about doing.
And I got it captured up here, this is really good stuff.
It, it wanted the idea, I think it's some other cities that do this, that after a council meeting, then it. The council person would go off and do a little podcast as to what happened at the council meeting, what was approved, which is discussed. Maybe what's coming up. You know, at the next meeting or something, but, but it's kind of a, just a summary of what happened at that council meeting.
Terrible decision that the other six councilmen made.
No, the assumption would be that you'd be representing.
And it can take up turns.
Yeah.
But there's, I mean, this is, we're looking for ways, how can the council reach out, how do we? You know, how do you? How do you address or? Younger generation interested in these positions, right? Um, and the type of technology should we be using?
Yeah, I got it, I got your idea up there, Catherine, I mean, you literally could have a template, if you were gonna do that. You could have a template that the people would follow, so there's some continuity and you, you wouldn't breach, um, kind of some of the concerns. That Kara had, and so, yeah, I'm just writing everything I'm hearing here. I don't want you to be limited to the idea of podcasts in terms of communicating to our. Public.
I, part of my concern with the, in, in. Podcasts is a word, you can make really big, or really small, and I'm tending toward the really small, talking into your phone. Uh, kind of thing. Uh, kinda thing, uh, not a big production, cause, uh, no, no, I, none of us have time for that and nor.
Are you thinking more of a TikTok video?
I don't know what you're talking about. But another wild here idea is maybe, um, maybe even engaging with the schools. Your, your younger individuals, um, comment was. We could work up an example of something we've done. Um, you know, government in action and talk to the school and say, hey, you have a, you must have a government class. At least curriculum, I was one of those kids. Uh, we could come in and actually engage with your students here in Suomi. About an issue that is Suomi and how it developed and how it worked through. And hopefully maybe get some, get some of those gentle ones to come and engage with us of, what are you guys doing and why, you know? Maybe one of them wants to be the next president, I don't.
I got it.
We get wild here, I don't know if we ever pursue. Louis.
Yeah, have we ever had, uh, kind of along that same line, but have we ever had like an internship program? Maybe with the school district, um, or you. Same seniors, I don't know, high school students at the council level or with the administration.
We, there is, actually, we've had a couple of different people come through, through the. It's called open window school now, two, two twins, those twin members, but it's kind of open school, something, whatever, um. And so they're, they're more, they do. Well, it is, but it, but it's, their concept of. Teaching's changed a little bit, so. Come through and, um, and shadow each one of us.
Okay.
They do have the P E as well. They have some folks going through from the high school program that they were working over in the district as well.
Yes, there's someone over there and she's graduating, so, but.
There, there potentially uh, an opportunity to make it, open it up and make it a little broader. For high school age students to, at the council level or administration.
So, the other one is student representatives.
Yeah.
That some cities have done either on the council or on a park board or something of that. We don't, right, we don't have that, but that's an opportunity.
So you're talking about like a youth representative on council?
Good.
Okay.
So if you go to M R S C. They've got probably some things with there. You could really, I like it at committee level. I can't itch in the back of my head at council.
Why, why, Ryan?
But definitely.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking that if it's similar to what you, school board has, it's a non-voting. Right, right.
But I think it's part of the itch, I mean, you may give the wrong impression of scope of authority that they have. Where I think there's, there's less of a question at the committee level and returns. Okay, um, you know, should they be speaking up with council or not, it's more formal, things are going, what input do they actually have? And they're technically public at that stage, so you're putting them equal but not uh to the other public.
Well, you can have a job description, and maybe it's better on committees. When I was uh chair of the Board of United Way, we had, always had two youth councils that rotate every year. And I mean, some of the best ideas we got were out of some of these high school students, and they did not have voting authority. You know, our bylaws, you know, they're all that kinda stuff, but they were part of the dialogue, again, literally some of the. The best innovations that we had came from these sixteen to eighteen-year-olds, see, when I grew up, I wanna be as smart as them, it was really amazing. They were raised and they loved being there.
Or we could just do a separate youth council. Everything, it's everything, and it's just their perspective.
Be kinda interesting to have members on committees and then those members get together as the youth council, so they get the broad exposure. Make recommendations to us and suggest them.
They could use the council chambers when we're not there.
Wow, what a cool idea.
Zero period.
Yeah.
Open up the council chambers at six in the morning.
You could actually work with the school district and uh make it a credited program. Where they, you know, they get, you know, new credits, um, a quarter or whatever. You know, if they met certain criteria, I, I don't know all the logistics there, but. Oh, hi, Joe. Thank you, teachers.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I truly love that idea, um, it's sort of a, um, a student person. Uh, who could join commissions or committees, they have their own group that gets together and make rec, makes recommendations, that's cool. If there was that extra uh body though, um, that was uh essentially using city resources and funds and whatever else. Facilities, uh, there, there could be some staff time involved. And I know that there have been issues in the past with staff time as it is for commissions and committees, so I just wanna be respectful of, of that.
Excellent, thank you, Joe. And just thank you for telling me when his hand is up. It's kind of like me not seeing Kat, I love Kat, but I'm going like this, I didn't miss her once when I was on that side of the room. Yes.
So, back on one, I think, you know, the observation I've seen is that when we have coffee with the cop. Coffee with the cop, yeah. Coffee with the chief. When we have a topic, people show up for that, when we've had just. Coffee with the council member, it's like we probably have gotten six. Total, over three or four.
They just have me walking by.
Whether it's on housing or police services or, you know, whatever it might be. I think it needs to have a topic. And our open houses get a lot of people that come out to see what it looks like, so it tells me.
I wanna, I wanna do, coffee with uh council based on a topic, but give me the headline.
What do you have about committees even, like public safety, like parks and public works.
Open forum.
Yeah.
And, and the committee gets to choose the topic or the staff can help the committee choose the topic.
I think it'd be really neat if we, uh, as a city, we, if we sponsored debates on big topics. You know, we, we, uh, for example, I've been to a number of open houses for the, um, for the community center expansion. And there's definitely a, a range of opinions on uh the community center expansion. The, the events that I've, uh, that I've gone to have been. Uh. Very pro on the community center, center expansion. But it would be interesting to see a community event where people just got the opportunity to stand up, state their, their position. And, uh, you know, where community members could hear what, what others think, because I've also, you know. I haven't participated in online due to legal issues, but I've seen Facebook conversations on it. And, and I've, and I've, we've all gotten the emails about how, you know, anybody who doesn't feel the way I feel on this. Topic is a terrible person, you know, and that's not healthy in a democracy, uh, you know, if there's. If there's an opportunity for people to share their opinions and talk it out, they don't have to agree, but they can. Maybe recognize that those feelings are held by other human beings.
So, just to throw out a little more stimulus on the table, we've got lots of twos, we've got a one. What about the conversation around local versus regional liaisons? Yes.
See, I put that on there, um, so we have a lot of local liaison, but I'm not sure that everyone goes to the meetings for. For what you're representing. Um, and so do, I guess, is that where we wanna spend our time, there's some. Some meetings we need to attend, but instead of assigning it to maybe. One of those that you may not attend, because maybe during the day, there's a lot of regional positions open. That make a big difference for Suomi. So, you know, like the G M P C or you're on the justice. Public issues committee, I mean, there's a lot of opportunity out there to get council members, you heard, um, Mayor Polly. At the last meeting, talking about, you know, there's so much. Um, impact that you could have that benefit our city if you were on some of those. And so you could still be on local, that's fine, but. I'm gonna attend them. But I rarely hear a report out from any local meeting.
Part of it is, you know, the barriers, I mean, one is, you know, I don't know which one I should be on, the barrier might be. You know, they need it inconvenient times, you know, it, or is it a matter of, you know, I'm so stretched so. Thin because all I'm elected to do is council and that's what I can do, so, you know, I guess. We need to have a better understanding, you know, is it a, just a lack of familiarity or is it something that the. Uh, mayor and, and the mayor pro temp should say, okay, we're gonna look at all these that are S C A and other opportunities. And see where we have holes and then recommend, you know, Louis, you need to be on this one, Kara, you need to be on this one. Would you apply for those positions? Because we really don't have any methodology of saying, you know. Be on the King County Economic Development Council or whatever it might be.
And how are we going to prior, there's not enough of us to cover the goal list, how are we gonna prioritize?
That's gonna be between the, the mayor pro temp and the ma- mayor, I think.
And in your time. Full-time jobs.
Louis, did you have something?
Yeah, I would just say, uh, another layer of this is aligning the interest individually. Of the council member, but also where the needs are.
Right.
So, kind of world with immediate priorities and individually, where are the interests?
So what is the headline under number three? And I heard some really good conversation, but what headline should I capture?
Sounds like there's a value in regional, being members of these regional, uh, committees and we're missing it.
Yeah, that and protocol, because, because I've signed up for, you know, one or two and it's like. I, I get a call later and it's like, hmm, you're supposed to let us know ahead of time. And we really don't have it solidified as our process, right?
Some of them, I mean, I, I was on the watershed one and that one, they had meetings at, you know, random times all the time.
Joe.
And maybe something along the lines of uh reprioritize local and regional liaisons. Go back through our list and see, this is really where we need to spend time versus, uh, you know, their, um. You know, the positions with S C A or whatever, that should take a higher priority than any of the other liaison positions that we currently have. So, I guess, reprioritize or consider reprioritizing local and regional liaisons.
Got it on there, it's in small print next to the other one here.
Like, I think there's some rules in the council.
Sorry, Mayor, for some reason, you're just kinda quiet, is, is anybody could speak a little closer to the mic or something, I don't know why you specifically are just a little bit quieter.
We're just trying to kill a spider real quick. It dropped right in front of my face, Joe. Council rules and procedure, we'll have to make sure that they're updated, I think there's some comments in there about, um. You know, if you're gonna apply for it, then you need to let council know, um, because maybe somebody are, somebody else is also interested, so. You know, we just need to provide support behind you as well, if you're gonna go for that.
Right, if you're gonna represent yourself as a, as a council member on the committee, you need to be sponsored by the council. If you're gonna do it in your own free time as a private citizen.
No, because these are all elected positions.
After elected positions, then you're representing council.
Right.
So my question uh for the mayor is, is there a minimum amount of. Besides council, committees, commissions, liaisons that we should, because right now I have ten that I'm doing. Is that?
You need to step that up.
Assigned.
I can't do ten.
No, I have, well, we, public safety, parks and public works, I have arts commission. Um, so Kwame Days Commission, the Suomi Valley Hospital District, um, the EMS. Uh, uh, and this I did on my own, but I notified you folks, the EMS Advisory Task Force, um, their B L S Subcommittee. Um, and.
With me, a lot of those are regional.
Yeah.
I think you're.
So, but, so that's what I wanted to know, because, because honestly.
Couple weren't councils, so you were.
No, those were the regional elected type of thing, so I was just. So I was just wondering as if, uh, I don't think I could put any more on my plate.
You need to be doing more. You're a real underachiever.
I'm the eldest child, yeah.
So, Kat, you are overachieving.
Oh, okay.
Uh, and, Pete, so if you feel.
No, 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 no. No, I, those, I, I enjoy all of those, that's what I'm saying, it's like, oh, I don't wanna go to one of those dry, regional.
You're really weird. You're really weird.
I am.
It's beautiful.
And I still participate, you know, I still participate with the nonprofit here.
And we don't expect people to be on ten different committees, that's why I'm saying, maybe some local ones we just step back from, because we're not making, necessarily. Making an, an impact.
Basically a superhero.
No, I have no life, is really basically what it is, so.
Alright, there you go. We're happy to.
I think that, there, absolutely, I think maybe kind of reevaluating. The regional liaisons versus the local liaisons, again, that ongoing, you know, where is the need? I, where is the need?
So, identification, triage and, um, assignment. Of regional and local partner participation, I, it, with committees or whatever they are.
I would certainly be interested in hearing about regional, regional opportunities, I mean, I'm not gonna go full cotton, but.
Okay, great, thank you for letting me, um, pick your brain there. Uh, what about open house, et cetera, what was the thinking there? We've done them.
We've done them on topics, we're in discussions about doing a council open house, uh, open forum. No offense.
Is there anything you'd like me to capture in this report that I'm doing?
Well, I think we did. We oughta start thinking about, you know, coffee with the council, what that kinda looks like, that was an interesting idea. We probably need to flesh that one out.
I've got that up here already. Hi, Joe. Thanks.
Yeah, I think that perhaps it could be about being more intentional. Uh, and structured in our open houses than, than we've been over the last couple of years, I realize the part of that is. With the pandemic, some of the ways that things were done before, uh, just kind of fell apart a little bit. Uh, and we're kinda picking up the piece and putting it back together, and, and I think we're on the right track, it's just, uh, we need to get there. Um, you know, last year, we had a couple of times real post online, hey, before, uh, you know, red, white and boom, council members will be there, come say hi. Um, you know, that's just not particularly structured and not particularly well-thought-out and intentional, it's. Sort of like this little tack-on thing and someone, I, I remember walked by with their dog, and they were like asking for directions or something. You know, that was the engagement we got, um, so anyway, I think that, that the, the headline could be something along the lines of. Be intentional and strategic in our open houses. No, not strategic, I'm sorry, structured, that's what I meant to say.
So, I wa- I wanna hear more from you in discussions in regard to the council open house, okay, cause. Uh, it may be a limitation on my brain, it was. At least it did, we would identify a place or whatever, but it was, my ten was somewhat unstructured down. Whatever subject they want to talk about. We talk about. That leaves us open. And it loses to your issue of they'll show up for a subject, but they might not show up just for coffee. So if we need to reconsider that and change tack, uh, give me that feedback.
So in the past, pre-pandemic. Uh, we used to have town hall meetings, which were good. However, it was usually one person speaking and I love the person to death. But it was not really interactive. And what I think would be helpful is have subject matter. Personnel there to present and then allow time for the public to attend and just ask whatever's on their mind. Of this with the subject matters and try to have a little more balance and not be. Us selected doing the speaking, but do more of the listening. Because we do enough speaking at council.
Then what what subjects on this upcoming council meeting, what subjects would you guys suggest we? We at least pre-announced that, hey, we're gonna have.
What's the date of it again?
Yet to be determined, but. Let's say May sometime.
Well, maybe it's around something like public safety and how the police, we want the police to be handling. Our community, our neighborhoods. You'll probably have, you know, twenty people show up. With ideas and things that they've seen. I mean, we've heard it in public safety and people asking for, you know, traffic. Calming in certain neighborhoods. I mean, those are the kinds of things that, you know, we need to hear from. The other one was when Chief Mark put on the the, um, whole session on the the electric fires that we had.
Oh, scary. So I've got Joe and then Cap. Go ahead, Joe.
And I just wanted to clarify, that wasn't necessarily referring to the upcoming, uh, open house. I was more referring to how we did it last year and, uh. Um, I think there's a a big difference between having in a formal setting, uh, set completely aside, it's a special event. Um, especially if it has a facilitator, uh, versus we all kind of stand around and under an umbrella while a band is warming up for the evening. In the park.
Okay, excellent, Kat. Yeah, go ahead. Oh, I got Cat was next.
Thank you. Um, uh, what about addressing just the thought, we don't have to do this, um, to the public, um. About the opioid epidemic. Cause it is here.
Severed from the trainings. Like, so did you all want to suffer from the trainings?
Yeah, separate from the training. No, I guess the people have that maybe, you know, give them the 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 opportunity to come and. Uh, cause there's a lot more going out that the public is aware of than what's. Than what's, you know, necess- might be presented in more structured setting, uh, about stuff. It I just thought we don't don't necessarily, that's a hot topic.
How how will council address it though?
Well, nothing else we could bring public safety information of.
Yeah.
I think we should be.
Is that the first, you were talking that first part.
Against the opioid.
Subject matter expert.
Subject matter expert.
Yeah, so I've got, uh, Louis and then I've got Mike.
Yeah, so I was just going exactly where Bob was going with that. Yeah, the town hall, the town hall hall format. Uh, I don't say as opposed to open house, but it seems like it's, there's more, um. You're you're gonna get a richer discussion, get a richer discussion. The other point I would add is. Some kind of mechanism that we're publicly available to submit topics. And we bring that into the town.
Like with Kim Schreier.
Take those back to the surveys you're doing too is, okay, these are the top items. Just go through those and it's like, okay, there's five of them. Let's see, we'll pick this one and that one. Use those as topics.
I just wanted to let you all know that there are two additional open houses planned for this year, one on the CIP and one on the budget.
Okay, I'm all caught up on writing here. I miss.
I think Mike.
So did you have something in addition?
We we are planning additional open houses this year, one for budget and one for CIP. So. Or later in the year, but just like, we'll be at least two more.
Okay, excellent. Any other, um, suggestions, comments? Related to these four areas on council connecting with the public? Right, you can start the second page. It's just a lot of good stuff here. Before I move to our last agenda item for the day. Any other? Council connection topics? Okay, our last item is, uh, community says. Communications, this should say community. Yeah, it's community partners, sorry. Community partner discussion. Uh, you guys talked about this at a council meeting. Um. What is it that you wanted to discuss? Hi, Joe.
I'm actually not the person who originated it, but I continued it. So, uh, I guess, uh. One of the things that that I'm reflecting on is how, uh, we had, uh, in in response to, uh, some concerns around the, uh, model train museum. Uh, the council had some meetings with the tribe and unfortunately, though, they were always at times that I couldn't attend. Um, but, uh, I think that we made some really good connections there and that's just an example of something I'd like to continue. So, um. You know, it could take the form of, um, you know, maybe on on some occasion, maybe it has some regularity, uh, we could invite, uh. You know, members of the, uh, the tribe to come and, um, share some of their, uh. Knowledge stories and wisdom with us, uh, to give us a little bit more background, uh, on, um, on, uh, on who they are and. Uh, what their priorities are and, uh, and their perspectives on on local issues. Uh, I just think that those are some wonderful connections that unfortunately I partly missed out on. Um, but that I also wouldn't want to, um, uh, to lose that footing, uh, that we have, um. Reaching out to them. So that was just an example of something that I was thinking of. Uh, but, um, I don't remember who originated the idea. But that was one.
Okay, thanks. You got a good start. Uh, what else? Yes, Brian, I'm gonna put devil's advocate.
So we had a citizen come before us with a, uh. Petition. Why aren't we getting better with Cyview? So, uh. What are we gonna, what do we do with that, if anything? Is there opportunity engagement with Cyview? Um, I will force it to to all the way to the ultra violet end of the spectrum to say. Is there a community center engagement opportunity with Cyview?
That was the point she was making.
Yeah, and and I think, I think that, uh, the. What I, what I read from it wasn't just, uh, about engaging with Cyview, but maybe engaging with North Bend, with.
Fall City.
Fall City, yeah.
The valley.
Uh, potentially the tribe. Uh, a larger consortium, school district.
Well, are you. Are you meanable to, again, devil's advocate, are you meanable discussions to say? We're gonna move closer to relationships such as what North Bend has with Cyview? We might have with Cyview such that, I, the the relationship that North Bend has right now is. The parks and what we we call a community center in North Bend. Are run and funded by Cyview. They are the taxing authority that does that. But that, you know, that's a tectonic shift in the way we do things.
Did you say chutonic or tectonic? German or?
Germans don't shift a lot.
So, yeah, I see him up there, but before he does that, was there something from this conversation that I need to capture up here? You said I've.
Put Cyview.
What, what?
Cyview.
S I view.
See here, what did I said, did you?
Tectonic versus tectonic.
Yeah, okay. Alrighty, Joe, go ahead.
Well, I can confirm from my geology background that the Tetons were raised by tectonic activity, but that's beside the point. Yeah, uh, I think that, uh. Uh, I'm supportive of, uh, really kind of throwing anything at the wall and seeing what sticks because the last that I was aware of. Uh, in terms of funding for the community center expansion is that we're something like fifteen million dollars behind in terms of the money that we actually have versus how much. It's gonna cost. And I don't see a path that number going down. And, uh, I I'm not aware of the gap closing. Maybe it has and I just don't know it, but regardless, um. Uh. It, going it alone is looking like a very steep hill to climb. So, uh, I think that, uh, that I'm in support of, uh, of normalizing relations with. Uh, Cyview, uh, supposedly we have some sort of resolution that we're not allowed to talk to them or something like that. Um, that seems completely, uh, out of the spirit of, uh, local government and community and working togetherness. Um, but I don't have any hard feelings toward anyone in, uh, Cyview Parks. So anyway, that's my opinion on that.
That would be a two-tonic shift.
Yeah, there you go.
Go ahead, Louis. Thank you, Joe.
I guess I would just say, you know, what's? What's the harm in opening the. Lines of communication, having a conversation.
Uh, all all the pretty, Mayor, I think you were gonna speak on, no, it's okay. I wanna hear you first. Well, so just going back and it predates my involvement, but it's it's my understanding, at least that. The resolution that Joe is talking about is back in twenty nineteen. I think Cyview and the council at the time had discussed whether it would be possible to work together to build a pool. And it is my understanding that. And I I just, again, since I was not personally there, I hesitate to put this out there because I don't. Have the independent ability to verify it, but it was my understanding at the time that Cyview's position was that. They were only interested in building a pool that would be located inside you, i.e. in North Bend. And so I'm I'm ab- absolutely open to the conversation, looking again. But it's also my understanding that when the Cyview pool failed, that that the purpose of the bond that they were trying to pass was. For the capital expenditure. And so they they don't have the capital funds to build a pool, which is the piece of the puzzle that we're missing. Right? It's my understanding that they previously passed a bond years and years ago that would allow them to go ahead and do the ongoing operations and maintenance. For a pool once it has been built. But again, we would have the Y who would run our community center from the location where they'd currently been offering it. And the partnership that we've had for the past ten years. And so the difficulty is, is that. And and I, again, I would welcome the opportunity to work together with anybody who would like to contribute funds in order to help us to expand Snookami's community center. Especially since we have the lion's share of the funding right now. But, and again, I was not part of those conversations, so take it with a grain of salt, but that at least is my understanding of where things were in the past. And again, happy to look into things in the future, but it seems like. We're, we have and are looking for the the funds to build it at the outset as opposed to the other issues down the line. Does that make sense?
One second, Joe. I had the mayor and Brian, Catherine and Brian's hands up. Then I'll come to you.
Well, and I'll at least give partial history. I'm. We inside you have had competing pool visions for, God, I don't know how long. Um, and to tell you the truth, the the conversation used to be, I'm from Cyview, you're a city council member, I hate you. Uh, to this latest round was. Um, we could partner, but it would be your money for a pool in our area. Um, I'm not sure what the Cyview board is right now. I can just talk to this, at least the citizenry in some portion. Is saying, why aren't you guys working together? Um, I agree that, uh, we have fifteen, fifty, somewhere between fifteen and eighteen, correct me the number, eighteen million dollars. So, uh. I'm not supportive of that. Of the Snookami capital funds being used outside of Snookami. I think maybe there's something we could look for. Out further counter, I'm I'm not hard set on the YMCA partnership. Um. If if Cyview can fill in the rest of that hole. For the community center and we need to work with them of how. We become part of the Cyview family in order to do the, there's a discussion. I don't know, but in the past, they poisoned pill those discussions with unreasonable things.
Well, and the other biggest one, they was. We realized they. They showed up to do a presentation at the school district. And it said, and here's their funding, here are the funding partners and Snookami was on there. And it was like all the money we had that we're gonna spend on expanding our community center and adding the pool back in twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
And we're like, what? And so that's, that's how they were gonna fund it. So. It's the same night that our mayor got up and gave a presentation on why we're gonna have a pool in Snookami. So that's why the resolution came out. It was mixed messages to the school district, Cyview saying, we're gonna help fund their pool. And we're like, you know, we're gonna have a pool over here. So that's why the resolution, resolution came out. And we're certainly willing to want to work with them, but they are different taxing districts. And. Um. And they're still gonna want it in North Bend.
Not necessarily.
Well.
Wasn't there, and I don't want to step out of the turn, but wasn't there some conversation, I don't. You will have more history tonight. But wasn't it some conversation about, you know, kind of a happy medium somewhere in kind of Meadowbrook?
It's an elk pool.
Joe, Joe has been very patient. He's had his hand up for five minutes. Can I bring him into the conversation? Go ahead, Joe.
All right, thanks. Um. Yeah, I I think. Yeah, really. Um. Yeah, it it goes down its own for some reason. Anyway, uh, yeah, I I completely appreciate that history and I really appreciate hearing that. Um. Now, one of the things that happens is that there's turnover, turnover in, um. The decision-making bodies and, uh, you know, you can get, um, fresh, uh, ideas and perspectives from, uh, new people and maybe. The tone has changed. Uh, you know, I understand that if, um, there was another governing body that had misrepresented mine, then, um. Then, yeah, I might want to make some sort of a statement that, uh, publicly condemns that in some way. And, uh, perhaps we put Cyview on timeout for a little while, uh, but maybe they're ready to come out of timeout and we can have. Uh, normalized conversations again. And maybe they go nowhere. Maybe they're, um. The the dis- the parks dis- Cyview parks district says, nope, it's gonna be here and, uh, that's the end of the story, in which case, oh, well. But I still think that it's worth it to at least try again. Um, and maybe we just keep trying and someday it works out.
Mike?
Um, and then I just want to remind everybody, most of you were present at the meeting of the school board, but. Late last year, the school board, uh, let us know that they're not interested in participating in any pool without a, a, a bond being passed. They wanna, they wanna do another bond.
Yeah, they said once their next bond is passed, then they might, okay, or.
They won't do anything until they're bonded.
So I have a question. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of historical context. But I've got nothing on the board here. Are there some headlines you'd like me to capture? All I have is one word, Cyview. I don't think that by itself. Well, I didn't know it was two words.
I would say we've been, we've been working on a letter to send to them. Um, with the latest petition that came out, I mean, that's just more good information because the fifty-six percent. Of responses in that petition were Snookami, that they want a pool. Um, and if you, and forty-six percent of the users at Cyview are from Snookami. So we also talk about, we have the youngest community, we have thirty-one percent or under age eight, age eighteen, so. Us and Sammamish are the youngest community in like the whole district. And we have the most kids here, so it makes sense to have it here. There's reasons why it should be in Snookami. And so. Um, so, you know, we can send them a letter, but it should include other partners besides Cyview, should be North Bend, school district. um, you know, we can send them a letter, but it should include other partners besides Cyview, should be North Bend, School District. I don't know, we'd send it to.
Or unincorporating King County.
It would be using it.
But it's out.
Yeah, it goes all the way to Tulsa, I mean, it's amazing that whole area, so.
So before I go to Joe, um, is there a headline that you want me to capture other than just?
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna suggest one.
Okay, let's hear it.
Yeah, normalize relations with Cyview.
Right, so they are doing our maintenance operations, we have a long-term agreement with them.
Maybe with regard to a pool. Um, yeah, I think that, uh, I'm very skeptical that the general public, uh, enjoys watching their local governments and elected officials bicker over things. So, I'm not surprised that, uh, the majority seem to, at least of the people that were signing onto this letter, uh, want the local governments to work together for, um, a, a better outcome for their citizens. Uh, and, uh, yeah, I'm all in favor of that and if, if we can't come to an agreement, then so be it. Uh, maybe things haven't changed all that much since the last time around, but maybe they have, and maybe it's worth a try. Because the, the fifteen million dollar gap, as far as I know, uh, is pretty hard to cover all on our own, uh, no matter how much we, uh, we ask for the funds. Uh, that's a, that's a very large gap. And, uh, maybe with Cyview, you know, if they're, uh, going to their, uh, citizens saying, hey, we can do it if we pass this bond, uh, and the citizens are generally saying after, I think, what, three tries, no, that we're not gonna give you that much money. Uh, maybe if it's instead Kwame plus a much smaller bond, then we can get there.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like me to document under this entire pool, uh, Cyview discussion? Rob?
So, under community partners discussion, the other bullet point is to emphasize SVGA because Cyview's there, all the cities are there, the tribe is there, and not much of us are there. It's usually two or three of us, but not most of us.
Are you the liaison for them?
No, they're, we're all liaison.
Rob has never invited a Kwame Valley government. I'm gonna blame Rob.
SVGA?
SVGA, yes.
When's the next one?
No, I didn't ask that question. Okay, just kinda moving us along. Um, are there, well, that's my job. That's my job. Are there other conversations regarding, um, uh, community partner discussion? I've got invite, uh, tribal members to share, uh, regarding local issues. I've got Cyview. I've got normalized relations with Cyview regarding the pool. I've got, um, emphasize SVGA. Is there anything else that, that you want up there? Karen?
Yeah, can we just, instead of saying normalized relations with Cyview, could we just frame that a little bit differently so that it's like? Conversations with, just something that's not like that.
What about remedy our screwed up relationship with?
Yeah, I'm gonna go with a no.
Something positive.
I added that, but I didn't delete what he had. I just put down here, um.
Sorry, Joe.
Sort of neutral zone. Well, I wanna capture the inputs, that's what this conversation is about. Okay, is there anything else that we would like to discuss? And, um, document regarding community partners?
Oh, I was gonna go out on a limb. For those who you normally do not go to SVGA, the next one, if you go, I will, I will drive the car.
You don't have to go very far.
Oh, is that where it is? Okay, I'll drive up the hill.
It's the la- it's at the end of the month.
It's the same night as the volunteer resignation.
Which one? It's the first Wednesday of the month.
It's, it's not till May.
Yeah, it's not till May.
May twenty-second or so.
The Chamber of Commerce lunch as well.
Okay, hearing no additions, are we ready to move on to our, our wrap-up session? So our wrap-up is only got three items. Next steps, evaluation, and Brian's closing comments. I'm gonna facilitate the evaluation. It'll take four minutes and thirteen seconds, if I'm slow. Um, are there any, I know what my next steps are.
Audience, do you?
I'm not reading the room well, am I? So I know what my next step is. My next step is to put this report together and to get it to Brian and Catherine by close of business Wednesday. I always say seventy-two business hours and that's what it's gonna look like. Are there any other next steps that you would like archived or that you would like, um, memorialized is the better word? And we've, we've made it through the entire agenda and we are, by the time we're done, we'll, uh, be, probably get out of here forty minutes early. Yeah, don't hate me, cause we'll get out here early.
Those do get paid, though.
I am. One more story in my review. Well, I reduced my fee because I screwed up by missing the first meeting.
Wow, wow, Andrew.
I did. I promised the mayor that I was gonna, um, discount. So there's a pre-charge, the event day and a post-charge.
We can't get that time back, man.
Exactly, which is why I'm discounting my fee. By the way, the day of fee hasn't changed since you first hired me like ten years ago. How do you like that? Inflation, no, no increase.
Meaning we still owe you for ten years ago?
I know. Joe, do you have any comments for our next steps?
Yeah, I just, uh, double-checked the, uh, city council splash page, not our individual pages, but the splash page for the council as a whole. And it's kind of like, uh, here's how you serve on the council. Um, it'd be kind of cool if we had, you know, sort of, this is what the council came up with, is our goals, uh, for the city there, so that people can know, hey, what is our city council actually working on, not just how do you become a city council member? So, it'd be cool if we had a splash page, uh, that had some of this stuff on there.
Well, and I also tell you, trying to figure things out for this next open house, look at the Seattle council page, it's, uh, interesting. I don't often say good things about Seattle government, but their.
I got it, Joe, thank you. Essentially, a flash page on how to become a council member?
Is what it is.
That's what it is, that's what I want.
That's what you want.
No.
I wanted to be a summary of what we did here.
Oh.
What are our actual goals are?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I know, page on the report of today. Got it.
They replacing everybody else's job. I told you that's what it's gonna do.
Create a picture of this.
Okay, great. Um, any other next steps before we move into the evaluation? I got all my next steps figured out, okay, we're good? Alrighty, evaluation, really straightforward. Pros, what we liked, what we wanna do again, carry over to the next retreat. Cons, what sucked, what do we not wanna repeat, or what do we want to improve on? And so we're, we're not gonna do one list or the other, it's gonna be organic. Just shout out, here's a con, and I'll do the bullet. Again, headlines, really short, don't have time for essay responses. Kinda to your point. Um, pro was this, con is this. So, just raise your hand if you have a pro or a con about today. Awesome, thank you for starting us off.
Yeah, open dialogue. I was just where you looked at me over your glasses when you were, all good.
I'm melting. Um, Mike, and then, um.
Pro, Dina. I thought that our discussion about priorities and goals was very productive and, uh, focused everything, everything really well.
Thank you. Excellent, I'm looking, hands up.
I also think we need more Mike at these things, more Chamblis, all, all Chamblis all the time. Lots of, lots more.
He's got the answers to everything.
Yes.
I wanna thank you guys and appreciate the conversation you've had. It's not a strong suit of mine to structure these kind of things, as you may kinda tell, and you guys did really well. Thank you.
Were those your closing remarks?
Go ahead, Catherine.
So, you allowed everyone to have equal voice, you kept, um, us on, on task and also on.
You, you heard of the cats.
Well, so this could probably be facilitated? Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I love working with, uh, clients over and over again. Ethan?
Con, I am not a fan of K cups, so. I prefer brewed coffee. Yeah, but I can't go up there, it's only for fancy schmancy firefighters.
Cause at the beginning you made a match, you would've taken up there.
Looking for hands? Kara, do you have anything?
No, I think that the, the items that are on there are.
Awesome. I'm, I'm looking at Joe to see if you have any inputs.
You did an excellent job letting me talk from a screen.
I read meeting, excellent. Great to have you here.
We like their AV system. Hope to have one in our council chamber soon, so we don't have to hold on to my hand mic.
I told them six months. For Christmas.
Like this?
No, it's like the mics built in.
Anything else before I throw it to our mayor pro tem to close this out with closing comments? We're gonna be done forty-five minutes early. Well, um, one rule, I have a lot of rules. One of them is facilitator should never have the first rule or the last, the first word or the last word. So, this is my final comment. Thank you, great to be with you, so enjoyed the interaction. You guys play really well in the sandbox. I'll have the report, very productive session, I throw it to Brian.
No, and to repeat, um, thank you, this guy, you guys, amazing conversation. I mean, we're more effective when we do these things. Hopefully, we will not always agree, because there's creativity and value in the, in that discourse and great teamwork today. Uh, this is fantastic. And I'll keep it short, so we get out of here. So, at that stage, those are objections, I'll move to a jerk.
We are a jerk.